I'd like to call and order the regular Board of Education meeting for the Dearborn Board of Education for June 6, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee D'Ambrogio.
Here.
Trustee Moses.
Here.
Trustee Petrikov.
Here.
Trustee Thor.
Here.
Trustee Watts.
Here.
President McDonald.
Here.
Next item, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. Joe Martin, Principal of River Oaks Elementary, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, President McDonald, trustees, Superintendent Maliko. I have the privilege of introducing two fifth graders, Miriam Nasser and Adam Al-Sayed.
I am releasing the flag.
The United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Miriam, thank you so much. Well done. Thank you very much. Adam, have a good night. Take care. Before we go on, I want to take just a minute to make a statement. During last month's board meeting, a request for a closed session was unexpectedly brought forth regarding two different staff members. It is essential that I clarify a few points to build understanding and eliminate misconceptions. Excuse me. By law, employees have the right to a 24-hour notice for a closed session regarding their performance. When a closed session is requested regarding personnel matters, the name and specifics of the meeting are considered confidential information in order to protect the rights of the employee. The Board is responsible for governing the district in a collaborative manner. There are established protocols, practices, and policies that provide governance, or I'm sorry, that provide guidance on how meetings are to be conducted. It is unacceptable to surprise the Board, the superintendent, or employees of the district, especially while conducting a public meeting. At the last board meeting, there was an unannounced call for a closed session specifically mentioning the superintendent, which resulted in a negative perception regarding the superintendent's performance. The superintendent has been rated highly effective for all six years of his superintendency. These comments, or I'm sorry, these outcomes have been shared with the public after each evaluation was completed. The impromptu calling of a closed session at the May 9th board meeting was not part of an official board protocols used to evaluate the superintendent and should not be perceived as a negative reflection on the superintendent's performance. The superintendent has an annual evaluation. The process is completed by June 31st. The process is underway at this time and aligned with the Michigan Association of School Boards, also known as MASB, superintendent value process. This is the same evaluation that is used across the state to evaluate the performance of all superintendents. The Board of Education meeting is not a town hall or other type of forum to engage in public debate. The Board of Education meeting is a meeting of the governing body held in public. Although we welcome and encourage citizen participation, the purpose of the meeting is to allow the Board to accomplish the work of the district. I want to apologize to those that were in person last month because of the unexpected delay, and I am sorry that it happened that way, and I thank you for your patience from last month. Trustee Barry.
If I heard you correct, you said two employees?
Yes.
There was clarified that it was just one employee before I supported the motion.
Before the motion was supported, but prior to that, there was right up another employee.
But it was very clear that we only have one employee.
Right.
That's why I make sure we're clear on that before we supported the motion, then our employee decided.
Right. But originally, there were more than one employees. The perception was that another.
The perception was, it's important. Perception is different.
Right.
It was a discussion back and forth, and it was clarified that we only have one employee.
That we have one employee. But the concern was that we didn't want to make sure, we wanted to make sure that any other employee's name was not brought forth.
I didn't hear any, so.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have that.
Yes. I would like to have.
Yeah, so I have a statement as well. All board meetings, good evening, everyone. All board meetings conducted by a district follow a set agenda, and our policy has the superintendent and board president create that agenda prior to the meeting. The agenda is reviewed by administration, and the Board has provided several days to review and ask questions about items appearing on the agenda. Board meetings follow Robert's Rules of Order to maintain decorum and allow fair conversation, debate, decision-making. I want to let the staff, school community, and the public know that I will always do as right to protect the due process rights of all employees and students. We're a large district with 2,700 employees, 20,000-plus students. I will always fight to protect our employees and their rights. I will never waver or allow political agendas to intervene in doing what is right. I am an extremely transparent superintendent and believe that we need to work together in positive collaboration for the benefit of the students that we serve. I won't change who I am, as I always will do what I think is right for our students despite issues or distractions that arise at board meetings from time to time. I came to this job and continue to be an educator, not a politician. I do understand that at times, the politics of the community is an aspect of the job that I must manage as superintendent, and all superintendents do. I will do this within my style and to the best of my abilities because I know it is necessary in order to achieve our common goals found in our strategic plan. We work together to ensure our district moves forward on our collective efforts, are focused, and our vision is students first, always. On that, I will never waver. I look forward to bringing back, we've all dealt with two years of the pandemic, and we know things have been going on, and I look forward to bringing back a sense of civility to our meetings, a respectful dialogue that is aligned with our dear own public schools' core value. I respectfully request that we all adhere to these values. We have the core values in the back of the room there, and act as role models for our students when we interact with one another at board meetings. Thank you.
Trustee Petrikov.
Well, I was going to save this, but I'm going to read my statement as well. I'd like to reflect upon last month's meeting in an unexpected moment that led to confusion and disruption. An unanticipated call for a closed session by a trustee occurred that blindsided me. The Board scrambled to address the situation we were unprepared to respond to. The impression was chaotic. It did not reflect good governance. Tonight, I would like to state that this is not the expected level of professional board conduct I believe we should be delivering. It was a disservice to the other board members and the superintendent who deserved a proper notice that would have avoided the meeting interruption as well as giving us time to prepare. It was unsettling to all who joined us that evening. The image created was one of an issue of possible wrongdoing by the superintendent. That unfortunately was unaddressed that evening. I support the superintendent and the job he is doing along with his team, and last month's meeting should not be used to imply anything else. We will be having the state-required superintendent evaluation this month, the outcome of which will be shared publicly. This is the appropriate instrument to assess our district's strengths and weaknesses in relationship to the superintendent. The court of public opinion continues to be heard throughout the community. Unfortunately, many assumptions are made to support those opinions, and while we value everyone's input, the Board is legally obligated to use facts to base their decisions on, not social media. Also, the official voice of the district comes from the superintendent or the full Board through the Board President. Any comments or statements from others in the school community do not.
I'd like to call and order the regular Board of Education meeting for the Dear Boys Board of Education for June 6, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Deambrojo.
Here.
Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Petrikov.
Here.
Trustee Thor.
Here.
Trustee Watts, here. President McDonald.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. Joe Martin, Principal of River Oaks Elementary, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, President McDonald, trustees, Superintendent Maliko. I have the privilege of introducing two fifth graders, Miriam Nasser and Adam Alsayet.
I am releasing the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good job. Miriam, thank you so much. Well done. Thank you very much. Adam, have a good night. Take care. Before we go on, I want to take just a minute to make a statement. During last month's board meeting, a request for a closed session was unexpectedly brought forth regarding two different staff members. It is essential that I clarify a few points to build understanding and eliminate misconceptions. Excuse me. By law, employees have the right to a 24-hour notice for a closed session regarding their performance. When a closed session is requested regarding personnel matters, the name and specifics of the meeting are considered confidential information in order to protect the rights of the employee. The Board is responsible for governing the district in a collaborative manner. There are established protocols, practices, and policies that provide governance, or I'm sorry, that provide guidance on how meetings are to be conducted. It is unacceptable to surprise the Board, the superintendent, or employees of the district, especially while conducting a public meeting. At the last board meeting, there was an unannounced call for a closed session specifically mentioning the superintendent, which resulted in a negative perception regarding the superintendent's performance. The superintendent has been rated highly effective for all six years of his superintendency. These comments, or I'm sorry, these outcomes have been shared with the public after each evaluation was completed. The impromptu calling of a closed session at the May 9th board meeting was not part of an official board protocols used to evaluate the superintendent and should not be perceived as a negative reflection on the superintendent's performance. The superintendent has an annual evaluation. The process is completed by June 31st. The process is underway at this time and aligned with the Michigan Association of School Boards, also known as MASP, Superintendent Value Process. This is the same evaluation that is used across the state to evaluate the performance of other, of all superintendents. The Board of Education meeting is not a town hall or other type of form to engage in public debate. The Board of Education meeting is a meeting of the governing body held in public. Although we welcome and encourage citizen participation, the purpose of the meeting is to allow the Board to accomplish the work of the district. I want to apologize to those that were in person last month because of the unexpected delay, and I am sorry that it happened that way, and I thank you for your patience from last month. Trustee Barry.
If I heard you correct, you said two employees?
Yes.
There was clarified that it was just one employee before I supported the motion.
Before the motion was supported, but prior to that, there was, it was right up another employee.
But it was very clear that we only have one employee.
Right.
That's, I just want to make sure we're clear on that before we supported the motion, then our employee decided.
Right. But originally, there were more than one employees, or the perception was that another-
The perception was, it's important. Perception is different. I mean, it was very, it was, it was a discussion back and forth, and it was clarified that we only have one employee.
That we have one employee.
Okay.
But the concern was that we didn't want to make sure, we wanted to make sure that any other employee's name was not brought forth. There wasn't-
I didn't hear any, so.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, I would like to have-
Yeah, so I have a statement as well. All board meetings, good evening, everyone. All board meetings conducted by a district follow a set agenda, and our policy has the superintendent and board president create that agenda prior to the meeting. The agenda is reviewed by administration, and the Board has provided several days to review and ask questions about items appearing on the agenda. Board meetings follow Robert's Rules of Order to maintain decorum and allow fair conversation, debate, decision-making. I want to let the staff, school community, and the public know that I will always do as right to protect the due process rights of all employees and students. We're a large district with 2,700 employees, 20,000-plus students. I will always fight to protect our employees and their rights. I will never waver or allow political agendas to intervene in what is, in doing what is right. I am an extremely transparent superintendent and believe that we need to work together in positive collaboration for the benefit of the students that we serve. I won't change who I am, as I always will do what I think is right for our students despite issues or distractions that arise at board meetings from time to time. I came to this job and continue to be an educator, not a politician. I do understand that at times the politics of the community is an aspect of the job that I must manage as superintendent and all superintendents do. I will do this within my style and to the best of my abilities because I know it is necessary in order to achieve our common goals found in our strategic plan. We work together to ensure our district moves forward on our collective efforts, our focus, and our vision is students first, always. On that, I will never waver. I look forward to bringing back a sense, we've all dealt with two years of the pandemic, and we know things have been going on, and I look forward to bringing back a sense of civility to our meetings, a respectful dialogue that is aligned with our Dear Public Schools' core value. I respectfully request that we all adhere to these values. We have the core values in the back of the room there, and act as role models for our students when we interact with one another at board meetings. Thank you.
Trustee Petrikov.
Well, I was going to save this, but I'm going to read my statement as well. I'd like to reflect upon last month's meeting. In an unexpected moment that led to confusion and disruption, an unanticipated call for a closed session by a trustee occurred that blindsided me. The Board scrambled to address the situation we were unprepared to respond to. The impression was chaotic. It did not reflect good governance. Tonight, I would like to state that this is not the expected level of professional board conduct I believe we should be delivering. It was a disservice to the other board members and the superintendent who deserved a proper notice that would have avoided the meeting interruption as well as giving us time to prepare. It was unsettling to all who joined us that evening. The image created was one of an issue of possible wrongdoing by the superintendent. That unfortunately was unaddressed that evening. I support the superintendent and the job he is doing along with his team, and last month's meeting should not be used to imply anything else. We will be having the state-required superintendent evaluation this month, the outcome of which will be shared publicly. This is the appropriate instrument to assess our district's strengths and weaknesses in relationship to the superintendent. The court of public opinion continues to be heard throughout the community. Unfortunately, many assumptions are made to support those opinions, and while we value everyone's input, the Board is legally obligated to use facts to base their decisions on, not social media. Also, the official voice of the district comes from the superintendent or the full Board through the Board President. Any comments or statements from others in the school community do not represent a district position. I have also requested a board retreat for team-building skills and instruction again on Robert's Rules and the Openset Meetings Act to help develop written guidelines for maintaining professional board meetings. Hopefully, we will restore any lost confidence in the Board's decision-making process.
I'm going to add something since you just mentioned the training that we're planning. That has been set up, except for a day we have a facilitator, and we're working on what exactly we're going to be covering, but we'll be a portion of team-building and a portion of training. You have been sent a, from Joanne, one of those surveys where you check what dates you're available, and I gave a whole bunch of dates. Please do that as soon as you can. I want to make sure the dates that are available for us, we can also still get the facilitator. We have a good facilitator who has a lot of experience and has a lot of general knowledge and a lot of issues, so I would like to make sure that you take a look at that and fill it out as soon as possible. Trustee Barry.
Yes, I did call you earlier, or you called me, and I shared with you that I wanted to make a statement too, but I thought it would be further down the agenda, so, but I think this is a good time to do that, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Tonight's agenda is very, very clear. Action item number six says citizen participation. Then we go into action item number seven, where we actually go into the action items. And citizen participation says citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action. I have an agenda here from a March 8, 2021 meeting, March 8, 2021 meeting. That also has citizen participation before action items, and asks the citizens to participate on agenda and non-agenda items. March 2022 minutes, and I'll stop after this. I think everybody gets where I'm going with this, also says citizen participation before action items. At our last meeting, for whatever reason, I don't think any of us caught that except trustee Mosip at the table. We go into action items as action item number five. Then we go into citizen participation, asking citizens to address us on agenda items. So we already voted on everything on the agenda, then we want to listen to our citizens. So trustee Mosip was trying to bring that up, but I did ask, and I got a clarification from Dr. Maliko and my Board President, that about the minutes, last week's, last, the last meeting we had, the minutes are available. I'm going to visit those minutes, which we're going to approve tonight, okay? It says right here, trustee Mosip asked to pull citizen participation. I got confused. What the heck's he talking about? So, but visiting what happened that night, I think he was trying to say is, hey, what's going on? The citizen participation? How come we're not doing citizen participation before we get to action items? But I didn't pick up on that right away, or I would try to clarify like I usually do. Then I highlighted here that, I won't mention the name, but another trustee said, this is where citizen participation has always been, which now we know is not correct. So trustee Mosip did look a little confused for obvious reasons. He was trying to bring up that, hey, something is wrong here, but we told him, no, no, this is the way it's always been, and we know the rest of that story. He moved to go into closed session. I'm not going to make judgment on that call, but at this table, we can put motions on the table at any point during the meeting. I mean, we know that. There was an exchange back and forth. We're all looking at each other. I'm looking at Mary. I'm looking at Jim, you know, looking at each other like, where's this going? Then as soon as trustee Mosip was very clear, it says right here, trustee Mosip said, I know what we were taught at MASP, we only have one employee. I'm like, oh, okay, he's referring, oh my God, okay. And at that point, I moved very, very quickly to say, and I'll read it here per minutes, and correct me if any of this is not, is not correct. He did a great job. I mean, I went, Joanne, you did a great job. I went word for word on this. It says trustee Barry said, just to play it safe, I'll go ahead and support the motion, just to play it safe. And real, the very next sentence says superintendent Maliko says, that is his decision, referring to the one employee's decision to go into closed session. And that's what he called, that's what he, that's what he asked us for, to go close, go into closed session. Then I repeated, trustee Barry said, says, just to be clear, we did say one employee, and our employee is actually asking for a closed session. We did receive an email from Dr., from Dr. Maliko, and I was kind of like questioning the motive behind that email, but I just want to be very clear that these minutes were, unless they're wrong, will be approved tonight and will be discussed. Is there a reason why the last meeting, action items were?
We had done, yes, I was just about to address that.
Let me finish my question.
Oh, sure.
Is there, is there a reason why we had action items, then we asked the citizens to address us on those action items?
It was not intentional.
Not intentional, reason?
But the reason why is we were doing a hybrid meeting because it was a bond, it was a meeting of-
A study session.
A study session. It was a study session with action items included. So that was a mistake on my part. It was not intentional, but it was a hybrid.
Nobody, nobody doubts you. You know how I feel. I don't doubt you whatsoever, but that's exactly what the agenda said. And I went through the agenda, all of us did. We go through it, but the one trustee Mosip was trying to clarify that, hey, how come we're not doing action items? He was told that this is the way it's always been, and he looked very, very confused. I remember looking at his face. I'm like, this guy looks like, let me finish, please. I said, look, he looks like, I mean, like, he don't know what the heck's going on, because he was trying to bring something out, and he was approached saying, no, this is the way we've always done it. So mistakes, no mistakes. Just like, you know, Dr. Maliko said that he will protect his employees, the Board of Education will protect all employees too, but it's my job too to protect this Board. I've always stuck up for individual board members, and I've always stuck up for this Board. So when this is created, confusion is created, we cannot start questioning each other. We cannot start questioning each other. It's okay to pick up the phone, hey, trustee Watts, you know, what do you think, blah, 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 and, you know, we'll communicate. Once we start, when outside forces, I'm going to say it, when outside forces start controlling, there's a couple of other things that I want to get to tonight, some of these emails that we received, outside forces start creating that division between Board and shame on us, shame on us, where we speak in one voice and we need to continue speaking in voice. Thank you very much.
Trustee Thor.
In hindsight, because it was a hybrid meeting, it could have been a prime time to have two separate public comments, one for the agenda items, and then a second one after we had the presentation on the bond. We have previously, we did it a few different times last year, where we rearranged the agenda so that we could get to citizen participation sooner than some of the other presentations, and we do have the ability, correct me if I'm wrong, at the start of a meeting, that we can amend the agenda if, if something needs to be moved for any reason.
Correct. But that's not what, I mean, words matter. That's not what this agenda said.
No, I'm just saying that when we see the agenda, we can always change order.
I also, I also, I didn't want to, you know, this is going to be a long meeting. I didn't want to keep going on and on. There was some agendas where after action items were approved, that you ask for non-agenda items, citizen participation, like if you're getting ready for a report or a discussion like that. But yes, trustee Mosip looked like he was confused, and we're all looking at each other like, what's going on with him? He was trying to bring something out here, and we know how that played out. Was that intentional on his part? Was it intentional on our president's part? Absolutely not. It's very difficult to sit here in front of a microphone, a camera, an audience, and sometimes have complete control, even though we do our best and we do a great job. Thank you.
Justice.
Thank you, President McDonald, and thank you, trustee Barry. I think it's very important that this Board is united, even though obviously we're elected board members and we, we deliberate and we study. This is what we're elected to do, and, but I, I hope that, you know, we always look for the best interest for our students. This is why we're here today and every day. I just have a suggestion, and maybe we will talk about that further regarding citizen participation, because it's a crucial, important item that we truly appreciate from the citizens. And perhaps we could look at during the training somewhere, we can discuss about reordering the agenda items. And when we have a full room like this, I would like to hear from them before they, they leave. And I've seen some members who signed up or who wanted to speak, and then they leave. So I would appreciate, today, I'm going to ask for amendment to bring citizen participation to the beginning of today's agenda, and I hope that goes forward, that we look at others who are doing it correctly or who are doing it properly, where they're asking, and we do ask for citizen participation, and I appreciate that, but we need to also be cognizant of people's time, that they can watch this broadcast from home, but if they'd like to speak, we need to be respectful of their time as well. Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
Thank you. I think I echo many of my trustees have been saying that we are governed by rules, and I think those in the audience, I was like you, I didn't know what those were, and I think shame on us for not telling you what Robert's rules are. So there are certain things that we do have to follow during a meeting, and part of that is given to us through MASP that we've taken classes for. And there are things, yes, we have one employee, Dr. Maliko, but I disagree. I think that at the last meeting, I got the impression that it was regarding a separate employee. And I think if you look back at the video, I think it would give you a different picture. Maybe that is my perception, but that is the way that I understood the situation as it happened. And I think there was a lot more chaos, but I do think citizen participation, because it was in a different spot, did add to the chaos. But we do get the agenda a couple of days beforehand. So I think part of it is that we do have to do our due diligence to say what is on the agenda, so that we come in here fully informed. And with part of being with MASP, when I was elected, that Thanksgiving, they were offering probably 30 classes, anything from finance to Robert's rule to just what our role is as board members. And I had a perception coming into this role, and MASP corrected that role, and says that we have one employee, and it is Dr. Maliko. We set the policy, and it's for him to then take those policies and develop plans and regulations. And this was, for me, the type of learner that I am, this is a governance clock, and this left a lasting impression for me, where our role is. And for those that are at home, the clock is, you know, from 1:00 to 12:00. And the Board authority is above the superintendent, and we have evaluation outcomes, we adopt visions and goals, we adopt policies. The superintendent authority, he's the management, evaluates the progress, implements operations, and he develops the plans. He or she develops plans and regulations. And I would be remiss to say that I've done everything perfectly. I have board members who, you know, at the beginning reminded, yeah, you just have the one, right? You just have the one. And I think we're stronger together because we are one of seven, right? If you have a pie, we each have one seventh of that pie. We don't get to dictate the toppings. One person doesn't get to dictate the toppings, and one person doesn't take, it takes seven slicers or four slices. We each get one slice. We each get a voice with a vote. And I think a lot of the times, when you don't know, and you see our meetings, you think that it's something different, and it's not. And I just want to remind, and part of it is just share that knowledge with all those who are watching, that we are collectively, as a whole, we are one body. So not one voice is more than the other. And I do say this, that I think that we have our core values, and I don't think our core values should be something we expect our students to be held to and not ourselves. We model what we want to see. As parents, we model to our children. As teachers, we model and model and model, and I think as board members, we have to do that as well. We're not going to get everything right. We are going to disagree. I value those disagreements because I find that there's growth there. And with that, I think going forward, I think if we continue with that sort of mindset that we are learning from one another, I think that we'll be stronger for it.
Well stated. Trustee Barry.
I've heard the word perception a few times today. I, like everybody else, was wondering where trustee Mosip was going with this. Then he made it very clear that, hey, guys, we only have one employee. I think all of us at this table know that. And at that point, that's when I pulled the trigger and said, let's into go, let's go into closed session. Now, I'll speak for myself. That closed session we went into was supposed to take 5 to 10, 15 minutes. It took over an hour. To me, it was a very, very enlightening closed session. I took a lot out of that. There were some things I've known all along that, you know, we're just, I'll just leave it alone. It was very important to me that we went into that closed session.
Okay.
I just have-
I respectfully disagree. I think that closed session was-
It's not the first one we disagree, and I'm sure we'll agree on a lot of things.
And we can disagree, and I think that closed session-
That's my, said my opinion.
Right. And I, and I want to state my opinion, that I think that closed session was, again, if we have standards for our students, we need to have standards for ourselves.
Thank you, trustee Watts. I actually remember bringing that clock to this Board probably before you were elected, and I preached the same thing. However, MASP obviously is a very well-respected organization, and they do a lot of things, but I go by what I was elected to do, the discharging, as pleased for myself. I was elected to discharge the duties of a trustee, part of this body, to become part of this body. Trustee Petrikov speaks always. That's the first thing that she trained me on this Board. We're all here, Adel is one. We deliberate, and we make decisions on this table, and I appreciate that, trustee Petrikov. One thing that I want to mention, it's very important, I was in a student class for US government after the ceremony at the Memorial Day at Salford, and I sensed one thing. When we were talking about the three different branches of government, federal, state, and city, I sensed that we're, we're very different than the federal government. We're very different than even our city government, because we do have a legislative branch, judicial branch, and a, an executive branch. But this body seems like it's, from my own interpretation, is that we are the oversight body. We are the body that listens and, and to, to what happens coming from the citizens. We have to exercise a lot of aspects. It's not something that is by accident. I believe it is by design. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a lot to cover tonight. With trustee Mosip's suggestion that we move citizen's participation up, I honestly don't think that's necessary in this instance. It is before, before we go into action items, and we have-
No, that's not what I meant.
Superintendent's update, which includes a moment of silence and some other things that I think are important that we all, all-
That's not what I meant. I meant, like, we traditionally hold citizen participation two hours. We probably have agenda items that talk about other things, not superintendent's update. I think that's very important to have that before. But I think before any discussion items, before anything that we delve into, we can have other forms of government where they have citizen participation in the beginning for non-agenda items, and then before agenda items, then we have them speak. That's all I, I clarified that for you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Moving on, next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
A superintendent's update, moment of silence.
So we've had some very tragic situations over the past few weeks. I like to observe a moment of silence. We had the tragedy with Gadiar Sala, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the Sala family. I know a lot of us were at the vigil Friday, and several of us were at the funeral, and very tragic. We also had a homebound student, Esra Alqadri, who passed away. And then we also know that we had the tragic, tragic situation in Uvalde, Texas. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for all the victims and their families and pray for the Sala family. Thank you, everyone. And I do want to just say that I thought Ms. Eunice and the community really came out to support the family during the vigil. I know several trustees were there, the police, and it was a big crowd and it was, you know, very emotional. And so I just want to thank the school, community, the staff, the principal, everybody who was there, everybody who was there really to support the family during a difficult time.
Dr. Malenko and Madam President, if I may add to the Lori community, I mean, they were hit three times. There was another student who lost her father due to a motorcycle accident, which was very traffic in Monroe, as well as there was another eighth grader who lost their father due to a heart condition in another state. So to the Hamud family and to the Al Hayafi family, Muhammad Al Hayafi family, on behalf of this board, we send our condolences.
Great.
Okay, so I'll move along then to retirements. We want to congratulate those who are retiring. We want to thank them for their years of service and I always make sure I do send notes to them. We have Rose Marie Bruno, 25 years. Mary Ann Corrigan, over 21 years. Mary Durth, over 24 years of service. Ada Musa, over 23 years of service. Bonnie Potts, over 11 years of service. And I'm going to do my best here, Ms. Giuseppini Prather. So I apologize if I did not pronounce that correctly, but let's give congratulations to all our retirees. Next, I have, the Exchange Club is here and I'm a member of the Exchange Club and they're here to present some awards and I'll ask them to come up. I'm not sure if Dr. Mazer is here or who, oh, from Exchange. So we'll let them come up and they do great work in the community. We just had a gala and I know trustee Dan Brozio is a member, active member there as well, so.
Dr. Mazer is here, bring him up here.
Oh, is he here? Oh, because I wasn't sure who was coming, I thought.
I just want to take applause for just a second and say, this is the last call for blue cards. If you have them, please turn them in to David Mustin over there. And I also want to recognize our trustee, Pat Dan Brozio, who is also part of the Exchange Club.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Marty Hager and I'm the vice president of the Exchange Club of Dearborn. First, I wish to thank the Board of Education and School District Administration for permitting the Exchange Club to present its Academic Excellence Awards at tonight's meeting to the 2022 valedictorians of Dearborn's three comprehensive high schools. We also want to thank the high school principals and executive director, Adam Martin, for their help in administering this award program. It is greatly appreciated. The Exchange Club of Dearborn has been in existence for nearly 100 years. Throughout these years, the men and women of Exchange have raised funds for many local community programs and projects. Many of the programs are aimed at developing tomorrow's leaders. This evening, we present the Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Award. The 2022 valedictorians named by their high schools will be given a one-time $1,500 cash gift to be used for education or any other purpose. The aim of the Academic Excellence Award Program is to encourage and reward high scholastic achievement and assist recipients with the cost of furthering their education. We'd like to have them come up. It is now my honor to present the cash gift to each of our 2022 valedictorians. The valedictorian and award recipient from Dearborn High, Ms. Xenab Zrek, accompanied by Principal Xenab Jabril.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The valedictorian and award recipient from Edsel Ford High, Mr. Halal Baydoun, accompanied by Principal Rima Hassan. The valedictorian and award recipient from Fordson High, Ms. Lila Kasam, accompanied There is one catch, however. Sometime within the next year, each recipient and a high school representative are to attend a local Exchange Club luncheon as our guests and let our members know how you're doing in the next phase of your education. We will contact the recipients in the months ahead to find a convenient time for them to do so. Again, congratulations to award recipients and their families. And again, thank you to the school board and school administration for its help and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to the students. I'm going to call up now Dr. Swaden and we have three students of the advisory council, Thomas, Maryam, and Tia. They're going to provide a presentation. And I think President McDonald, we did move this ahead because the students are here. We wanted to let them present sooner rather than later, otherwise they would have been during the special report section. So Dr. Swaden, I'll turn it over to you. Dr. Swaden does a great job. I know Ms. Musa overseeing the council, working with me, and it's now been seven years and it's actually my favorite thing of the year is those monthly meetings and those WhatsApp communications and all the things I get from students. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Swaden.
Well, I mean, as we're closing the year, I'm thinking back at when we worked together at Salina. And at that point, the conversation was started about how promoting student voice and student initiative and listening to what the students want and need. And when you brought the CUVI, the CUVI training, not just for the staff, for our students. And now, you know, all these years later, I think the SSAC has become really a strong force. They, we keep getting stronger and stronger every year. And we appreciate, Dr. Malenko, that you allow them to speak their mind at the meetings and challenge you and help move the direction that it needs to go. They, they're amazing and, you know, we have 20-some members and it's not just them, but it's also their peers. I mean, that's what they do. They're a force in every building. And this year, we've had them in all five buildings. So I'm going to turn it over to them, love them all, and they'll share what they've done.
All right, good evening, everyone. Board trustees, Dr. Malenko, President McDonald. We're just going to go ahead and get started. I'm Thomas Bessick, I'm a 10th grader at Dearborn High.
And I'm Tia Berry, I'm an Edsel Ford high schooler, 11th grade.
And my name is Miriam Al Segir, I'm a student at Edsel Ford High School in D C M S T.
Wait, before they start, I just want to say, we do have 20-some members and we put it out there before presentations to ask, everybody has a chance to present. And there are some that are more comfortable presenting than not, but all contribute. So I just wanted to leave that out there.
So like Dr. Swaden said, we have about 25 members from each of the five buildings of three high schools, Dearborn High, Fordson, Edsel Ford. And then we have a few members from D C M S T, Michael Berry and Henry Ford Early College.
So for those of you that are asking, what is SSAC? SSAC serves as a student voice in the Dearborn Public Schools Administration. Throughout the year, SSAC coordinates and participates in several activities centered around promoting empathy and community outreach. Starting in the fall, members meet monthly to discuss district issues such as school improvement and student empowerment with Dr. Malenko. Some guests that were included throughout this year include Chief Hadad, which was chief of police, Ms. Jabril, Ms. Hassan, Ms. Al Qadri, Dr. Winfrey Green, and Mr. Baydoun, all principals from our high schools. And we also had the head of food service and many more. These are just some that we wanted to include.
All right, and now we're going to highlight some initiatives that we have done throughout this year. First, we have held an Oxford High School shooting memorial at the Henry Ford Centennial Library. So following the tragic shooting at Oxford High School, members planned and attended a candlelight vigil honoring the victims of the shooting. Residents were sold at each high school in order to raise monetary donations for the victims' families. And next, we also held a MLK charity drive. So in honor of Martin Luther King Day, members held donation drives at their respective schools. Donations were distributed to the Disabled American Veterans Organization and the First Step to the Sick of You Shelter.
All right, and throughout the year, specifically in the winter months, we held some activities for our middle school students to kind of acclimate them to the high school environment. We held tours and lunches just to kind of explain some opportunities and the high school environment to these students. They actually came from SED SAC, which is the middle school version of our group. It stands for Superintendent, Executive Director, Student Advisory Council. I know it's a lot, but, but yeah, we did that. And I think it's a really good thing that we did, just to kind of acclimate these students to the high school environment, just so they kind of have a step above, you know, their friends and just can help them out in return. After that, in May, a few of us went to middle schools. We held activities in classrooms to promote empathy and compassion, also bringing awareness to bullying to the middle school students. And that was very effective. They were able to listen to us and see us as mentors. So that was our most recent and our latest activity.
As we mentioned last month as well, and as Thomas was speaking about in the character of the core, we had members also help out with students with special needs. They painted cards and rocks with positive messages, as well as impacting conversations with Yale students. So we made sure that students from across the district had conversations and were a part of this very special day. Last but not least, we had our school improvement feedback. So throughout our monthly meetings throughout this year, members shared important feedback on how new and older district initiatives can be improved. This went from food service, drinking fountain maintenance, and student involvement. So we made sure students from each part of the SSAC, we all got feedback from our peers and we made sure to bring that to the meeting so changes can be made.
All right, and lastly, I just want to thank everyone that was involved in SSAC, like Dr. Swaden, Ms. Musa, and Dr. Malenko, just for, just giving us an outlet to produce change within our schools and just fostering a sense of community within the district. So, thank you.
You three are amazing. Another round of applause. Hi, all of us had a very stressful week and very stressful day today, but the three students that we just awarded a scholarship to and you three, honors night was last week for all three high schools, graduations. This is, you guys give us energy to keep going, so thank you.
Absolutely. Trustee Moser.
I have a question. So being part of SSAC and obviously you're an ambassador, how do you solicit feedback from your colleagues at your respective high school? I'm sorry, this is a hard question. Go ahead.
I think more of it comes from what we hear in our high schools. So of course, we hear the positives, we hear the negatives, but more importantly, we have to think of what's reasonable and what we think we can bring to the table. So as student ambassadors in our respective high schools, whatever we think that, like, our students are heavily speaking about, we make sure that that's brought to the table and we make sure we have some reasonable solution to bring forth.
So do you have any uniform way of, like if a student, for example, like myself, a male student, doesn't really know what SSAC, how would I know about you? Do you have something in your every school? I think I've talked about this last time.
Well, we have a daily bulletin, if that's what you're speaking of, you know? And we always promote it. It's set over the P A system every single day. And that's also at Fordson and Dearborn High. There's some sort of like news source throughout every high school. And on top of that, the SSAC also provides students throughout our high schools with surveys. So if they see any issue, they can respond back within the survey and we can see the responses.
And I would also like to add that for every initiative that we do, we do also sign off that it is sponsored by the SSAC committee. And that also just enables, like, that just allows people to just give us questions and then we can just, can we communicate them to the meetings.
And one more last question. Sorry, I've taken more time. But if students want to be like you, right? Now, they're watching us and be like, Thomas is giving a shout out on Instagram. But how do they get involved? How do they become part of SSAC? Is there a process that you want to tell us about, I think that you went through?
Yeah, so the general application is emailed out to 10th, 11th, and 12th graders in the fall. And it's really simple, you just got to answer a few questions, maybe, I think there's an essay involved or just a short little excerpt about a time when you're a leader. But even if you don't get into SSAC, don't stop being a leader. It's really simple. Just to kind of stand up, be a leader, help each other out. You don't need to be part of an organization to be a good person.
Amazing. Thank you.
Trustee Watts?
All right, so two questions. Number one, I want you to think of this. So you have all of our attention. What is your wish list? Before you answer that, now number two, tell me how it's structured. So you said that you have the essay, you are selected, you meet monthly, right? So you get feedback from the students. And then how do you decide what is presented? And then once it is presented, to whom and then what happens afterwards?
As far as for the structure, we do have monthly meetings and we do decide on an agenda before the meeting and we do send it to our advisor, to Dr. Swaden. And then after everything's set in the agenda, we just review it and just go as what is needed to be done.
So when the, before the agenda's made, there is an email sent to all the students saying?
Her favorite thing, being on camera.
Before every meeting, there's an email that's sent to all the members asking if they want something on the agenda. And then even if, you know, even if they don't want something on the agenda, there's, we give them space during the meeting if they want to bring up anything. So anything that's brought up has to be something that they are concerned about, nothing.
So it's student-led?
It has to be. It has to be student-led. And then when they bring up something and they want to do something, then we work with them on, okay, now how do we get this done? What do we need to do to get this done? If it needs Dr. Malenko's support, then he says, okay, then I can meet with you, I can call this person, we can do this. But it's, I mean, I just met with a student today after school, he and his mom, because he had this, he has this great idea about bringing tutoring to students. And he really wants to move this forward, but he wants to, we have tutoring, but he feels like it's not advertised enough. And so over the summer, so he's going to write up a plan and over the summer, he's going to work on it and then he will recruit, not just these, but then they go to their club leaders and ask, you know, and give that information. And then regarding the application, we really try as hard as we can to get the word out to everybody because our first priority is to make sure that they're representative of our school. And so there are, in some, for some groups, it's hard to get them to apply. So I will even say, I'll help you fill out the application, right? Because we, I mean, we have to make sure that we have a representative sample and that's something that I think keeps us up a lot when we're coming up with the group and which is why we're bigger this year.
All right, so for the fun, what's the wish list that you wish you could ask for?
Better bathrooms.
Okay.
Maybe more club outreach.
Club outreach?
Mm-hmm.
How so?
Just the, just the extracurricular school participation is really limited in our schools. If there's like a better way to, I guess, initiate more participation across the district, I think that would be really nice.
Okay.
And I think mine would be maybe better sources for career readiness and college readiness.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, guys. You guys are wonderful.
I want to make one statement real quick. Any board member that has not had the opportunity to go to one of their meetings, please find the time in your schedule to do something, watching these kids in action. It just, it's amazing. It's amazing. And Dr. Swaden does an outstanding job.
Is it possible, if Joanne can send those invites, because I've asked to be included? I think I attended one during COVID, but I have not seen the schedule. I don't know what times they meet.
They are listed and under superintendent's, in board briefs, under superintendent's dates. They're always listed in there.
I'm just saying, this is so crucial that I would like to see if it's in a meeting invite, if it's, it doesn't have to be every meeting, I'm saying one meeting of the year that three board members or two board members would attend casually on a rotating basis.
All right, so I'll continue on and I'm going to ask Mr. Wall and Mr. Addy to come up. There's special education updates and it's positive, but we're going to have Mr. Salee do it later in the agenda about transportation. It's the section that you asked for later, so we're going to bring him up later. But we have positive developments there. Just letting the board know, you know, the district membership of M H S A will be on the agenda next time, right, Joanne, for approval for the board? And I always alert you publicly prior. And as COVID numbers, I would say are, you know, they uptick a little, but we're not overly concerned with the spike. We're still monitoring it, we're still implementing, and, you know, people have the right to wear masks or not. And we are still, you know, doing what we need to with our nurses to make sure everyone's protected. everyone's protected. Um, and so that, that is really overall a positive. And then I think I have Mr. Wall and Mr. Addy to come up, but I just want to mention as they come up, um, to talk about the CAREHOC. I want to mention that, you know, since the shooting in Texas, um, and even prior to that, we had Oxford and others, the district has really been doing a lot of things. Um, you know, drills and lockdowns are done all the time. And so I put out a communication to the community a few, a couple of weeks ago when the shooting occurred and it kind of listed a lot of the things that we're doing. Um, and, uh, it includes stuff with our great social workers that, uh, support our students. We have Safebox in the schools. Um, and, you know, we, we have approved emergency management plans that go to the state for approval. And then we are in transition for the CAREHOC system. Um, along with that, I will mention that, um, Chief Shaheen has said that he will be providing, um, more, uh, police presence around the school, uh, schools for the rest of the year, just for that extra sense of, uh, security and protection for our students. So that was a real positive. In fact, I want to thank him. The very next morning, um, he called me at like 7:00 AM and I was heading to the, um, Grand Rapids with the mayor for the Green School. And he called me very early to, to let me know that, you know, the police officers would be there to support. So we appreciate his support and all the officers. And then the CAREHOC system is under, it's still not fully, uh, installed, but I'm going to let these gentlemen do a quick update on where we're at with that, Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko, members of the board. This has been a, a, a process for several years. Uh, we bid this out back in 19 and 20 and we actually did not get sufficient bids, so we went out and redid it again. We got some additional bids. Uh, unfortunately, this was happening right before the pandemic hit. So this project was put on hold for a while and we were able to do some wiring in the interim in some of the buildings. But this process, when they actually brought it to the board, was a new process. Our old Duquesne system was end of life. We can no longer get parts for it and it was really basically more of a TV slideshow than actually emergency system. So we put together an RFP and went out there and asked people, what kind of systems are out there that's going to meet our specific criteria to address emergency needs? So that's how we got onto DAT data systems to actually be the vendor that we selected, knowing that they had a newer type model. So the first step obviously is actually them walking through the building. So that took a while. And then we actually started to the installation phase. We started at the elementaries and kind of working our way through. So this has been a long process due to the pandemic. We are just now finishing. Our expectation is to have the system in place and ready to go by this end of summer. So the start of next school year will be in place. Now, I'm not going to talk about the technology side. I'll let, you know, Mr. Addy deal with that one.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Ladies and gentlemen from the board, Dr. Maleko. Um, so in terms of the technology side with the CAREHOC Emergency Alert System, we've been working through a couple of various issues. The first of those being the supply chain issue. So we were delayed in getting some of the shipments that we were supposed to receive with clocks. And so this is why we have a redundant form of communication in place in buildings, uh, using Google Chat, WhatsApp, and other various apps like that to be able to have redundant forms of communication, as well as some of the existing Duquesne system parts that have not been taken out of the buildings at this point. We also ran into an issue with programming with the Duquesne, or with the CAREHOC system as well too, where there was an issue with, uh, larger numbers of clocks being fully supported with the master clocks. And so what we found in some of our buildings was because of the larger number of clocks, they were not able to get out the message to the smaller numbers. And so we've worked through this with DAT as well as with the CAREHOC company in order to resolve this by separating the VLANs. In doing so, we've, uh, tried the solution out already in one of the buildings and plan on implementing them in our larger buildings as well too, which should resolve that. With volume issues, we do have classrooms that report to us. And so what we do is we work with the vendor to adjust the volume in the rooms that might have lower volume or higher volume like that, so that it meets the needs of the buildings. And so that's where we're at with those various, uh, component parts right now. We do have weekly meetings with CAREHOC and DAT, discuss any concerns that we have and, um, look forward to brain, you know, brainstorming with them as we work forward with the solution.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just a, a kind of question. I have a question too. Maybe you'll have a wait.
So we've been getting, uh, incident reports throughout probably the last month, six weeks about this system. How confident are you that this system is going to be functioning the way that we expected to once the work is complete?
That's a great question. So what we've also done too is we've worked with an outside consultant as well too, to look at the solutions that have been proposed. So Delta is one of our outside consultants and we've looked at, uh, with the VLAN solution, they're confident that this would be able to work with the current larger number of CAREHOCs that are in some of our high schools and middle schools. Um, with my analysis, it seems to be functioning as it should. We've implemented the solution at one of the buildings already and so far, so good with that. Uh, but we are monitoring the situation. I have Director Kennerberg here as well too, uh, who can also attest to this.
We feel very confident, um, at Fortson where this, um, solution has been implemented. Um, many of the issues that were present before are nonexistent right now. There is a, a, a small issue that affects, uh, probably about six classrooms in the upper A Hall and that's because the switch is overloaded with the power. We're going to adjust for that if it wasn't already done today. Um, we're moving on to look at Etzel and Dearborn High, uh, receiving this fix, uh, before the end of the week, along with several of the middle schools that have a certain threshold of, uh, CAREHOC units.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Trustee Moses?
Yeah. Um, how many buildings are we completely finished with this project? And are we anticipating a finish date for this contract to then?
So far, we've, uh, we have completed 17 buildings on the list. There are 16 that are in various stages of completion. So in some of those buildings, they've started with the wiring, some they have some of the CAREHOCs that are installed, so it's at various stages. Some where they have yet to start the wiring and install the CAREHOCs. So our goal is to have this done by the end of summer, uh, for the start of the upcoming school year.
And do you think that we've learned from the incidents at Fortson, what we can do to improve in, in the other schools? Or is it Fortson is a unique situation because of its architecture?
So, um, in looking at the situation with separating the VLANs...
You want to speak to that microphone?
Oh, sure. In, uh, looking at the Fortson situation, specifically Fortson is our largest building. And so with the number of CAREHOCs that were installed in the building there, that's why we saw kind of like the overload with the master clocks and the, uh, the ones that report to them like that. So in separating the VLANs, like, uh, Director Kennerberg has said, we've, we see success at this point. And so what we look at is you can also separate them into three VLANs if we find that the solution is not working like that. So we're going with two because right now what we see is it should be able to support up to 128 CAREHOCs that are on there. And we're going to implement that across the board. And then we will, uh, continue to, to go forward with that, uh, with each of the buildings that have over 128.
Trustee Petrikov?
Okay, I'm, I'm not asking this question to cast aspersions on the decision to go with the CAREHOC, um, program or anything, but when, and I understand that there's been a lot of moving parts that have made this a difficult, um, process. But when the contractor vendor was selected, did they even come to our largest school building and take a look and say that they could competently, um, install this, uh, without issues? Um, because now we're finding, I don't want to repeat these mistakes down the road for anything else that we may be considering. Um, and we know that, um, there's been a, a lot of stops and starts with this. And I have to assume that there are, are, are large facilities, say office space, businesses, what have you, that must have some kind of systems in place as well. Did we go with a system that maybe was the least expensive because of the bid process? Or are, are, are we entrusting, uh, this company, um, with the expertise that we would like to see when we pay for something?
Yeah, as part of the RFP process, we required them to do a walk through our buildings back then. And I believe we also gave them an opportunity to, one of our switches, to make sure that communication was working. What I think they fell short on is that most schools don't have a size of Fortson or, you know, to have the size, you know, of a larger high school. And I think what they were testing was in a controlled environment. And obviously, when you're talking about high schools, they're very large. And I think that kind of caught them off guard and had them slow the process. So we, we worked through that process. It is, as, as Mr. Addy said, and we've also given them notice, you know, on a legal side to make sure that we're expecting this to be completed by summer. You know, no more if, and or buts. You got to give us in writing your expectations and the completion of this process.
And what would be the, eh, our legal redress if, if they can't?
Well, right now, it hasn't actually been in the legal side. It's more of the formal letter of acknowledgement of what you're going to do to finish this on time and on bu, on budget. We do have one change order coming because as to the size of our project, you're always going to have additional rooms here. Principal wants one more control panel here, so that, that will be coming to the board eventually. But at some point, we got to bring this project to completion.
Right.
And that's what we've started that process to give them notice that they have to put it in writing, the expectations of getting this project done and completed. And even after it's done, as a district, we still might, might want to go through and test the system independently, just to make sure we're not missing anything.
Thank you.
But at this point, we have withheld payment to make sure that they're actually going to complete the work that they're going to do.
Trustee Barry?
Thank you. Uh, I trust these two gentlemen here and they said they're very, very confident things are going to work out. And, uh, Trustee Petrikov went there a little bit, I'm going to take a step further. Have you looked into the contract? Is there, is there an out just in case?
Yes, they are required to have a performance bond for this size contract. So if it gets to a point where they can't complete what they expected to do and the timing of it, we can go against the bond and actually enforce that and go out ourselves and finish it if we wanted to.
Can you explain what that means against the bond? I mean, how far are we into this?
So basically, every large project over $50,000 is required to have a performance bond, where they actually, you know, give us the insurance from outside vendor that they'll complete the project as, as required by the RFP. Now, this project is new, so it gets convoluted, but we'll get there.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, here. You want me to do her, uh?
Uh, yes.
She has the stuff away for me.
Next item, please.
Thank you.
Are we other?
I'm finished, thank you.
You're finished? Okay. Recognition and acknowledgement?
Yes.
Commendations?
Wait, did we, are you done with your report?
Yeah, I just asked them.
There was a couple of other items I...
He combined them.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, you combined them?
I'm pushing one to...
Yeah, before we move forward.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. I did say some of the comments earlier, but, uh, there's a couple of things I wanted to get to. Uh, I put, I put something out there a few days ago. If I have seen further, it is, it is by standing on the shoulders of giants, Isaac Nguyen. And some of my colleagues are probably thinking, what's going on with him? But it'll be a little bit more clear. And you should have took me out for that birthday lunch because I have a lot to say. So take that battery out of that gavel. Yeah, before there was the Dearborn Public School Board of Education, there was Fortson Board of Education, there's Springwells Board of Education. So we do stand on others' shoulders and, uh, uh, the respect has to stay at this table. The respect has to stay at this table. Mary, uh, Trustee Petrikov, I'm sorry, Trustee Petrikov, a few weeks ago, we were at a parade and I said, hold that thought. An employee was talking to me and you were standing there. And I realized that she didn't recognize you, didn't know you, and I made her introduction. I said, hold that thought. Uh, that happens a lot more. I, you know, I'm out there in the community, I, you know, you know where, what I do for a living, I don't have to advertise it. I'm out there, I see a lot of people. There was, uh, there was two graduations just recently on the other side of Michigan Avenue, where after the first graduation, somebody came up to me and said, who was that sitting next to you in the wheelchair? Is that one of the students that couldn't walk up there? I said, no, that's my boss this year. That's Roxanne McDonald, that's Chair Roxanne McDonald, okay? Uh, she was not recognized at that meeting, at that graduation. The following graduation, uh, trustee Deambrosio was sitting next to me and I got the same question. Who was, is he a professor or something like that? The respect has to stay on the table. We cannot let others disrespect us. Going back to Fortson, they just celebrated the 100-year anniversary. I just received a cup from the principal there, thank you very much. But this is a question for you, Dr. Maleko. I know it was a, it was a committee from the community that put this together and planned this and they did an amazing job. But my question to you is when you first saw the program, did you realize that there was no, there was no board members on that program?
Yeah, I actually didn't get the program. I was just asked to go and speak at a certain point, so I really wasn't involved at all, including with the program, so...
I did, I did ask, I did ask two superintendents, one from Oakland County, one from Northwest Wayne County. Something that big happens, wouldn't somebody from the board be present? So what happened was, one of my colleagues went up there. That night, as soon as the people got in, started getting together at the thing, I started getting, uh, text messages about the program. Hey, how come so-and-so's not speaking? Wes, why isn't, why isn't anybody speaking? I did approach my president a week later and the look on her face broke my heart. I said, were you asked to speak at the Fortson reunion? And your response was, no, you weren't. And the look on your face was very, very frustrating. So there was somebody there that said, hey, this is not right. In the absence of the president, maybe I should do something. Was it the wrong thing, the right thing? There was a veteran, there was a couple of veteran board members there. Should, should he have approached them to discuss? And that created a little friction between us. Again, not our fault, it came from other people's decisions. We need to keep working together. I had a long, I value my colleagues, each and every one of you. I had a long sentence here that I wanted to go over on each one of you right here, but I'll just summarize it. Jim, when you and I did in 2020, I thought I was helping you, you were actually helping me. I was president and you were vice president. I said, hey, let's work together and Dr. Maleko gave us accolades on that team, on that, you know, on that team. That year, what we did was just amazing. Maybe we can save the district some money and Jim and I can, uh, lead that, uh, team building, uh, session. I'm glad people are laughing because we need to kind of break the ice here. Mary, what you do in the community, I really appreciate you. What you did in the community before you coming onto this board doesn't go unnoticed. Everywhere I go, people remember what you did at the different commissions at the city. So I personally appreciate you. We can't sit here just in January and say, it's, it's board, school board appreciation, they didn't get a certificate, move on. We need to continue doing this. Irene, what could I say? What, where do I start? Honest to God, where do I start? Teachers should know this. It doesn't go out there. Teachers should know this. My first year back on the board, I was saw teacher after teacher after teacher after teacher resign unwillingly. Uh, uh, there was a, there was a letter that went out to the teachers, sort of questionable. Trustee Thorpe stepped up and said, hey, this is foul play, this needs to stop. Kind of changed a little bit and we went back to it. We had, we had, we had a doctor of education retire unwillingly. We had one of the best, not one, two teachers out of Bryant, two teachers, I think combined service of over 50 some years leave. They weren't happy to leave. At one meeting, five words, five words, you changed that discussion. We don't, just before, we were talking about the summer school program and what you said kind of shifted things and here we are right now. We're celebrating teachers, we're compensating teachers. So that's very important to me. So that's very important to me, I appreciate you for doing that. Roxanne, what could I say? We say student first, that's your life, student first. Every time that something comes out of your mouth, I think of student first. Pat's here getting a little nervous, he's, what's he gonna say about me? But you know what? You're a very caring person, you bring your heart to every meeting, to every decision you make, and I value that. You're, you're, you're a veteran mom, and you know, a lot of work we do at the college, you step up to the plate, so thank you very much. I appreciate you for that. Adel, your intent is great. Your intent is amazing. I, I, I know you, so I know what directions you're going. You need to get us on board with the direction you're going. Don't take that as a negative thing, that's, I mean that. You do some amazing things when you represent the students, when you talk to students, when, you know, I thought everybody knows me, but when I go to like a graduation or honorite, I'm like, hey, guys, what about me? Because the students know Adel, he's been with them most of their lives. Pat, when I first got on the board here, twenty, almost 12 years ago, there was a name by name of Kevin. I'll call him Kevin, because that's his name. My name came up at a meeting, and they said, Dad Hussein Barry doesn't say much. Now, Kevin didn't tell me this, but one of his, somebody that was sitting at a meeting said, yeah, but when he does, you should pay attention. So there was a discussion here that was supposed to take weeks, maybe months, to get to. And there was, there was people speaking for five minutes, six minutes. I had a lot to say that night, and again, four or five words spoke volumes, and you just shut that discussion down, and you, you know, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I also want to thank you. There was two students from Dearborn High, I never got a chance to thank you for this publicly. There was two students from Dearborn High, by mistake, I'll keep it clean, were asked to leave Dearborn High on a Friday. I sent the email to yourself, Roxanne, and Dr. Maleko, trust, I'm sorry, President McDonald and Dr. Maleko. And Tuesday, one of the students was back in school. Then two days later, his sister was back in school. This stuff goes unnoticed. You don't have to sit here and talk for hours and hours and hours like I'm doing, and everybody's getting mad at me right now, I wasn't even gonna shut up. But you know what? Thank you for doing that, because if you didn't, and by the way, by the way, those two students didn't look like my friend here, they looked like me. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to...
Back to, back to Fortson, Henry Ford, slowly, here, whatever, they see the board maybe a little bit divided, a little bit disrespected. Now we got employees sending us email, naming, naming a trustee by name, that they're unhappy with him. Really? That's what you want to do? I've asked a couple questions of Dr. Maleko, he's giving me some answers, but we'll get to this letter eventually, but do not let anybody come between us. What we do is very, very important. Dr. Maleko and I, and Jim and I spoke about this, sometimes we're on the phone for a long time. There's some things that we can't disclose to the public, we can't disclose to a significant other. If we don't bounce these ideas off each other and vent a little bit, then who do we talk to? We can't, we can't break any laws. I get the calls like trustee Petrikov and Adel and everybody, trustee Mosib, that, what can you tell me about this so-and-so situation? I'm like, wow, you're telling me more than I know. And you think we're lying to them, but that's the truth. So please, please, the respect for this board needs to stay on the table, and it's upon us, all seven of us, to keep it that way. Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak.
I absolutely agree, I absolutely agree.
I just want to follow up just quickly. I, ever since I joined this board, I've been surrounded by so many phenomenal board members. I know trustee Lane is in attendance, and yeah, we did not see, and she's still here.
Yep.
We did not see eye to eye in, in some areas, but we, we bonded together right after the appointment. So I appreciate all of you, I appreciate your wisdom and your guidance, especially you trustee McDonald, and also trustee Petrikov, when I came as, as a newest appointee, and then I had to run an election to be, to be joining you for the next six years. A lot of people tell me this job is very difficult. It is, it is very stressful. We oversee not only this institution, but also the other one on Evergreen. And it's very important that we commit the time and resources, and sometimes special time. So thank you to all of you.
Okay, I'd like to move it along a little bit, we're running late on time, we still have a ton of blue cards to get to, so thank you for your comments. I couldn't agree more that the board needs to be united, and we need to work together. Disagreements are wonderful, it helps us grow, but we do, we are a team, and we need to be able to trust each other and be a team. Go ahead, next item, please. Commendations.
Commendations?
Good evening, President Roxanne McDonald, trustees, Superintendent Maleko. I have this young, fine young man with me here over here, Malik Salam, we're here for the Ice Cream Social, and he's gonna read off the commendations. He's a little bit nervous, he might pronounce some, some names, but I told him he's gonna be great. Matt Mc...
Good evening. Commendation to the seven seniors who earned medical certificates through the Michael Berry Career Center. Ali Yasin of Dearborn High earned his certified pharmacy technician. Those earning their certified clinical medical assistance include Riaym El-Duweis, Norm Muzlum, Laura Nasradine, and Zara Archie, all from Fortson High. Sajdan Al-Halfi from Dearborn High, and Sarah Mushid from Etzel Ford High. Congratulations to the 21 graduating seniors who received scholarships from the Rotary, Rotary Club of Dearborn. Scholarships range from 2,500 to 9,500. Olivia Sherman of Dearborn High received the 9,500 Harry Sizan Scholarship. Glenn Warren and Malak Elian, both of Dearborn High, received the Huge Archery Scholarships. Receiving the past president's scholarships are Mohammed Al-Hameed and Asma Eidi from Fortson, and Hilal Baydoun and Ahmed Kiyat, both at Etzel Ford. All four students are also dual-enrolled at Henry Ford College. Commendations to the 14 students who received the Otto Rowan Scholarship from the Rotary. Commendations to the Fortson and Etzel Ford High School Key Clubs and Fortson Club Advisor Zainab Sharik, who received recognition at the recent Kiwanis State Convention. Ms. Sharik received the Outstanding Faculty Advisor Award for the third time at the convention. Of 21 awards for students, Fortson was awarded eight, and Etzel received four. The Fortson, Etzel, and Dearborn High Key Club are all sponsored by Dearborn Kiwanis Club. Commendations to DC MST and Dearborn High student Zain Muhammad. He received a letter from Governor Whitmore, recognizing him as an outstanding Michigan Commendations to Fortson Band Orchestra and Choir, and the Woodworth Orchestra for hosting fifth grade students from Becker, William Ford, Miller, Oakman, and McDonald Elementary Schools at Fortson High School. The visit was designed to share with the fifth graders all from, all of different music classes that are available to them in middle and high school. The students were also treated to an exciting musical performance. Special thanks to Fortson music teacher Dan Taylor and his fellow music teachers for organizing the event. Commendations to the district students on Dearborn United Figure Skating Team for the club's team's successful season. Commendations to Woodworth Boys and Brian Girls Soccer Team for winning their district titles. This was the first year the district offered interment soccer in the middle schools. Commendations to Arav Karavi, who represented Dearborn Public Schools' virtual K-12 and National Elementary Championship held in Columbus, Ohio. Arav won the national title for the K-3 U-700 category, winning all seven games. Commendations to Stephanie Stover, early childcare program supervisor, who assisted at Long Elementary's theme literacy night. Commendations to Chris Maceroll of Henry Ford Elementary. Ms. Maceroll organized the school-wide Battle of the Books to encourage students to get reading. More than 100 students participated. Through Ms. Maceroll's works selecting donations, each participant received a new book and many won additional prizes. Thank you.
Well done.
By the way, I'm Mr. Baydoun, Osama Baydoun, Assistant Principal on the Dearborn Heights Campus, and this is Malik Salam from Magnet, did a phenomenal job, thank you guys so much.
Yes, it is. You're gonna take up public speaking now, correct, Malik?
Amazing pronunciation, amazing.
Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Dr. Chokol?
Dr. Chokol, please.
While we wait for Dr. Chokol, I just want to say, congratulations to Olivia. I think I spoke with her and her mother. Phenomenal job to be a state champ for a club that we have in our schools for figure skating. So congratulations, Olivia, and to your family.
Thank you, trustee Mosip. Can I please remind you to wait until I...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It was very quick, thank you.
Donations. A donation of $444.22 has been offered to Becker Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for English language learners. A donation of $700 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by communities and schools of Michigan to be used for bounce houses during the field day celebration. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Access Youth and Education to be used for office and classroom supplies. A donation totaling $4,700 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Maori from CRSD to be used for PBIS student incentives and awards. Monies were received from March through May. A donation of a field trip was offered to Salina Elementary School by communities and schools of Michigan to be used for busing and admission for all students, staff, and chaperones to the Detroit Zoo. A donation of $158 has been offered to Snow Elementary School by donors choose to be used for wiggle seats and fidget tools for Ms. Mullier's classroom. Thank you.
I know, well, let's see, next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Regular P-12 meeting, May 9, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 123. Executive session, closed superintendent performance, May 9, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 124. Superintendent Evaluation Committee meeting, May 17, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 125. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Barry, seconded by trustee Deambrosio. Are there any corrections?
Yeah, I have one correction, and it's not, I'm sorry, it's not a correction, it's just one addition.
Okay.
So it's very important to, that the record reflects...
I'm sorry, it's a what?
It's a, it says, I, that I said something at the meeting, and it was not noted?
Is it on the regular minutes, though?
Regular minutes, yeah. So it's toward the discussion we were talking about, I am willing to pay for more taxes for newer schools. I have that here. This is on the potential bond, sorry. It's on the regular meeting.
Can you give Joanne a page number, please?
Twenty-seven. Paragraph where it says trustee Mosip said, it is important that we invest in our schools. And I'd just like to mention that I said something that I don't read here, and what I said is that people are hurting, that, because I, my words were miscreant, they were taken out of context, and people were selling this like I own a big house and a mansion and cars, and I don't care for the everyday people. So that, I was really offended by that, that people are that. I don't know how is it taken, but I want just to make sure that the record is clear, and my words were very, and, and thank you for Joanne, and it just, I just read this right now, and it's very important that we reflect that. So I'd like to go back to the tape perhaps, but it's to say word by word, and I think it's three sentences that I mentioned, people, but, I said the word but, people are hurting. There are a lot of taxes, and they pay for a lot of taxes, and I mentioned the case of my uncle paying or trying to buy a house in Dearborn, and he can't afford it. So I'd like that to be in the record, please.
Okay, are there any others? Hearing none. May I have a roll call for approval of minutes?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Okay.
Could we go back? I'm sorry, I had to use the restroom, but I came in on the conversation about the Fortson speech, and I think it's important that we recognize that there is a hierarchy, and I think that we also need to recognize that we have other trustees that are there in attendance, that we communicate. I think that's part of it, is the communication portion. So I may have missed that?
Yeah, I did say that. I said, I didn't mention names, but I said there was two other veterans.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't quite sure.
There should have been a discussion, I think the superintendent should have stepped in and had a discussion, and...
But I think before somebody steps into that role, if there are other trustees...
Hundred percent correct, yeah, we're good there.
I'm over communicating.
I just, my point was, maybe it's not a big deal, but that's how friction starts between you and I.
I personally was not offended that we weren't on the stage.
Yeah.
But I think when I saw that somebody else was representing, I think that's where...
I was offended that our president was not asked to speak. I was very offended by that, just for the record.
Okay. I think more communication.
Thank you.
I think we can agree on that, right?
You're shaking your feet, yes.
Can I, can I add something?
Okay, quickly.
Yeah, I just want to say it's the office of the trustee. It doesn't matter if it was myself, obviously, because everyone is talking about me, so might as well just get the genie out of the bottle. But it's the, it's the respect for the office of trustee, thank you.
No, that's what we are...
Special reports?
Yes.
Mr. Mashur is gonna, President McDonald wanted Mr. Mashur to come up and provide a little update on athletics and situation at Etzel Ford Coaching.
I think there's a lot of people in the room that are concerned about some things that have gone on with athletic and coaching, so I think we have some updated information that I would like to put out there.
I think...
Mr. Mashur, there he is.
I didn't know if you were gonna call me personally or not. Good evening, everyone. My name's Abe Mashur, Director of Student Services and District Athletics. First of all, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank the Exchange Club for everything that they do. I know they were here presenting scholarships, but they do so much more for all of our, the kids in our community. Whenever we have house fires or anything, we have, we're blessed, we're very, very blessed in this community to have a lot of organizations that reach out to us. The Exchange Club is always there to help us with anything that we need. With regard to the Etzel Ford basketball coaching position, I met with Coach Baydoun today, we had an excellent meeting, to say the least. Later this week, Coach and I will be meeting with our Athletic Director Chuck Silver and Principal Mrs. Reema Hassan to determine what we need to do in the best interest of Etzel Ford basketball. My apologies that our meeting last week was perceived negatively and was looked at negatively in a lot of ways. That, I'll take ownership for that, that's not a problem. It's definitely not our intention, I can assure everyone that, and I'm not here to discuss details or conversations that have been had, you know, since last week, Thursday. I will just simply tell everybody with regards to our positions, as far as coaching positions go, generally speaking, we open all the positions every year based on our interest, based on the interest in the positions and so on at each school. Then we determine whether we're gonna have interviews or not, and go from there. But just to, I have for the sake of time, and for everybody that's, I'm sure, chomping at the bit to say what they need to say about different things, I think we're in a good place where we, where with regards to the coaching position at Etzel Ford, and we'll go from there. Anybody have any questions? I'll answer them.
Just one quick, it's in the contract, every year, the principals do have to post every extracurricular, it's part of the contract, and it goes every year.
Right, so depending, and some people have asked, well, why are you, why are you interviewing for this and not interviewing for that? It depends on interest. If we have nobody that's interested, then obviously, the interview's a moot point. If we have quite a few people who are interested, then sometimes we elect to, to interview everybody.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the board secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments, excuse me, comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible, and the board president reserves the right to limit times.
I am gonna say, we have a huge stack of blue cards, and I thank everyone for coming out tonight to share your, your thoughts with us. So I am going to have to adhere very strictly to the three-minute rule. I will let you know when we're down to about 15 seconds left, and I'll ask you to please wrap up your thoughts. So, and if we have any students that have filled out blue cards, it doesn't necessarily say on the blue card, but I'd like to have them come up first, because then we can dismiss them and allow them to go.
Quick question, do you want me to announce the name, and then they can see whether or not they're a student, or should we just have the student?
If there were any students that filled out blue cards, can you let us know? I think that would be faster. There's one over there. Anyone else? There's a couple.
As you come up, can you tell us your name so that I can pull your, I can pull your blue card? So I guess students come first, because we know you need to get to bed at a decent time.
So do I.
You can paper rock who goes first.
Yeah. And just for future notice, we should probably have somewhere on the blue card where designate whether it's a student or not.
Okay. All right, so as you come up, can you tell us your, pull it down, and then tell us your name before you speak, so I can find your blue card, okay?
I'm Rania Fudlawi.
Say it one more time.
Rania Fudlawi.
Found you, okay.
Go for it.
Oh, I'm going to say what you're going to say, or I'm going to, she's going to speak to the board about recent concerns at school, so go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Rania Fudlawi, and today I hope to speak on behalf of the students at Henry Ford Early College. I am a junior at the Henry Ford Early College Program. In my full three years of attending HFAC, I have never been mistreated, discriminated against, or hurt in any way, shape, or form from staff members or principals at HFAC. From my first day as a freshman, I have had the support and resources provided for me by our principal in order for me to succeed in my education. I have never felt alone, unsupported, or unprepared before. My principal and teachers work together to make sure that I never have to experience that. Knowing our principal for three years, I have always been treated with respect and kindness. He treated us students like his own children and always pushed us to succeed. Our principal gave us the love and support we need to do good in school. He has been working in our district for over 20 years and is a vital individual in our community. Throughout all of those years, we have never heard anything less than praise from our principal. Why do all of these allegations come out now? As a student attending HFAC, I can strongly say that these allegations are false, and our principal does not deserve to be bashed on social media from supposedly respected people in our community. Some individuals are claiming that our principal is specifically racist towards Iraqis and Yemenis. As a Iraqi student, I have never once in my three years been mistreated in any type of way, and I'm positive other students can agree with me. As a student, why should I have to deal with all these false political issues going on when I should be worrying about my education? Thank you, and I hope you take this into consideration.
Can you please state your name?
Hi, my name is Annika Gaston.
Hold on one second.
I wrote someone's name on there, please do not refer to them as, by their name.
You would like to come to speak to the board about the principal?
Hello, my name is Annika Gaston, and I am an education junior from Henry Ford Early College. In hearing about the allegations that were laid upon Principal One, I could not help but to look back on the situations that have led me to create my opinions on his character. And although I do not want to make a statement declaring that anyone is lying or fabricating a story because of someone was truly victimized, I believe there is power in speaking your truth and holding your, and telling your truth. But in that same sentence, I would like to say and speak my truth if it means that I can bring clarity to my principal's name. There is no doubt that racism happens, but it is the most important thing that those in power are able to shut down the racism as soon as it begins. And being a minority of a minority, Principal One and Principal Two have done nothing but make me feel safe and protected inside of school. In specific, there was a situation in which I was called the N-word several times. But not only was that situation handled in the most professional manner, I was also comforted that this would not happen again, and it didn't. However, even going back further to my ninth grade year, there was a situation where a substitute teacher in my school told me, and I quote, "Do not do the sign of the cross in this classroom, it is controversial." And as broken and truly scared as I was experiencing something like this for the first time, Principal One assured me that this would not happen again and fired that substitute teacher. He gave me the opportunity to say the combinations at the board meeting and assured me that Henry Ford Early College would be a place where I can continue to excel as a student in a safe environment, which is exactly what has happened. I have never once felt out of place or uncomfortable in my learning environment. Principal One has always pushed us to do better and go forward, further than we can even believe we can go. And if it weren't for Principal One, the community and joy for learning that has been created would not be there without him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bashir Alzaba.
Bashir is too nervous to speak, so he's asking me to read his statement. I loved Henry Ford Early College. My brother went there. I thought that when I entered the program, it would be a good opportunity for me and for my future. Now, I don't like it anymore. I hate it, and many of my friends in the engineering program do as well because of the way we got treated. Last semester, I was having a hard time in one of my classes, tech math. On the day of my finals, my professor was late for class, so I had to go to another teacher's class. I started the final, and it was hard. I felt like I was going to fail it, so I pulled out my phone and I cheated. This teacher sent me to the office. This is the same lowly teacher who sent an email to the entire school to show up here today against what I'm seeing. But the entire school can show up if they wanted to, and it wouldn't take away from my experience at Henry Ford Early College or what happened to me. That day, the AP taunted me that I would be making friends with tractors and was trolling me about going to Fortson. I spoke to the principal, he spoke to my mom. The AP told me that if I breathed the wrong way, I would get kicked out of the program. I went back to class, I felt ashamed and embarrassed, I was glad that the whole thing was over, at least I thought it was. A week after the cheating incident, after fourth hour, I was walking towards the lunch line with a group of friends for lunch. The principal was standing in the cafeteria, he pointed at me, said, "Come here," and then walked up to me. He grabbed me by the collar with one hand and used the other to push me backwards against the nearby wall. He then pinned me against the wall, put my shirt in a fist, and with force and pressure, pushed his fist against my collar around my throat. I literally felt the pressure on my throat. He then threatened to expel me from the program if I was caught cheating again. I was scared, very scared. I put my hands in the air. I said, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I won't do it again." I was afraid because he was a six-foot-tall grown man towering over me, and I'm only a 16-year-old kid who made a mistake. I was afraid because he was in a position of power, because I was scared he was going to kick me out of the program and ruin my future. I felt overpowered, blindsided, and humiliated. I'm just a kid, and no kid deserves to be assaulted, not for cheating, not for anything. And when I was reinstated in the college, but only after I got an advocate involved. But that is not enough for me and my family. We want justice. I want justice for what he did to me, and right now, justice is not being served. My own parents don't put a finger on me. If my dad had ever done something like that, you guys would be the first people to call CPS on him. If another adult on the street had done something like that to me, he would have been locked up and in jail. But in Dearborn Public Schools, your employees are above the law. You let them do these things to me. You let Mr. Fadlala assault me and get rewarded for it. You let them. To be clear...
Yep, let's do it. No names, please.
To be clear, a million people can come here and speak in support of the principal, but it will not take away from what happened to me.
Yes, I understand it. Sit down, please. I understand that, that... Stop it!
Guys, guys, there are students here.
I will have you removed if you don't sit down and calm down. Sit down and calm down.
Baby, you guys should ask why. Baby, you guys should ask why he did for him to be, for him to eat this shit. Stop right away.
Hey! Please be quiet. Be careful, and please be careful and do not say names. People make mistakes, we're all human. Be careful, please do not stay, say names, but it's not worth that kind of outburst. Continue, please.
I just want to...
And I want to say one thing, the students are doing a really good job keeping their comments condensed, too, so I appreciate you doing that.
What is your name?
My name is Hassan Barry.
All right, what would you like to speak about?
HFAC.
Okay, go ahead.
So, as referenced by the previous citizens in our community, I also am a part of the engineering program, also known as advanced manufacturing at Henry Ford Early College. I first heard about what had been happening to our principal a couple months ago, and I felt as this, as if this was an unjust representation of who he was to our school. I felt the need to make a survey, a Google survey, as a student of the school, to show this board here what we truly feel of our principal. This is the following. Principal One and all the administration members of HF, oh, I apologize. This is a following submission from a Yemeni student in the school itself, and I believe she was a part of it, health. Our principal and all the administration members at HF, at Henry Ford Early College has done nothing but support and guide us in every direction possible. They provided us, they provide us with only the best. This year, we achieved being a blue-ribbon national school. This school couldn't, couldn't have achieved it without Principal One and its, and our teachers. After the achievement, our Principal One went ahead and threw out, threw a blue-ribbon party filled with fun activities and food. All the students were allowed to attend and have the best time. I can say personally, this memory I'll always fondly look back on. Another thing that Principal One has done has supported allowing River, the River of Hope charity to go on at our school. They're, they are a Yemeni-led group of students who are raising to build wells in Yemen. Principal One not only supported, but let the students take time out of their day to create fundraisers, bake sales, raffles, and et cetera. 100% of the proceeds have gone to Yemen Wells. I love this school because I personally got to donate and tell others outside of school about this fundraiser. I know no one has ever had a problem with Principal One or the administration members. They are so welcoming and take care of their own. Principal One constantly reminds us to always study hard and achieve the highest grades in our tests. He always puts his students first and other administrators in Henry Ford Early College. This is not a submission by myself, it's a submission by a fellow student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us your name?
Hello, my name is Ali Barry, and I'm a student at Henry Ford Early College. As the President of the Henry Ford Early College Student Council, I speak today as a representative of the overall student body and bear witness to the undeniable generosity of our principal. This school's club has organized events, bake sales, fundraisers, under the purpose of raising money for a greater cause. Two of these events evolved around the project of funding the construction of wells in Yemen. Our principal had not only authorized such an event, but has contributed out of pocket to this cause. He has demonstrated nothing short of pure heart and eagerness toward providing assistance towards such a cause. He not only promotes fostered ethnic diversity in his school and to carry every student to their fullest potential, but he treats every student, every, as a child of his own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leila Bizi. I'm here to speak, and this is Madam Swaydan. I'm here to speak on behalf of our principal. The person I am proud to call my principal has always provided my classmates and I with the perfect resources to benefit us and our education. He has prepared us to be college and career-ready. We were taught time management, confidence, leadership, and analytical abilities, among other things. All of the traits we learned are indicative of a successful college student. These tactics are the foundation of not only my success, but my classmates. I have never had a principal that treats us as his own until I came to Henry Ford Early College. Out of all principals I've ever had, I can genuinely say I felt as though none of them cared enough, cared enough to help guide us except for him. He wants to see us succeed. He is an outstanding principal who works hard to ensure that our teachers are prepared to be classroom leaders. He makes sure that our resources and materials are available, and he promotes professional growth opportunities for all students, no matter what their race is. Additionally, to the woman who decided to slander the well-respected teachers at the early college across all social media platforms by calling them captains, "Save a racist," and claimed that they are manipulating students, it really shows how you are as a person and how being an outsider causes misconceptions like this. As you called people to stand against Principal One and told them to come join us at the board meeting, I guess that makes you a manipulator if we are, if we are using your logic. What kind of a person would act like this in front of students? If you think acting like this is going to win you a position as state representative, you're wrong. We all stand for what is right. That doesn't mean we are being manipulated. You want everything your way, but we will not let you get in the way of our principal's success. He is the man who stands up for everything just, and we are great because he's the one who guides us to be the people we are.
For those of, for those of you who wish to regard us as pawns and our teachers as manipulative, this is incorrect. As students, we should have the right to voice our opinions and should not be silenced. As someone who has spent the last two years at Henry Ford Early College, accusations like this has never, have never come up, like, have never come up about the principal, about Principal Number One. People that sit behind a screen making false accusations, exaggeration, and exaggerating a situation are causing many of the students concern of what is going to happen with their principal and what will happen to their school. Unfortunately, due to the circumstances, all HFAC students will no longer be welcomed by Principal One outside in the morning and have positive motivations throughout the day.
Once again, I have to say, thank you, students. You were very well spoken, and you were direct.
Sorry.
Oh, we have another?
Yeah, sorry, I remain seated, just because there's a long line. Kareem Kadu, not going to be addressing you guys on the issue that's been mentioned a few times. As many of you know, I'm a graduating senior from Dearborn High School. Our graduation is on the 11th, so I'm looking forward to that. I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, thank the entire district, Dr. Malaco specifically, the board, for all that you guys have done for us students. I'm a member of Dr. Malaco Student Advisory Council. I've been a member of that council for three years, and prior to that, I was a member of the middle school version of that, the SSAC. And I just have to say, I really have not seen a district take student feedback the way Dearborn has, and whether that's from SSAC to the board, listening to us, sitting in on our meetings, and it is just greatly appreciated by everybody. Dr. Malaco, you've done a great job, and we appreciate, all of the students appreciate the job you've done, same goes to you as the board. So yeah, just wanted to just say thank you to you guys, and not sure if I'll be able to make the SSAC presentation at the next June board meeting, but in case I wasn't able to, I wanted to take that opportunity today.
Thank you very much.
Take care, Kareem. Good luck in finals.
Are there any other students that had filled out blue cards? We want to make sure that you get a chance to, to get home at a decent bedtime and not stare at your phones for five hours. No? Okay. I will continue. Next, Mrs. Asma Mosip would like to come to speak to the board about Henry Ford Early College.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I am here today, first and foremost, as a concerned parent and as a Dearborn resident. I actually had the opportunity to read the report, the recommendation investigation that was issued by DPS regarding the Henry Ford Early College. And in that report, DPS actually concluded that discriminatory, discriminatory and disparaging comments were used in several instances from the DPS employee. And this was based on student witnesses, teachers who gave their testimony, and even though this individual initially denied it, never happened, audio recording, heard it. Everybody heard it. And because of this, on May 10th, a memo was sent out advising everyone that this employee would not return in the position that they held. Yet, last week, on June 2nd, this employee hosted the virtual orientation for incoming freshmen next year and was introduced as the director of the Henry Ford Early College. Even though you had recordings of the disparaging remarks he made, I mean, you could say the student was lying, you could say the teacher maybe, but when you have an audio recording and you, and you send out a memo saying they no longer, no longer hold that position, and they come on June 2nd, and they're representing that position, it speaks volumes. It speaks volumes to the students who came forth and spoke to you guys of what they were experiencing. The job of the employee is not to, not to treat who he chooses fairly or kindly, it's to treat everybody, everybody kindly. And then in the investigation and recommendation, it states, "Most staff believe the employee's jokes," and we all heard it on audio, "jokes are made in good nature, not intended to defend, to offend." First, when are discriminatory remarks and disparaging comments about somebody and where they come from in good nature? When are they not intended to offend? Per se, they are intended to offend. Second, racism is racism, discrimination is discrimination, regardless whether anyone believes they are made in good nature, nature or joke.
May I ask you to wrap up, please?
And then, the recommendation says, "The employee shows remorse and appreciates the seriousness." Did he appreciate it in February of 2020, when a warning was put in his file? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, Abdoumalik Kasim would like, Kasim would like to come to speak to the board about the early college.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Abdoumalik Kasim. My colleagues and I are here today on behalf of the American Pack... My colleagues and I are here today on behalf of the American PAC, and we're also parents who have children in schools. The motive behind our attendance is to show solidarity with our students and to oppose discrimination and racism practiced by a principal who's supposed to embody the values of equality and coexistence and be a motivator to all students in all means that contribute to their success in the future. We are here to say it loud and clear that we will not allow sick racist remarks and actions to persist among our students. We demand a strict accountability in order to preserve our schools from negative energies. We must ensure a healthy learning environment to all our students. And to those who stand with the wrongdoing of the principal, we say, "Your bullying tactics are not allowed anymore." Thank you.
Next, Mr. Bilal Darwish would like to come to speak to the board about Henry Ford Early College.
Good evening, Bilal Darwish. I'm sorry about what happened earlier, President and trustees. You know, I was born and raised in Dearborn. I went to Maples Elementary from preschool to eighth grade, then on to Fortson High School. Graduated in 1991. I'm not sure where you guys went to school, where you grew up, or where most of this audience grew up and went to school. And I say that with all due respect to everybody. After reading the report and seeing what was said, where I grew up, I had a football coach in Fortson. I'm gonna just say a little story. He coached also, matter of fact, in the South End. Ninth grade, still summertime, we didn't even start school yet. In the gymnasium, he beat up the whole freshman football team. Knocked us around like we were balls. The football coach, that was paid by the Dearborn Public Schools district. None of our parents went down there, cried. When I was in elementary school, when I was in elementary school.
He has the floor.
When I was in elementary school, I'm not condoning that, I'm just saying. When I was in elementary school, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, our teachers and counselors, if we did something wrong, they'd tell us touch our toes. You get a whack on your rear end, you get a thunk in your head. We did nothing. I'm not saying what happened was wrong, was right, I'm sorry. But what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing, I'm not saying touching a student or anything like that is right. I'm not saying that at all, that that's right at all. But what I'm seeing is a political agenda, 110%. This is nothing, this is causing, with all due respect, I know a lot of the people in here. I know the board here. What I'm seeing is a divide. This is causing nothing but a divide in our community. I grew up, I grew up in a community. I have to say this.
I also need to ask you to wrap it up, you're almost out of time.
With Lebanese, Palestinian, Yemeni, Iraqi, whites, blacks, I've never seen this. I've never seen this in Dearborn. When someone says, "A Lebanese guy said a Yemeni guy or Palestinian or this", I've never seen this before. This is nothing but politics. This is causing a divide in our children. I'm not worried about the adults, we're bigger than that.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, Mrs. Amal Harara would like to come to speak to the board about Henry Ford Early College.
I'm speaking, good afternoon. We've been corresponding through email, I'm sure you guys know me very well. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband who submitted a card and also Amir Al-Said, who also submitted a card. I would just like to start off by saying that at the beginning of the meeting, Dr. Maliko, you said that students are first and there is no political agenda when it comes to being fair with the children. This couldn't be farther from the truth. I am the mother of an exceptional student in Dearborn who has been failed by many staff and especially leaders in this district. My son was physically, verbally, and mentally abused by your staff member. It was my son. My son wanted to speak to you directly today, but because we have educators and community members who are coming here today to publicly dismiss, ignore, or outright erase patterns of ethnic intimidation and racism, I decided to keep him safe and at home. I did not want him to witness grown adults and people entrusted with caring for our children, ignore the damage that has been done to many students simply because it hasn't happened to them or their children. And this failure to protect my son does not fall only at this administrator's feet. In 2020, there was already corrective action in his personal file outlining a reprimand of the very same complaints filed two years later at the expense of my son and other children. The failure is yours, Dr. Maliko.
Please don't use names.
My son is a 4.3 GPA student. He is beloved by his peers and his teachers. I only mention this because some may think that without this quality, he would deserve what happened to him. No one deserves for this to happen to them. My son is damaged because of you. He wouldn't have to go through this had you taken care of it years ago, specifically two years ago. But here we are. My son had to endure this emotional abuse at the hands of this administrator, and your report had the audacity to say it was all in good nature and not meant to hurt anyone's feelings. He suffered from anxiety and had to undergo counseling because of this administrator. These are real students who have been inflicted by this. Comments such as, "If you don't do well, I'm going to send you back to Yemen." "Clean up your mess, this isn't Lapeer Park." "Ah, those Yemenis, didn't I tell you not to hang out with those Yemenis?" "Don't hang out with that group over there," referring to the Yemeni kids. "You Yemenis are always hungry because you don't have any food in your country." This was specifically said to my son. After saying this particular remark, he degradingly put his hands on each side of my son's head and turned his head to the cafeteria staff and told him to say "thank you", humiliating him in front of staff and his peers after he said that degrading comment. You have witnesses to this, it's in your report. And let us not forget the segregation of students based on their ethnicity caught on audio recording. This happened to my son, a 15-year-old.
I need you to wrap it up, please.
I have three blue cards in.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Your mission states, "Dearborn Public Schools will provide an exceptional learning environment that empowers every student to succeed in life today and in the future." The assumption that the learning environment at Henry Ford Early College has been exceptional is a lie. And empowering every student, we all know the students it has empowered. And I wouldn't be standing here in front of you today if every student was being empowered to succeed. The district prides itself so much when it comes to social-emotional learning. How is it possible for you to teach our children social-emotional learning strategies to teach them how to, per your website, feel empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions when your professionals are unable to implement these strategies? In HR's final report of the investigation involving my son, it was concluded that, and I'm going to quote this, "Per your actual report, the director's use of ethnically biased and discriminatory language with both staff and students has negatively impacted the culture, climate, and learning environment of the Henry Ford Early College and Dearborn Public Schools." Just this past weekend, a teacher from Henry Ford Early College, my son's teacher, a teacher that he looked up to, was actively rallying up students through her district's platform, asking students to come support someone that investigations have already concluded is a racist. Manipulating our children to sway the outcome of these complaints is both appalling and disgusting. To this teacher, someone who may be in this room today, your job is to protect our children, not support your boss because he treated you well. Shame on you. Yet, this solicitation is just a single example of the pattern of bias the district has and is exhibiting throughout this investigation and throughout its daily workings. My final question to you, what message are you sending to the students who are affected by all of this? That they don't matter? That we should expect more students to be affected by similar inappropriate actions in the future because you refuse to take appropriate disciplinary action against adults? Adults that you have favored and protected above the students you were entrusted to protect? I'll tell you the message that we heard loud and clear from all of this. It's that contrary to your vision statement, "Students first"? Students do not matter at all. This is a promotion letter that was sent out today. The director was investigated by Dearborn Public Schools and found that he was extremely discriminatory against Yemeni children. Rather than facing consequences for the racism and bigotry that he displayed, he was rewarded. His reward is right here. He was promoted. He was promoted by Dearborn Public Schools, by you, Mr. Maliko, and by the board. This is suggestive of your belief of how our kids should be treated. This is highly indicative that racism doesn't matter to you, that discrimination does not matter to you. You are setting a precedent for how everyone else is allowed to treat minority children. You have set the precedent. Now you are accountable. You have given him a platform for which he can behave in such a way that is discriminatory, offensive, abusive to our children. You have provided that safe environment to him, not to our children. It is your responsibility to create a safe environment for our kids, and you have done the opposite by promoting him. Physical abuse of a minor has no place in our district. Racism has no place in our district. He has no place in our district. And if you condone this, you have no place in our district. You have failed my son and any other student that has been subjected to this abuse. This will not end here.
Next, Mr. Saber Zamzami would like to come to speak to the board about Henry Ford Early College. I'll call the name at the end as well, unless somebody.
What was the name again, trustee what?
Saber Zamzami.
Saber Zamzami. Oh, maybe.
I will try again at the end, maybe there.
Thank you.
Is this the order now? Next, Renee Calery would like to come to speak to the board about honors acknowledgement of Kiwanis Key Club at the Dearborn Schools. And I apologize if I mispronounce names.
That's okay, I answer to anything. Hi. Wait, my phone, I turned it off because I lost my battery. Okay. Hi, my name is Renee, and I am a member of the Dearborn Kiwanis Club and an advisor to the Key Clubs in our sponsor clubs. In our club, we sponsor six Key Clubs in the Dearborn surrounding areas, along with the Circle K Club at U of M Dearborn. Key Club is a global organization with thousands of clubs in more than 38 countries, and Key Club is the biggest organization run by students in the world. These students join Key Club with a GPA of 3.5 and above. They are looking for an opportunity to make a difference in the community, to make a difference with their school. They develop initiatives and leadership skills by serving their schools and their communities. One of their objectives aims to cooperate with the school principal and teachers and provide the students with invaluable experience in working together. During their time in Key Club, they learned leadership skills. They learned how to make a difference in the community. They learned how to lead meetings, conventions, project planning, team planning, and fundraising. They do it all while maintaining a 3.5 GPA. They are required to volunteer for 40 hours per year, and we base these hours as a guideline for them to earn the honor of wearing a cord, a stole, or a medallion during any graduation ceremony. These students are serious, who are, they are our future. We try to teach them leadership, engagement in the community, and to be proud of the seniors that they are or any other club that is allowed to wear this apparel. They have worked very hard in the years they are in Key Club, and not to be able to receive this honor in front of their family and peers and the leadership of the staff is very disheartening to them and their families. We don't want these kids to go behind the school's rules for any graduation ceremony and put on a cord or a stole or a medallion as they walk off the stage. This is not what we teach them. So I am here today asking for you all to consider honoring the Key Club in our schools on the same stage and the same manner of awards that others receive. We believe in them, they are our future leaders, as you have seen here today. We are asking our Key Club students be allowed to be a part of this graduation honors recognition of accomplishment for community service, leadership, and grade point average. Thank you for your time and consideration because these kids deserve the same recognition any student in these schools receive during all graduation ceremonies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Eddie Fakuri would like to come to speak to the board about closure on the issue he raised in May.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Fakuri. I'm before you today as a parent to bring closure to a topic I presented to this esteemed body on March 14th. At that time, I presented to you all a conflict that my family's been dealing with for years, where now currently, my daughter, my fourth child, the others are grown and out of the district, has recently experienced the same torment and, I will say, religious bullying that we did. So as a singular Arab Christian in her class, she was picked on by a select few of students who unfortunately are taught the wrong things. We, as a family, recognize the greatness of our community, the diversity, and the love that we have for each other. So I presented the problem, I proposed an idea, and I came today to just say thank you to this board and to the administration. Because shortly after that moment, I did receive the call, a meeting was held. We were finally listened to as far as solutions. Those solutions were applied, and they're being put into more of an educational training component, which is extremely helpful. And what I'd like to do is, besides thank Glenn, Dr. Malenko, and the team that he brought from the school, I'd like to thank the numerous phone calls we received in support. But I'd also like to thank trustee Berry because that night, he also approached me. But most importantly, I'd like to thank trustee Adil Mosip, who went out of his way to understand what the problem was, meet with my family, and made sure that it was followed through by the administration, and it was. And second to that, I want to thank Principal Rayback. Principal Rayback brought a team, I'm sorry.
Please don't use names.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, the principal did a phenomenal job of bringing the right team together and making sure that, moving forward, we have progress. And we're gonna monitor it, and things are much better for my daughter and for my family. And so I just wanted to say thank you and bring closure to everyone that actually reached out to us and made sure that the solution was had. And we hope it will progress in that same direction, at least as we monitor it. So thank you all, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing us that update, Mr. Fakuri.
Next, Mr. David Higgins would like to come to speak to the board about a thank you to all in Dearborn Schools.
Good evening, President McDonald, trustees, and Dr. Malenko. My name's David Higgins, I'm Principal William Ford and former president of ADSA. Less than two weeks ago, William Ford held their first City Beautiful Cleanup Parade in over two years due to COVID. It was a beautiful day, beautiful celebration, attended by the mayor, chief of police, county commissioners, several City Beautiful Commissioners, and trustees. Can I say your names?
Sure.
Sorry. Trustee Berry, trustee Petlicoff, and trustee Watts, and many, many other cabinet members were also in attendance that day. We celebrated the new tree that the mayor had put in on Arbor Day. We actually named it Arbor. We actually named it Arbor. We paraded around the school and then assembled in our cafeteria in our gym with over 650 students, 75 staff members, and probably 100 other special guests and parents. It was great assembly with student and guest pledges to take care of our environment, beginning with our school and neighborhoods. The assembly included music, cheers, pledges, and even a few dance moves by the mayor and our superintendent. I wanted to share this experience with you all, just because it was certainly a celebration. Finally, an opportunity for us to celebrate together over two years without these special events in our schools. These past two years, including this past year of recovery, have been long and have been challenging, but we did more than survive. We flourished, and I believe we are stronger than we were before. And so I wanted to say thank you. Thank you to everyone from our students, to our parents, our support staff, everyone at ASC, our directors in all departments, Dr. Malakow's consistent in leadership, positive leadership, and the ongoing support from all of you on the Board of Education, and finally to our absolutely amazing, amazing teachers. So I'm proud and blessed to be part of Dearborn Schools, so thank you.
Next, Judge Vazey would like to come to speak to the board about school district accomplishments.
President McDonald, trustees, thank you very much for giving me a few minutes to speak. I want to say first, my comments aren't directed at what's happened, what most of the people have talked about. I simply don't know enough about that particular situation to speak about it. Over the past few years, the board has faced unprecedented challenges. While the public did not always agree with the board, this board got through it and continued to provide the essential services our children needed and deserved. Seeing how well the board came together with the schools under the leadership of Dr. Malakow, you worked together under these incredibly trying and difficult times. It is incredibly disheartening at this time to see that, what has happened in recent months. While some community members have chosen to highlight anything negative they can find, which is their right, they're also choosing to ignore and discredit all the amazing accomplishments of this district under the leadership of this board, but under the leadership of Dr. Malakow as well. I would like, and can I say Dr. Malakow?
Can you say the superintendent?
Superintendent, okay. I'll say the superintendent. I would like to, I would like to acknowledge and highlight those accomplishments as a reminder of how lucky we are as a district to have a leader that puts students first, and the results of his efforts are obvious in the following recognitions and awards. 2018 through 2024, the district received four Meritorious Budget Awards from the Association of School Business Officials International. From 2017 to 2012, five National Blue Ribbon Awards from the United States Department of Education, those awards which hang proudly in back of the district itself. In 2019, our superintendent received the State of Michigan Superintendent of the Year Award. Only one person can get that award every year in the State of Michigan, and it was our superintendent, and that, and that was from the Michigan Association of Superintendent and Administrators. In 2019, the Dearborn Chamber of Commerce Businessperson of the Year. In 2019, Michigan Labor Relations Awardee from the Michigan Labor Management Association. In 2019 through 2020, the Bridge Magazine Academic Champs for College Admission. In 2019, the National Title I Distinguished School Award. In 2019, the Mackinac City Rated, Mackinac City Rated, I'm sorry, Mackinac Center rated Dearborn as one of the top districts for achievements, which I'm proud to say it is, and I have three children that are reflection of those achievements. In 2018, the Special Recognition for Distinguished School Improvement Process Award. In 2018, the Bridge Magazine Academic Champs for College Readiness. In 2018, Mesa Cover Story for High School Graduation Rates. In 2018, recognition, recognized by a student during the annual...
Stop ripping up, please.
I'm going to go really fast.
Okay.
Recognized by a student during the annual Superintendent Honors Night in Dearborn in 2018, recognized by the California State Senate for providing support to California School Districts. In 2017, Bridge Magazine Academic Champs. In 2015 to present, rated highly effective by the Dearborn Board of Education. I'm going to ask the Dearborn Board of Education to continue your leadership in this process and provide the support that this district needs, that our superintendent needs to continue to make this district a wonderful district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mike Hatcham would like to come to speak to the board about quality of education.
Good evening. My name is Mike Hatcham. Many of you know me, many of you don't. I do a lot of, I'd say, positive political work in this city. Lately, it's been brought to my attention on the administration, several schools, from teachers especially, and teachers that have left the school district, talking about the conditions that they face. In this envelope right here, I have complaints from teachers that I wish that I could put out, but names aren't in these letters. I've gone to Dearborn Public Schools, you know, I've gone to Dearborn Public Schools when it was in its golden age, and I've graduated when it was in its dark age. You know, I graduated from Fortson. For God's sakes, we didn't even have bathroom stalls that doors closed at Fortson. Okay? Do we still have them or no?
No.
We still don't have bathroom stalls. Let's face it, we are one of the districts that have, that has the biggest budget, okay? And I'm not blaming the board right now. I want you guys to go back home tonight, reassess yourselves, reassess the people that you guys relay the message on to, to your administration, the higher-ups, whoever you guys meet with, your morning coffee meets, however you guys want to call it. I mean, Dearborn Public Schools has been going down. Let's face it, someone before me came up and started talking about how beautiful it is, you know, the grass is always green. Actually, it's not, you know? And honestly, I'd love to put out what's in this yellow envelope, but I'm afraid if I do, I can't guarantee the lives of these people, and that's what I told them. And honestly, I'm ashamed to be up here as a product of Dearborn Public Schools, to be addressing you guys today like this. We need to fix Dearborn Public Schools. Let's stop being a joke in front of everybody else. We just lost 42 teachers from Dearborn Public Schools to Plymouth Canton Schools. Teachers are dropping like flies. No one wants to teach here. We have a high rate of turnover on teachers. We need to figure out what is going on, okay? The administration is always getting benefits. We're always getting, not me, but the administration is always getting, you know, more money in their paychecks.
Wrap up your comments, please.
Okay? We need to do something about it, and honestly, I'm going to start doing more investigation, and I will start calling the news to put you guys and tell you guys that you guys need to stop.
Angela Bezy, social media concerns?
Hello, my name is Angela Bezy, and actually here I am addressing the board members and the trustees mostly. I would like to start by saying that it's appalling in regards to the double standards that was used on social media stating that DPS is trying to use our kids as pawns for publicly, for publicity stunt and to come out to support Principal One for today's meeting. It is a shame to witness city politics in becoming contagious and it's going into our school district. This is nothing but a political agenda, and it has nothing to do with Dearborn Public Schools. We all know that we live in a very diverse city, and all of Dearborn Public Schools has diversity of students. We are very proud to know that our children have been exposed to many different races and cultures. Social media should not and must not be used as a platform to degrade and insult all of our DPS schools, specifically Henry Ford Early College and Henry Ford Early College Staff Members. We are parents, and we all know that our children like to make up excuses to make themselves look like the victims, especially when they get in trouble, be it at home or even worse at school. I heard it many times from my children and from others. Why is it that they feel only Student One and Student Two were the only victims that felt anxiety? Or we have to believe their words? When you have all...
One is enough.
No.
No, it's not. One is not enough. One is not enough.
I will have decorum in this, in this room.
When you, when you have over 90% of students stating that this teacher...
Please address the board, address the board.
When you have 90% of students stating that Mr. or President or Principal One...
Okay.
Principal One is one of the most leading, respectful men out there, and that they just can't stand him because it is a political agenda that they are trying to do, we will not allow it. I'm not done. I'm not done. And I would like to add, why was the question, why was the question asked, how many Yemenis and Iraqi students were kicked out of the program? What kind of a question is that? Why is political division trying to, trying to, why is political division trying to be called on social media? I thought we were smarter than that, and we should know our limits. Our kids, our kids are learning and watching from us.
Thank you.
This is not how adults are supposed to set examples. The question should be regardless of ethnicity.
Thank you for your thoughts and your comments.
Okay.
Next.
You're very welcome, and I am very proud to say that Principal One deserved a well-awarded promotion.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
And everyone else is, I think, a bunch of BS.
Next, Mr. Bilal Hamud would like to come to speak to the board about school infrastructure.
Sit down, please take your seats. We have another speaker ready to speak. Please sit down. I'll have to have you removed.
Yeah, my mom's a great...
Please sit down. Please be quiet. Everyone, please be quiet. We have another speaker who deserves our respect and our attention. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Hello to the board. Good evening. My name is Bilal Hamud. I come speaking on behalf of many residents who have had some conversations with residents who have a deeply rooted respect and appreciation for this board and for the school district, residents and students who have been proud members of this community for generations. There is an issue I've heard, and I want to just be a vessel to relay this message. There is this lack of trust that exists right now within this district, between the parents, between the teachers, between the students, and between the board. There isn't a transparent communication that's occurring between the students, sorry, for the students, there isn't enough transparency in what's happening from the board to the rest of the district. And I don't mean this to be an attack, I really don't, because I'm a proud product of the school district. I have a lot of appreciation for it, and as many have stated, the academics speak for itself. But the reason why there's so many people in this room, and I don't know the full context of the situation, but the reason why there's always a lot of people in this room is because, well, it's clear, we're not putting out enough information on what's happening. If there is an incident like this, I want A, B, C, D, and E, not just an A oversight statement. I really don't think that just the peachy and the good is what we should be hearing. And this is all I want to say, is that, look at the, this CAREHOC system. A lot of the residents and a lot of the board didn't even know the status. That should be communicated out. What is the timeline, A through Z? What is the plan for implementing? How far are we in progress? People would feel more comfortable if that transparency existed, and that's all I think we can ask for, is more transparency in communication, more frequent communication. I went to Wayne State University, and if someone looked at someone funny, there was a full report drafted, it was communicated to all the students, it was, in some cases, over-communication, but it made the students feel safe, the staff felt safe, and they felt like they could trust the system. There was more of that trust because of the frequency of communication, and that's really what I'm asking for from this board, this board here today, is an increase in communication on a lot of these issues that we're hearing, so that the once-a-month meetings that occur aren't packed with people trying to figure out what's going on, but are informed citizens and informed residents of this community. Because again, I love this district, and I just want to see it succeed. Thank you, that is all.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about curriculum.
Hello, Stephanie Butler, and I wanted to come up and talk tonight. There's a lot, a lot going on in this district right now, and the more digging I do, the more I seem to find. And questions are, you know, I want to know, you guys approve the curriculum, but to what extent do you oversee the curriculum that's being taught to our, to our children right now? It's different, it varies by what school, and, you know, the only way that I'm able to get in and see the things that I do find are with my daughter's login. Everything is locked up so tightly away from the parents, and the more I find out, the more I realize why that is. You know, this SEL, this, all this stuff maybe was started with good intentions, but what it's doing right now is causing division. It's causing more racial divisions than was prior. It's pitting, you know, groups of students, and this is from the students, against each other at particular schools. So, you know, each group sticks with, you know, with their own kind. So it's kind of having the opposite effect. And my question is, when are we going to take back the, the authority over the curriculum? And why don't we focus on math, reading, writing? We've got 30% of kids, 30% of children proficient in anything across the board. It doesn't matter what school it is in this district. And our English learners are at 3% and 4%. So what are we doing here, creating social justice warriors? It's not our job. It's not your job, it's not a teacher's job to do that. Their job is to teach them math, reading, writing, how to be productive, you know, members as far as, you know, can they do the job when they get to college? You've got teachers treating classes as such job interviews. So, for example, math class, who has writing? I don't know if anyone here said writing in their math, but I don't, I didn't understand how it correlated until I had met with the teacher and the counselor, and I was told that he treats it as if it's a job interview. So basically, if your boss asks you if you know how to do your job, you should be able to explain it. So if you know the math, you should be able to write it out. So I don't agree with that, and I had to fight for my son, who was deserving of a C in pre-Celt II by all calculations. I had to go in and listen to the grading...
Please wrap up your comments.
Yeah. I had to go in and listen to the grading scale, which made no sense, only to get a call later on that the curriculum reviewer went through it and agreed that something was wrong, and that she moved the grade from a D minus to a C, which is what he actually earned. So we need to take the reins back and control what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Yes. I'm not done yet, but we need to take the reins back and...
Time's up. We have to be very strict on time tonight. We've got so many people that want to speak.
Well, that's the thing, though, Ms. President, that's what happens. Remember when you all told me there was going to be a bathroom policy down the line? One standard. Whatever happened with that? Nothing. That's what happens here, absolutely nothing, so...
Thank you for your... Thank you for your- thank you for your thoughts.
Mrs. Masra would like to come to speak to the board about administration. Mrs. Masra?
Say Masra?
No?
Oh, sorry.
Somebody's coming, somebody's coming up.
Good evening, I'm Asmaan Masra, but I'm seceding my time to Faiza Nasr.
Yep, and I put a card in there already. My name is Faiza Nasr. Okay, so I actually planned to attend here tonight to follow up on something that I requested from you as board members a few months ago. However, I am like shaken by some of the things that are being said in here. I am appalled at what is happening in this room. The amount of gaslighting happening here is very toxic and healthy as a community. I stand here in front of you, not to represent my personal interest, but I'm here to advocate for my students, my neighbors, my community, my Yemeni community too. I feel that I need to send a message to our students in this district, as they are the victims and we are the adults that are supposed to protect them at all times. We, as your parents, as your community members, as your educators, have an obligation to inform you that you should feel nothing but pride in who you are, where you are from, what food you eat, what country of origin you are from, and most importantly, feel comfortable in your own skin and bring your whole self to school. Also, we need to make it very clear after tonight, and after so many parents speaking their minds to our children, that adults in this district have a job to do, which includes making everyone feel safe, feel comfortable, and supported. All the praises that we heard tonight are simply a job of any admin. You are here to make progress in our children, you are here to create programs, you are here to empower them. I didn't hear anything exceptional that went out of his job or out of his way. It does not justify anyone, despite behavior, grades, color, nationality, you get the point, that the only time a adult in this district is to touch you is when they're shaking your hands or patting you on your back. Period. Far performing CPR, pretty much that's all. We cannot sit here and pretend and continue to ignore the concerns and say, it's just one kid, one kid is too many, one special ed kid on the bus is too many. One kid is enough, okay? So, as a community, we continue to hear about many issues rising, and it seems these concerns are being ignored. I am aware that the board members are elected bodies to make decisions. However, my concern about the integrity and the ethical judgment of this board has immensely increased over the last few meetings. The impression that your community is getting from you is that you are passive elected officials sitting in your seats. I am proud of those who engage and speak their minds and share their experiences and their stories, because it reminds them that they are connected and they are invested. You are elected to engage in these concerns, ensure things are brought up and are followed through, asking questions, hearing from all sides, fostering a trusting and safe environment for your constituents. If this is something that is not being done, then honestly, you have no business sitting in those seats. Today, I come with a few concerns. And I will be stating, and more than happy to state some few possible solutions, because I'm a solution-oriented person. We have a track record of district employees who have made stereotyped statements, you can call them whatever you want, but at the end of the day, it's stereotypical, it's racist, it's bigoted, it's all above.
It's unacceptable.
It's unacceptable. As a prior employee, I have heard comments from staff referring to students as these kids, those kids. We need to use a different set of words. Addressing students' challenges or weaknesses such as, our students need this, or our students have a difficulty with some of these issues. Those kind of- that kind of language is very important, even among us staff and admin. It doesn't mean there's no students or no parent that we can say those kind of things. They are unacceptable. Or a specific example is when we use religion as part of the conversation when addressing inappropriate behavior, such as saying, weren't you just fasting last month? Why are you doing this and that? And so on. I'm Muslim. It is absolutely wrong to use that type of comments to shame our children. At the end of the day, we are the adults, they are the children, who are still developing in all areas of their lives. They are not to be held, you know, and spoken to that way. Any admin or teacher that does not know how to only and only honor a student's culture or country of origin should not be mentioning that person's culture, if it isn't relevant to the teaching, until they know how to address it in the most productive and empowering way. We have admin and staff who are directly working with students one-on-one and in collective settings, who do not have proper training, could be traumatizing them with the way they speak to them that come across as microaggression, stereotypical remarks. This is district-wide. There is no culture of accountability when it comes to staff making sarcastic remarks about student culture. When addressing such marks-
Please wrap up your comments.
-we cannot look at the intention, but rather we should focus only on the impact it has on our children. And with saying that, everyone is entitled to feel the way they- whatever they want to feel when comments like these are made. We are not to come here and say, oh, it's okay, you know, it wasn't meant to this, or it wasn't meant that way. No, we have to look at the impact.
Thank you for your comments.
Imagine the word Yemeni was replaced with African Americans, Asian Americans, Hispanic, then what? This cannot be ignored as well.
You would like to speak to the board about administrative accountability?
Good evening. My name is Ramsey Alshohati, and I am a parent to Dearborn School's students. Many things have occurred that have been upsetting, and there appears to be no true accountability shown by our district or district's leadership. Former staff members have been speaking at board meetings discussing a culture of poor leadership, harassment, and retaliation, and our superintendent deflects, minimizes, and dismisses their experiences instead of holding transparent discussions and finding solutions to remediate the issues. A special education student almost dies on a bus, and our superintendent deflects blame on a third-party bus inventor and takes no accountability for the incident or aftermath. And now, public documents of an investigation conducted by Dearborn School's own HR department shows an administrator guilty of creating and engaging in a culture of ethnic discrimination and intimidation and evidence of a physical attack on a student, and yet our superintendent responds by gifting the individual another position. Our district responds to their own findings of guilt by using taxpayer money to protect an abusive administrator instead of using taxpayer money responsibility on our students. By protecting someone that has shown pattern of ethnic discrimination, our superintendent is showing us that our kids do not matter, their safety and mental health, their self-worth, none of that matters. What is more important to protecting his own circle of administrators instead of the kids. These actions should- show a true lack of leadership and accountability. I ask the school board to do their duty and provide true oversight and block these harmful actions. No one should be above the rules. I ask the school board to really dig deep into the leadership the superintendent has shown and gather feedback, directly from families and staff. Figure out what is really happening behind closed doors instead of relying solely on the information provided from ASC. Hold the district's administration accountable for their negligence and the harm that it is causing our community. If you do nothing today, then you are just as guilty of putting our students last.
Next, Ms. Laura Lee would like to speak to the board about books.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us, hearing us. I've heard a lot of things tonight. I've lived here sixty-seven years. I'm a Dearborn resident. I went through all the mayors, I've seen it all, and I cannot believe what I am hearing. One of my friends said to me one day, when all is said and done, there's more than- there's more that's done and not said, and vice versa. I agree. I have got a friend with me tonight that's going to bring up something very, very important, and it's very delicate, and it is happening in other districts. I have been to other school meetings. I cannot believe what I've seen, I feel like I'm in a twilight zone, if anybody can remember that. It's very serious, and it's got to be taken serious, and our kids really need to be protected. It's the most important thing in the world. If you can do nothing else in your life, you have to protect your kids. You guys have a job, you've got to protect these kids. I have lived in Dearborn a long time, and I've seen all the changes, all the different stuff, and I cannot believe what I'm seeing, and I was horrified at the last meeting I went to. It wasn't this one, but I'm going to let my friend take care of it, so introduce yourself.
Thank you, Laura, I'm Crystal Paulson. Last month, the meeting alone was very hard, I think, on all of us, honestly. So I made it a point because somebody on the board told me if I had an idea, my idea should be heard, but it needs to be a full idea. So I met with our superintendent with my ideas that could hopefully help the autism program. Not only did he take the time, the special needs director was with us, I gave them homework, I presented them as if I was selling them something. I- I took time, because I'm a mother, especially a mother of an autistic child. As mothers, we solve issues. As a community, all of us, we are mothers. We solve issues. So I took it upon myself to figure out if I could help solve something just so simple that a mother would not have to worry anymore. Okay, the superintendent, he met with me, he was polite, he didn't rush me, him and the special needs director, they went over everything. But during all this, okay, with SELs, my friend spoke about the SEL and the social justice. With everything being said tonight- It's okay. It's either I'm going to get backlash, or I'm going to get supported. But with the summer program that's coming on, or coming into- starting shortly after the school gets out, some of the stuff that I found is very alarming as a mother, and I felt like I should actually bleach my eyeballs for as much time I spent digging and digging and digging, like my friend said. I had a presentation that was done in Lansing by our fellow Mama Bear. She okayed it for me to use it and to give it to the board. But also, during this, I was able to connect the platform that would be used for the elementary schools. And I'm sorry for anybody, but as a mother, and if a child got hurt or something happened, I couldn't be okay with this, couldn't. Why would Penny Gardens need to be doing this? What does it have to do with their body parts? Why would the SEL, why would the SEL with the national education, our sexual education, everything that has anything to do with SEL also deals with CSEL, which is funded by Mark Zuckerberg. I can name him, he's not a part of it, Bill Gates. Why are they a part of this in our children's education? I'm sorry, do you know what a blesser is? I found out a blesser. Do you guys want to know what a blesser is?
Yeah.
Somebody that has sex with an underage child, and that person gives that child gifts, money. These videos, I really wish I could show you, but it's bad, they have the sounds, the masturbation, the everything, and I'm sorry, these people, not everybody, but there's people in that crowd that they are trying to push the agenda on our kids. Me and my girlfriend have been trying to expose this entire year, but when you bring the little kids in this, this is the boundary. You're either with the kids or stay out of the district. That's it, because you're pedophiles, groomers. I mean, honestly, after watching the video with your class, process is using the following discussion questions. Did anything in this video surprise you? How has watching this video changed your ideas about porn?
To wrap up your comments, please.
If you come across porn, how might you respond, react now that you have this information? It does not belong in our schools, and ladies, ladies, this does not belong with our daughters. So, thank you.
As a mother and a member of this community, I feel I would care-
Thank you, you've addressed the board, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
Next, Dr. Joshua Tynan would like to speak to the-
Tynan.
Tynan, I'm sorry, apologize. Speak to the board about prior board meetings, procedures, and perception.
Evening, trustees, superintendent, it's Tynan.
I apologize.
No problem, I'm called lots of things, you know, so it's no big deal. Wow, intense board meeting, I'll say that, jeez, oh, peace. But for me, you know, that's what I like about Dearborn, is we have an opportunity to come and voice our opinions, and we all have the opportunity to grow. Personally, I find Dearborn, having been to many other districts, to be one of the most progressive districts that are around the area, as a whole, we service twenty thousand students in a very progressive manner. You go look at some other districts, and you're going, wow, we did that ten years ago, you know? Obviously, from hearing people speak, there's a lot of growth that needs to be happened. And with that, that's an issue that I wanted to bring up, or that I had noticed last time, I appreciate the board speaking on it last, at the beginning of this meeting, I won't say last night, it's been so long, you know? But at the last board meeting, I felt like there was implied performance concerns with one of our staff members and then with our superintendent. Obviously, we know that there are not concerns with those, and that's what stayed at the beginning of the meeting. However, the implication was there, and that's an issue that we're having, I feel, as heard throughout the evening, is perception. And when that perception is skewed and it goes to the court of public opinion, such as social media, it creates confusion and anger in multiple ways. Because of the confusion that was caused at the last board meeting, we did have a member resign or pull back from contention for the executive director position. Me personally, that impacts my job, because now we don't have that executive director to fill that spot. I felt like that person was just a phenomenal, phenomenal human being, not only in their ability to communicate and express themselves, but the ideas that they were bringing for the district. There is an area, if you look at all of education, not just Dearborn schools, but across the board, it's stagnant in many ways. The person that had removed their name from contention was ready to take it to the next level and bring Dearborn to a space further. Yes, there's a lot of people applying for jobs and moving to other districts, but the quality is very low. Dearborn does a very good job of building within, they have a very strong program of building leadership from within and promoting that, and that is done through Dr. Maleko. Do I agree with everything Dr. Maleko does? Absolutely not. But is he open to hearing my suggestions? Is he open to talking it through one-hundred percent? What I appreciate about the district, and what I appreciate about tonight, is there's systems in place so we're all heard. And we can argue, we can discuss, we can leave, we can leave angry, we can come back and re-discuss, and we can grow from it. I feel personally like Dearborn has a lot of opportunity for growth. I've grown a lot from it.
Dr. Tynan, can I ask you to wrap up, please?
One last thing, and I'll finish. You know, I'm a product of Dearborn, and obviously, I'm having a different experience than some other people tonight. There's a gentleman who's referenced it about a half hour ago. I was in an accident about six years ago, South End came and visited me, North End came and visited me, West End came and visited me, East End came and visited me. When Dearborn needs to come together, Dearborn comes together. Obviously, we're splintered right now, and we can do- Obviously, we're splintered right now, and we can do things as certain from the board and the superintendent on down to bring that forward. So as one board member says, when you puke, puke up. And if we do that behind the closed doors and argue, then we can present a unit front and consistent communication.
Thank you, Dr. Tynan.
Thank you.
We need to extend, it's almost 10 o'clock. We need to extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Got a motion from trustee Thorpe, a support from trustee Berry. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Berry. Trustee Dambrojo.
Yes.
Trustee Mosib.
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff.
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
President McDonald.
Yes.
Next, Mrs. Mary Elaine would like to come to speak to the board about the meeting 5922, superintendent performance and evaluation.
On May 9, 2022, trustee Adal Mosib pulled item 30, which was apparently a personnel item. That, he asked for a closed session on that item. His actions gave the employee no notice, no due process, no fundamental fairness. The audience was left wondering what was going on. Those of us who were watching didn't know what it meant. Was it a closed meeting with a real discussion on personnel? Was it an attempt to stain the employee, or was it an ambush? Once trustee Mosib was told that he could not have a closed session on the employee without their consent, he then substituted a closed session on the superintendent. I believe this was a bait and switch. Did the superintendent then become the object of the meeting when trustee Mosib was told that it was illegal? What was the purpose of that closed session? Because it was certainly not evaluation, I'm guessing. There is an evaluation process, there are procedures, and those need to be followed, of course. It appears that they were not, and then the board proceeded to go into a closed session on the topic of the superintendent without a vote, apparently to mollify trustee Mosib and find out what was going on. I believe this was a violation.
Can we have quiet, please, in the back of the room? Apologize.
Yep. I believe this was a violation of the Open Meetings Act, which I would like to remind everyone is Michigan law. It's not MASP policy. It's not something you have a choice on. Seems clear that the board does not know the Open Meetings Act and should train itself immediately. I suggest a retreat with a competent expert, MASP, an attorney, so the citizens don't have to get up and wag their fingers and/or file complaints, which can be done also. Board needs to hold a retreat to teach itself relationships, roles, and comportment as a board. We elect you to lead, not to slur people. Don't air your petty gripes, dislike of staff or employees, and egotism in public. I ask you to think also about the superintendent's position. Every year, Michigan starts its school year with 15% to 20% of the districts having no superintendent, no leadership. Dearborn is a unique community. It is a very difficult job to fill. We all know that. A dysfunctional board makes it even harder. Many candidates would not even consider coming here. Within my memory, we've had searches for superintendent and for president at the college, and we've had only four candidates who were even viable.
Please wrap up your comments.
I am wrapping up. Superintendents are not supermen or superwomen. They're just people. They do not come from planet Krypton, and we need to, we need to consider what does Dearborn need? Needs three things primarily: ethics, competence, compassion. Dr. Glenn Maleko has shown these over 27 years with our district. He has done a fine job, and our district has helped hundreds of thousands of students.
Thank you.
It's the essence of foolhardiness to not consider this. Some members of the board jeopardize our community, our property values, and our city by irresponsible talk and behavior. I demand that you give up petty aspirations and small interest groups for the common good.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Do not be educational leaders, not neighborhood gossips. Thank you.
Next, Sue Lattich, teacher at DHS, would like to come to speak to the board in support of the superintendent.
President McDonald, trustees, and superintendent Maleko, thank you for the time. I'm Sue Lattich. I'm a teacher of students of autism at Dearborn High, and I just wanted to speak to our, your one and only employee, and how I have found him to be willing to listen. He's very visible in the community and in the schools, and I just wanted to say that I fully support him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Jane Mazza would like to come to speak to the board about the superintendent.
Good evening, President McDonald, Dr. Maleko, board trustees. Actually, I also have a folder, but I am going to hand it to you because people signed it, and they were very happy to sign it. And these are letters in support of our superintendent.
Thank you.
I'm not going to take too much time, except to say I want to thank the board. I want to thank our staff, mostly our teachers and all our instructional people. We have gone through this year. It's been slog at times getting through COVID, but I am really honored to be the president of the DFT and to know that these teachers have really worked so hard this year, and I'm so happy that we're getting to the end of the year of a good year, almost out of COVID. And I thank the board for their support, and I thank our superintendent for his support. Have a great rest this summer, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Next, Al Larini would like to come to the board to speak about the superintendent.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Maleko, good evening. It's nice to see you all. I would like to speak to you this evening about my support of our superintendent, my several reasons for supporting him. Our superintendent is the most enthusiastic and energetic supporter of the proposition "Students First." And this is not just a slogan or a gimmick, because in every conversation I have had with him or his administration, excuse me, in every discussion about policy, and in every protocol that's implemented, "Students First" has been our guiding principle. Now, there are those who might say, of course, "Students First." We're a school district. That's easy to promote. Well, let me tell you, it's not. Our district, like every district in our state and across the country, has limited resources, and competing for those resources are many different interests, my own group included, whose advocates speak passionately for certain effects and results. Amid that whirl of voices, our superintendent, in a kind and humble manner, reminds us to remember our guiding principle that students come first. I believe that the students in this district have the most effective advocate in their corner and are better off as a result. My second reason is his practice of collaboration. Dr. Maleko treats us as equal partners as we address the many issues that confront our district. What I admire about his management style is that his desire to collaborate is not simply based on the fact that it is the most effective way of leading others, but rather, this particular style is truly an extension of his personality. He collaborates with us because that is who he is as a man. I believe the results of his leadership in this regard are impressive, especially with the trials of COVID. Lastly, our superintendent is a resolute protector of employees' rights. Each employee of our district has various rights protecting them from unfair and unjust treatment. Dr. Maleko, through his actions, proves to me that he believes, as I do, that an injury to one is an injury to all, and that, and that he is willing to stand up for those whose rights are threatened. For today, the affected employee may not be in this room, but tomorrow, it could be any one of us. It is comforting to know that the CEO of our district is so reliably committed to observing and safeguarding our rights. Who among us would want it any other way? Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, and I hope to see you all again in a more informal setting.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Michael Low would like to come to speak to the board about the superintendent.
President McDonald, Dr. Maleko, trustees. My name is Mr. Michael Low, and I represent the Dearborn Schools Operating Engineers Association. This evening, I would like to extend a message of support for our superintendent on his staff, and on behalf of myself and my fellow engineers. His leadership skills are evident to us in his level of communication to staff, students, and the community that we serve. Through troubling times, he has maintained an honest and forthright approach in dealing with issues across all platforms, and has given us the necessary support required to maintain our buildings. We, the DSOEA, look forward to many more years of partnership and following his leadership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Hassan Jaffar. I apologize, I'm trying to read your paper. I'm sorry. Thank you, Jayfer. I apologize. Like to speak to the board regarding superintendent.
I'll correct her. Good evening. President McDonald, board members, and superintendent Dr. Maleko. My name is Hassan Jaffar, and I stand in front of you this evening for two reasons. Reason number one, to express my gratitude for the wonderful 40 years of service I spent with the district. Reason two, to express my support for Dr. Maleko for his vision, leadership, and leadership. During my years of service, I was inspired and guided by seven superintendents. I would like to mention their names for the record. I'll start with Dr. Lund, Dr. McLennan, Dr. Hughes, Mr. Stuf, Dr. Aris, Mr. Wisted, and Dr. Glenn Maleko. These superintendents, with the support of the Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education, have shaped the history and legacy of our district for the past 50 years. Our current superintendent has dedicated his entire professional career to the service of Dearborn Public Schools as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, HR director, and superintendent. John Maxwell once said, "A leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way." Dr. Maleko has a proven track record, and most importantly, has successfully guided and led the district during the most challenging global crisis in our modern human history, the COVID-19 crisis. May I remind you that lockdowns, remote learning, masking or not masking, demanded absolute leadership. Our teachers stepped up. Our support staff stepped up. Our principals and central office staff stepped up. Business was not as usual. And as the captain who was steering the ship during these tumultuous, tumultuous times, Dr. Glenn Maleko, we all know that he led with pride and dignity. It's easy to criticize and easy to point fingers. However, I implore you, as representatives of the people of the city of Dearborn, to continue supporting Dr. Maleko's vision and mission for Dearborn Public Schools. I'm honored to know most of you as parents of my former students and as community leaders. I'm confident that you will recognize my support and the support of the majority of parents and employees for Dr. Maleko's and his leadership. Experience, fortitude, vision, and proven leadership define Dr. Maleko's current tenure. Don't fix what's not broken, please. You're entrusted to make the right future decisions for our district. Dr. Maleko's role is and should be, and should continue to continue as an integral part of that future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffar.
Next, Walid Fadama would like to come to speak to the board.
We're going to have to extend the meeting again.
Pause.
Motion, extend the meeting.
Support.
We have a motion by trustee Berry, supported by trustee Thorpe. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo.
Yes.
Trustee Mosib.
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff.
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
President McDonald.
Yes.
Walid Fadama would like to come to speak to the board about the superintendent.
Let me see him.
Next, Viza Nasser would like to come to speak to the board. Oh, never mind. There she was. Mrs. Mohammed would like to come to speak to the board about teacher misuse of school platform for personal agendas.
Good evening, and hello, everyone. I'm a parent of a student at Henry Ford Early College, and I came here to speak about the division that the platform misuse has created between our kids.
Please don't use names. Oh, I, I'm sorry. I thought I heard a name.
I think it's hard to hear you, though.
You can put your mask on if it makes it easier.
So yesterday, one of the teachers sent on Remind, which is a school platform and a tool to send for homework, sent all the kids to come rally up for the principal for, you know, the allegations that had come against him, and that is not professional, and it's not ethical. And the letter we were sent by, for the apology, for the Yemeni community, missed all symbols of empathy and remorse towards students and all the parents and staff who suffered the mistreatment who were from the Yemeni community. My son was in the cafeteria, in the cafeteria that day, and he heard so many times that South Enders, they were referred as, to as South Enders, and they were called as hungry people because they come from Yemen, even though my kid was never, like, he was, he was born here, and he was all, he was raised here. And I don't know, how, how is that like? And some of the staff were there, and nobody stopped him. And that happened over and over, even in schools. And the fact that he had a violation on February 2020, I mean, where were you? He should have had a training. It shouldn't have been escalating that much. We shouldn't have been like pointing against each other, Lebanese against Yemenis, against Iraqis. It shouldn't have happened. He should have had a training how to speak well to students. But obviously, the problem is the people of the authority feel comfortable to use school platforms for personal agendas. School administrations repeatedly disregarded complaints and sided with the principal over and over, refusing to meet with parents or just attend for four minutes, storm the room, and leave. Excuse me, I'm very nervous. All that shows that the school administration failure to contain the concerns of certain parents, especially if they come from a different ethnicity, which basically, in this case, is Yemeni. The HR and administration were complicit because they know that this verdict happened, and all this investigation happened in 2020. My kid was still in junior high in 2020. And for 2021 school year, it was a virtual school year. So there's no way that the principal A or B knew that he was a Yemeni online. You know what I mean? So I don't know, like, this year, it was like constant, constant disregard of the parents' concerns. And my friend here has came to you very, various times. It wasn't her first time. She didn't just escalate the thing over to the police until the touching happened. And then we have audio came from the students, and people came forward with even the picture. The student in, in the picture was not, like, his face wasn't visual, and yet, the principal had his hand on him, and that was not addressed on the board. I don't know, like, Dr. Maleko, I want to know, like, your answer for that. Like, where were you on 2020? That should have even happened. He should have had a training, and that was the end of it. I know that he has good intention for other parents and other students. I know that he has good intention for other parents and other students as well. Why that good intention did it come to my son and all the other kids in the Yemeni community? Don't you feel that that is unfair? And then the teacher that pointed out kids against kids.
I need you to wrap up your comments, please. That was... Did you fill out a blue card? Okay, then that's...
So the teacher that sent the kids the message on Remind, was she allowed to? You tell me, was she allowed to rally for Principal A to come here and speak forward and show support? That's exactly what she said on the message. It was supposed to be just for homework, and that's it. School stuff.
Will we be able to get an answer from you guys concerning this?
It's since yesterday morning.
Is it okay to have policy?
Did anybody say something to her? Did anybody address her?
Is it good policy to use the platform to rally kids to support a person who's already been charged or convicted, or however you want to say it?
Exactly. Now, the problem was that with Principal A...
They don't know all the details.
Now, it's against, it's a community against a community. I mean, we all have one race. We're all Arabs. But the thing that divided us was the misuse. And then someone pointed out using social media for political reasons. The fact is, the fact is that the social media for Yemenis didn't come out. It was a hush-hush situation between, you know, enclosed doors, and it was just emails to the parents. Until the lady came on Remind rallying for support. And then, then the advocate that we know, you know, that the mother asked for help, went on social media. And she didn't say anything political. It was the email sent from the school. It was the email that was sent from the school. We didn't call him racist. The paper said that. The letter said that. And he admitted guilt. And what is the remorse? How did he, how did he feel remorse since twenty twenty? Tell me, what is the remorse? If he's still telling our kids that you're hungry because you came from Yemen?
We don't accept his apology.
Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Joseph Saikon would like to come and speak. Did I say that correctly?
You did.
I appreciate the...
Yeah, forty-one years of nobody being able to pronounce my last name correctly, so I just figured putting the phonics on there, phonetics works. My name is Joseph Saikon, or Joe Saikon. I'm a longtime Dearborn resident. I have two young sons, ages six and eight, in this district as well. We love our school, we love our principal, we love the teacher. They have many great friends. We love most of the parents. Most of the parents are great. So back in December, when they started putting together the VIP committee to look at possibility for raising funds for a number of issues, including infrastructure, which includes security, I hopped right up and volunteered and was accepted on there. And we spent many months working hard on that to come up with a list that confirmed a list, that confirmed a list of the many repairs, issues, maintenance, et cetera, upgrades that need to be done in order for the schools to be at baseline, and then possibly start to expand a little bit, right? So, I, when I started having children, I stayed in Dearborn because I love it here so much. I would say that it's kind of disappointing that I have not heard too much about the recent school shooting down in Texas, right? It upsets me greatly. I will tell you that because of evil in this world, that we will use one of our strengths here in Dear... People will use one of our strengths here in Dearborn against us, and that would be diversity. One of the reasons why I love this city is because of the diversity. I love it. It's great. There are parts of this world, parts of this country, parts of the state where somebody would look at our district, at our city, and have following intentions for that. Because of that, I have doubled down in my resolve to make sure that we are not waiting a year, two years, three years to put together a plan to make sure that we have the kids' safety, internal and external, in place for situations ranging from possible school shootings to bullying situations, to somebody laying hands on somebody. But specifically here today, I'm going to talk a little bit about the school shooting situation just because there's a range of solutions out there that exist in all different price points. One of the concerns that was raised at the last meeting on why we are not putting something up for a bomb proposal, for some sort of funding for a lot of this, is due to taxes. I would like to remind everybody that listens that there's no such thing as a city anywhere in the U.S. where your property values are high, but your schools are bad. And safety is definitely on parents' minds, and it's going to be one of the things that attracts people to a particular district.
I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. So I would just encourage the district, if, I know there's going to be a study to take place, if nothing else, give some consideration to those items that are safety-oriented, sooner rather than later. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, Ms. Fay Nimmer would like to come to speak to the board about school safety.
Good evening, Board Trustees, Dr. Milaico, President. To the gentleman before me, we actually invested 3.2 million in our CareHawk system. I ask you to research that a little bit further. It's supposed to be a state-of-the-art system, and understand the limitations and shortcomings and deficiencies that we've had in that system to date. With the Texas school shooting being top of mind for me as a parent, I'll start by recounting a 911 call initiated by a ten-year-old from Robb Elementary. In the transcript obtained by the New York Times, the student pleaded with the dispatcher, "There are a lot of bodies. I don't want to die. My teacher is dead. My teacher is dead. Please send help, send help for my teacher." As we send our thoughts and prayers to the families and loved ones of the nineteen children and two teachers who lost their lives in Uvalde, Texas, I can't help but reflect on the difficult path I've encountered in engaging our administration on the topic of student safety. Being a concerned parent, reaching out to the administration and since the lockdown on March sixteenth at Fortston High School, I stood before this body on multiple occasions to convey concerns regarding the failure of the CareHawk system. To my dismay, it took over two months for the administration to heed my request for a meeting. Now that I have met with the administration, just this past week, I still have pressing concerns with respect to the robustness and effectiveness of the overarching school strategy with respect to safety. A moment of silence is warranted, Superintendent, but I ask that we take the necessary steps as a district to prioritize student safety in a long-term, sustainable strategy. As I reassess my exchange, I am left wondering if it took more than two months for the administration to begin to acknowledge a parent's concern, which is of the utmost priority, that of the safety of our children. How long does it normally take to address the long list of grievances from the teachers, staff, students, and parents? Whether those grievances relate to the malfunctioning of the CareHawk system or the missing stall doors and lack of privacy in Fortston bathrooms, or the fact that the district is egregiously top-heavy, or the minimal allocation of much-needed resources to teachers who are student-facing...
Please wrap up your comments.
Or the self-inflicted teacher shortage caused by removing teachers from the classroom and placing them in admin positions, or the special needs students who feel they have been left behind. And finally, the district culture, which now appears to be broken and not conducive to learning. When I listen to these grievances, I ask myself, do these voices represent a loud minority? Or do these concerns, in fact, resonate with a silent majority? To that end, I have received feedback that teacher, staff, and parental input has not been ascertained. And although this board...
Thank you.
Is reassuring community members of the impartial nature of the review. I'm just going to finish the sentence. There is an overall lack of trust in the board's performance evaluation process. To that end, and to best assess the sentiments across the district, I urge this board to solicit the services of a third-party HR firm to conduct an independent evaluation of the district's leadership and related culture prior to June thirtieth. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, I will read off the blue cards that are either, they do not wish to speak to the board, but they have comments, or they...
Do you think it's going to take more than two minutes?
Yes, let's go ahead and extend.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
We have a motion.
Support.
By Trustee Mosip, supported by Trustee Berry.
Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Roll call. Trustee Di Ambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petchakoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes, President McDonald.
Yes.
No name? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that you...
No, that was the shared statement.
I apologize, you did, you're right, she did.
Okay.
Another person here who also said they were, had submitted want to speak. No, no.
These are the two that I called.
It's this lady in the green jacket.
I called both of those, so those are the two that I have left.
Okay, let me go.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, please.
My name is Samra Luthman. Last month, I was approached regarding the Henry Ford Early College principal. I was approached by a contractor working with DPS, a retired employee and a current employee from the district, all from the Salina community. One indicated that the witness employee called the kids monkeys. The second said he was pretending to kick the students as they walked by. And the third indicated that he said Yemeni food was unsafe at a teacher appreciation dinner. Two of these allegations go back to his time working at Salina, but your investigation didn't uncover this because you barely scratched the surface. And even when they did, they found a culture of ethnic intimidation in a building he ran for ten years. These were your words. No amount of blue ribbons can fix the culture of ethnic intimidation there. The administration created a new director position for him in central office because they knew he wasn't trustworthy enough to remain at the Early College. They promoted him. You promoted him. Because you cannot trust him to be around our kids at schools. The bottom line is that you have an employee who's been making disparaging comments to student, staff, and parents for over a decade, and he blatantly admitted two years ago. It's his words. It's in his file. If in his twenty-seven years working for the district, he's not learned how to navigate cultural sensitivities, in spite of being counseled on it two years ago, what makes today any different? How many chances are you going to give? Enough. Our children will not be collateral damage as you try to habilitate employees on what is inappropriate or racist to say. Students will come first. Your apology, his apology rings hollow. The damage has been done. You've instilled in our several generations of students that they are less than others. Simply because of what they are, not who they are. That's years of trauma and damage. And if our kids associate learning with trauma, how do you expect these kids to move on to higher learning? I haven't even touched on the physical assault of the second student I represent. Three witness statements were submitted to the administration. I sent you a picture for crying out loud. Your administration took seventy-five days to complete a fifteen-day investigation. HR drafted a report for one case and completely excluded the assault allegation from it. Intentionally. They did not submit it to the superintendent or the board. They swept it under the rug, as if to erase it from history. We received nothing except an email today saying the HR could not substantiate the claim. If that's the case, where's your report? Where's your evidence? Where's the superintendent's final decision? Who did you interview? Nobody, because it was never Donnie. In full expectation that the superintendent will issue the same result of the promotion of the perpetrator in this next case, we would like to assert our right, in accordance with your board policy, to an appeal. Quote, "In attempt to resolve the complaint, the board shall meet with the concerned parties and their representative within twenty days of receipt of their appeal."
I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
In addition to appealing the decision, we demand accountability for the lack of integrity to investigate on the part of HR, for the cronyism displayed by the cabinet, who you are extending today for another two years. But this is what happens when you hire principals to serve as HR directors. They are unqualified. All we're asking is that you hold the principal and the district accountable because that's what we elected you to do. And for the record, elections be damned, I will stand for what's right.
Thank you for your comments.
Do you know which one, these ones first? Okay.
Good evening, Board members and superintendent.
Oh, sorry, so there was a blue card. And who's the person?
Ikram.
What is her name?
Ikram.
And she's giving her time to you, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew. Sorry.
Edib Mosip. I'm here to speak because, and I want to address the board as a whole, because I'm very concerned on the directions of our schools. I love our schools. My kids goes to schools. I'm a product of this school district. I pride myself in being involved in the schools. We have great things happening in our schools. But however, we have challenges. And this board seem like, don't like to confront challenges. You don't. You're now known as Do Nothing Board. Guess what the administration give you and move forward. And if there is a challenge, instead of addressing the challenge itself, you're starting attacking each other. And shame on you to do that. Focus on the challenges that our students face, that parents are bringing up. And when those concerns reach you, it tell you of the lack of leadership within the district. Because issues like this should not come forward to this level. They should have been addressed a long time ago. It tell you that we have a lack of leadership in the district when a superintendent pull out of community meetings. He doesn't want to speak to the community anymore, to our community. And the previous president of the board supported that, and you supported it. It was in emails. We used to have discussions, civils. We used to have issues that bring up to our level. You don't want to hear that. It's doubled standards all the time in this district. And I was in, honestly, I was in planning to come to speak to you tonight. I came in, but a community member encouraged me to come to speak. And I'm doing it because of the double standards we see in this district for those who have, who's connected, and those who are not. Because we heard about the coaching issue and et cetera. And right away, it was solved in week. It was gone. There was no issues. Nobody came to this meeting tonight. Why? Why the other issues are not addressed right away, like that issue? Ask yourself why. Why this double standards for community who is marginalized and you think can't speak for itself and can't bring issues? Teachers came here three, four months ago. A lot of teachers came here to you. And you know when a teacher come here to the board to speak against administration? They're putting their job, their livelihood on the line. And what did you do? There were a couple of board members that guess talk, at least acknowledged them. The majority of the board members were silent, like nothing is happening. And when they follow up, what did you guess told them? "We gave you some money, so shut up." Yes. Those teachers still did not heard about the culture they facing. Even if there are two teachers, one teacher is enough for you to address those concerns. Let alone, many teachers came, full event meeting like this. What did the board do? The response, we need to confront challenges. We live in a difficult times. And this is your job. Your job is not to come here, guess, claps, and it's great things. Your job to come here and confront challenges that our district face. We're a big district, we have a lot of challenges. It's like the issue with infrastructures. Same thing, what did you do? File it to, you don't want to confront it. Now you want to study for thirty-year study? Where was that thirty years since twenty nineteen after the bomb failed? Why you didn't conduct that? Why we now find ourselves we needed a thirty-year study? Come on, you don't want to confront challenges. Confront it, instead of attacking each other. Confront the challenges and face. And I'll leave you with this. No matter how great our superintendent is, and we have great relationships, no matter how great he is, no matter how great he is, when he feel that the majority of the board will support him automatically, whatever he do, he will get the majority of the support of the board, he's not going to do a good job. He's not going to listen to some people. So he's going to dismiss like what's happening tonight. And it's unfortunate. My heart is really in pain to see our community going against each other. We shouldn't reach this point. We shouldn't. We shouldn't. When our kids are now in the same school, attacking each other because who they are, where country they come from, we shouldn't. It's really painful to see that. We're proud ourselves of one community with each other, one team, I heard the superintendent speaking many times, one team. We need to feel that we're part of that team. Some community members don't feel part of that team. So it's your job to make us feel part of that team. Not to dismiss us, not to tell us go home and we, we have blue ribbons. No. Address the issues that we come forward to you tonight. Talk to us like human beings. We're bringing pain in front of you. We're bringing students who are tortured. Whatever the issue is, talk to us like human beings. We're human beings here. Address us. Don't leave us in suspense like you left the teachers for months. And I hope that you improve on that. When parents or community members come to you, some of you said that last time, like people come to you, they speak, they leave, they get disengaged. What's the point of coming and address you if we don't get really appreciated and, and heard back at least a follow-up? You come with this concern, here's the follow-up, what happened. I agree, I don't agree, at least I feel like I was heard from you. But come here, write your name, say something, be part of a committee, and I appreciate it. Sorry for taking maybe more than I supposed to be, I appreciate you. Have a good night.
There are two more blue cards that came in, and they are here. So before I read the blue cards, next of Sam Badun. I'm sorry, he didn't, he didn't say what you wanted to speak about, so. You didn't put on there what you wanted to speak about, so.
There's so much to speak about.
Three minutes, though.
All right. I'm actually going to make this really quick. I'm just going to touch on something that a few people haven't, well, nobody's really touched on. First of all, thank you for having me, and good evening to the board and the superintendent. I want to talk about basically how our money or our tax dollars being spent, and I feel it's not, not being spent in the, in the right places, and I'll get to that in a second. But I do want to say, I do agree with the gentleman that was up here that the challenges need to be faced, and, and we do have a reputation here in, in our district that we tend to kind of sweep things under the rug.
We have a speaker speaking. Please be quiet in the back.
I reclaim my time, please. Okay, and I also would like to piggyback off of Mr. Hashem and Ms. Neemer's, basically their statements of accountability, and, and that there are, there are a lot of issues. And I've sent emails to the board, I've sent emails to the superintendent. And I am going to leave on record my email for anybody who's watching this, or anybody in the back that would like to get a mountain of facts, not allegations, as one, as, as one board member had said, and another board member pretty much said that they would pray for me as patronizing me. Again, in, in essence, to try to silence me, but we're not going to go, we're not going to go there, we're going to go into some facts here. We are one of the, we, we pay one of the most school taxes in the state of Michigan. I don't have the actual number, but I think it's in the top 10. However, I'm going to give you some numbers that are staggering. We are ranked 3,276 nationally out of 17,843 school districts as far as our rankings. So when you guys boast about, oh, we're up there, we're not up there. We're not even in the top one-third. We're 100, our top high school, which is Dearborn High School, is 110 out of 660 high schools, and three of them being here in, in Dearborn. Out of the Detroit metro schools, we rank 43, 43rd out of 57. And of course, in the city of Dearborn, Dearborn High School ranks number one out of three. In college readiness, we rank 5,965 nationally out of 17,843 schools. State assessment proficiency, we rank 5,392 out of 17,843. Well, let me go back to college readiness. Out of the state of Michigan, we are the 184 out of 660. Going back to state assessment, I gave national numbers.
I'm going to need you to wrap up, please.
It's not going to take too much time, but you've given people a lot more than three minutes. I asked for reclaiming my time. So please, let me, let me finish.
And I did.
This is not a personal thing. Let, let the public know what, what we're go.
We've already extended this meeting well beyond, and we haven't stopped your business.
We have a right to speak.
I understand. Please wrap up your comments.
I will. College curriculum, we rank 5,013 nationally out of 17,843. In the state, we're 161 out of 660. State assessment performance, we're 1,434th out of 7,843, and in the state of Michigan, we're 48th, which is probably one of the best as far as state assessment for, in the state of Michigan, we're 48 out of 660. Our scorecard is 81.64.
Okay, I've given you extra time.
Okay, we, we, as far as taking at least one AP exam, 32% of our students have done that. Passed at least one AP exam, 20% of our students have only done that. Mathematics proficiency, we're at 40%. Reading proficiency, we're at 62%. The only thing that we're good at, which everybody pretty much graduates, is graduation rate, 95%. I'll wrap it up here, but my email is W Badun, spelled with an E, the number five, at gmail.com. So it's W Badun, five, at gmail.com, for anybody who wants much more records and.
Thank you.
And what the administration's all about, please email me and I'll send you.
We're going to have to call for an extension on the meeting again.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
Support.
We have an extension from trustee Mozepp, a support from trustee Barry. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mozepp?
Yes.
Trustee Pachukov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
The last blue card for in-person, Mona Mowari. She would like to come to speak to the board about the mistreatment of Yemeni students at Henry Ford Early College.
Hi, my name is Mona, and I'm a Yemeni-American mother. My daughter goes to the Dearborn Public Schools, and so do my nephews and my nieces. And I'm here to express my frustration and deep concern about how Yemeni students are being treated in the Henry Ford Early College by the principal and the assistant principal. I'm not going to reiterate what's been said already. I'm here to ask the board one simple ask, and it is, please do your job in ensuring our kids' safety, our students' safety, their emotional and physical and mental safety. The fact that the superintendent decided to keep this person employed tells our community and our kids that they don't matter to you, and that you're okay tolerating racist behavior and bullying. Anywhere else, he would have been terminated. Thank you.
I will start reading the blue cards for those who are not in person, or that did not want to speak to the board. Anonymous, they wanted to speak to the board about racism in the district. How dare you allow someone who makes racist comments towards the Yemeni community to continue to work in DPS? There is zero tolerance for racism. Next, no name. I wish not to speak, but I call for removing the principal of Henry Ford Early College. Anonymous, regardless of discriminatory comments against Yemenis or non-Yemenis, these children already have so much pressure from social media and peer pressure, where any negative comments could have the biggest impact on their future. This should not be condoned, period. Next, I apologize, I cannot read the last, the first name. I'll spell the A-L-Z-R-J-A-W-I, last name. Support for Henry Ford Early College principal. Anonymous, DPS is known to support racist staff against students. Enough time to remove the principal of Henry Ford Early College from DPS altogether. First name Adam, last name starts with an M, but I cannot read the rest of the writing. He is wishing to speak to the, or did not want to speak to the board, but wants to make the following comment, to get rid of the Henry Ford Early College principal. No name, remove the Henry Ford Early College principal from his post. Mr. Obad Mari, that the Henry Ford Early College president needs to be investigated. Hazeem Fritri, the Henry Ford Early College president should be penalized and punished for his racist actions and comments. Ajil Almati, Henry Ford Early College should, president should be disciplined and penalized for his actions and remarks racist comments. Ms. Abdullah, educators should be creating a nurturing, respectful environment without There was a name, but it's crossed out, so I'll leave it as crossed out. The aggressiveness that the principal from Henry Ford Early College attacks his students, also the racism that he puts out to the Arab students. Anonymous, the Henry Ford Early College president, or I'm sorry, principal, has shown racist actions, comments, and remarks towards male boys. Discipline should be, should be, I'm not quite sure, not promotion. Discipline should be performed, not promotion. Sahar Abdullah, remove the Henry Ford Early College principal from DPS for the racism and bigotry he has shown to the Yemeni and Iraqi students. He will go to the state board otherwise. Amari Sadi, training and accountability for administrators and cultural sensitivity. It is not okay to allow racially charged sarcasm to be unleashed on innocent students. No name, I'm infuriated on the actions of the principal at HFEC and lack of accountability by the district. I'm calling on the Board of Education to remove this individual from his position. No name, special ed services needs to be revamped. It lacks staff and funds to provide them fair services because an employee values paying his staff well, but doesn't care for kids. Also, Jim Crow needs to end in Dearborn. Racism has no room in Dearborn. Ellie Berry would like, he just put HFEC. And the last one, Bert, Mr. Bert, would like, he just put HFEC as well. And the last one, it's from Mr. Osama Siblani, and he left behind, this is why I'm standing by and supporting Dearborn Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Glenn Malaco from 2018 to 2022 for meritorious budget awards from the Association of School Business Officials International. 2017 to 2021, five national blue ribbon schools from the United States Department of Education. 2019, Dr. Glenn Malaco was named the state of Michigan Superintendent of the Year by Mass of the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators. 2019, Dearborn School District received the National Title I Distinguished School. 2015 to present, Dr. Malaco was rated highly effective by the Board of Education. 2019, the Mackinac Center rated Dearborn Public School District as one of the top districts for achievement. Dr. Malaco was voted by Massa as president-elect 2022 to 2023, and president 23 to 24, State Superintendent Association. In 2016, the U.S. News and World Report magazine ranked best high schools in the country, and Michigan ranked seven schools with gold medals, 93 with silver medals, and 159 with bronze medals. Dearborn High and Fortuna received a silver ranking and were in the top 100. Edsall received a bronze medal. There are a total of 850 high schools in the state of Michigan. All three schools were recognized in national rankings and state rankings. As a fact, several students from this district are attending or have attended Ivy League universities and graduating top of their class, and much more. I'm happy to announce that on June 8th, the Arab American News in collaboration with Huntington Bank will be giving $75,000 in scholarships to 20 seniors from Dearborn and Crestwood School Districts. During the process, I was impressed by the quality of our students and their academic achievements. It doesn't come by, this doesn't come by accident. Thanks to the superintendent, his team of principals, assistant principals, counselors, and teachers for making this happen. Can we do better? Yes, but not by bickering and backstabbing. Working together, we can do much better. I believe, I do not see any more blue cards. That is the end of citizen participation. And then next is board follow-up within citizen participation.
Okay, trustee Thor?
One of the comments tonight was about the superintendent and no longer communicating as often with certain communities in the district. And it was alluded to, this was something that was done last year. It was, it was a decision that, that I made. I don't know how much I talked with the rest of the board, but as the president, what I saw was that the superintendent was spending a lot of his time dealing with specific schools and groups. And what I asked him to do was create a system where he can be able to rotate between all the different schools and groups, and have his executive directors also attending meetings, so he's got more, his time spread more evenly across the district. So I did want to comment on that one. Another thing that was brought up a couple of times, Dr. Malaco, was about security. We are coming off another high school, I'm sorry, not high school, but elementary, or just school shooting in general. And while we've already talked about things we're going to be working on in the district this summer, and the big one being HVAC systems, I would ask the district to please consider the safety and security of our students and see what other projects we could work on during this summer, even if it means redirecting some of the, the capital that we were assuming was going to be going to HVAC. Thanks.
Trustee Barry?
Dr. Malaco, with graduations come up, did you have anything to add regarding the key club demand?
Yeah, I had that on the list, so I'm glad you brought it up. The, so the, the sashes on the cords and it's the, it's been the process of recognizing academic, and it hasn't been for participation. Mr. Martin, I know is going to have another review, but right now, because we have a lot of clubs and groups that students can participate in, so you potentially have a lot. So it's come, you know, the high school principals, they review it every year through the secondary, and to this point, we haven't done it for participation. It's only been for, you know, academic achievement levels. So that's been the delineation. And again, part of it is just because we, you know, we value key club, we value rotary, all of them, and that's been the decision to this point. Doesn't mean we can't review it in, in the future, and I believe that's what Mr. Martin is doing with the team as well.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
The other thing, I've got a few things, Madam President. I heard earlier that maybe on the blue cards, we should put a spot for students. Maybe, I think there, isn't there a spot where, what's your relationship or?
Who you're representing.
Representing? Yeah, maybe we should clarify and say, you know, student, I mean, students come up here and they say we're students, parents come up here and say we're parents. But I'd like to also see, you know, what is your interest in the district? Because, you know, we've had people come up here and speak that they actually get paid from the district and make comments, and we don't know that. You need to disclose that, that, you know, you're on the payroll here, so, okay, that's just a comment. The other thing is, Ali Alhamdulillah, my mother always taught me, waf mal hat, stand with what is righteous. So I'm not looking to defend anybody here, nobody in this table needs defending, but words do matter. It was mentioned earlier that last meeting, the only time, it was at one point where, I was going to call you Dr. Mozepp, but we have a Dr. Mozepp, but trustee Mozepp switched gears when he was told that his motion was illegal. It's black and white right here, he was told that his motion is not illegal. We just approve these minutes. And the other, the other thing, just to throw accusations that possibly this board broke the Open Meetings Act. When you have an employee, any employee that asks for a closed session, the board does not have an option to bring up any evaluations or anything about that employee on public. Employee asks for a closed session, you're going to a closed session, and I made that very clear. And the superintendent, superintendent Malaco said that he wants a closed session, then we went to closed session. I want to clarify that.
Point of information, he did not ask for it. Trustee Mozepp asked for it, and then Dr. Malaco said in order to not, to be accommodating, he would do it, but he did not ask for that closed session at that meeting.
Okay, let me go back to what I read earlier. Trustee Barry said, there was a discussion going back and forth, and we're all focusing on this corner right here, there's a discussion that was going back and forth between Dr. Malaco and trustee Mozepp. Okay? And as soon as I said, just to be safe. And as soon as I said, just to be safe, I'll support the motion, Superintendent Maleko said that he wants a closed session.
Because trustee Moser asked for.
And you know what? And if I was, if I knew what I had to say, I would probably advise my employee that, yeah, we should go into closed session. I'm just saying that, you know, to accuse the Board that we broke an Open Meetings Act.
No, I don't, I don't think that's what you were saying. Initially, initially trustee Moser said, I want to go into a closed session without any, and I said at that time, you can't just call for a closed session. It has, there has to be a, a reason for it.
And I can go back in a minute where he says, yes, I want to call for a closed session under personnel reasons.
No, and then he went, he first called for just a closed session, and I said, you can't call for just a closed session, has to have a, a, a reason for it. So then he went to the personnel, and then he went to Dr. Maleko. And I think that the reference was for, he initially caused, and maybe her wording was.
Well, it was very clear that there might have been a violation of Open Meetings Act.
Oh, for that part, I can't, yeah.
Once an employee asks, and correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows about it, once an employee asks for a closed session, you just go into closed session.
He didn't ask for a closed session.
He didn't ask for the closed session.
Can I, can I clarify my intent since I'm here? I did not want to go into a closed session. I said I did it to be cooperative. But what I was saying on the record was that for my performance evaluation, and I actually wanted to go, I said my performance evaluation is going to happen in a couple of weeks, we have a meeting, and then it was stated, no, we're going in right now. And that's when I did it to be cooperative. But just so it's, I'm on the record, my intent was not, I didn't even know there was going to be a call. I mean, I was caught off guard like a lot of people were. So my intent was, I did do it to be cooperative, but it wasn't my idea, I didn't, I, and secondly, I want you to know, yes, if you're discussing my performance, I don't know what it is. I need advanced written notice. So in the future, I want to put that on record too, that I need that written notice, let's afford it to every employee.
And you're entitled to that.
You know, for every employee.
You are entitled.
So my, yeah, but my intent was not to go in, but I did it because there was, you know, it was a tense situation, we had people in the crowd, and I felt like, okay, I want to be cooperative, and, you know, let's calm down, and let's, and that's why I did it. But, but on record, I really did not.
We can have a call for an extension.
Sorry.
Motion extend the meeting.
From trustee Berry, supported by trustee Moser.
Not trustee, Dambrosio supported.
Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes, President McDonald.
Yes, and I'm going to have to say, can we, we gotta.
I just, I just, I mean, there was comments made.
I, I understand, but it is already 11:00.
That we didn't take a vote.
We need to.
There was a reason why we didn't take a vote. There was a motion on the table, and like I said, I'm not going to prove myself, but to be safe, I'm going to support it, just to, just to make sure that we don't cross any lines, because if all of a sudden, you know, if somebody gets a little angry, he says something, then we'll get ourselves in trouble. I did support the motion, but at the, whatever, 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 if Dr. Maleko fears like he scores to ask for a closed session, but he did ask for a closed session, that's not, that's why we did not take the vote. So there was, my point is, we did not break any open meetings.
We need to move forward.
Yeah, and I wasn't commenting on the open meetings. I was just commenting on my.
No, I understand.
Okay, I've got one more item I want to cover.
Sure, please.
Okay, it was brought up a couple of times about the coaching issue. I was sitting in a committee meeting earlier, and I got a message not to come to this meeting, things have been resolved. I'm like, it was a little joke. Mary and I just laughed about it. Hey, I can go home, let's call Roxanne, tell her during the meeting, we're having fun with this, right? I was clueless. Then I sat and talked to another one of my colleagues, we have no idea what's going on. So I would like a report, if at 2:30 in the afternoon, we got a, an email from an administrator, and we heard from two other administrators the last 24 hours, then all of a sudden I come here, then I hear that things have, things are worked out, or whatever that means. So I just like to report on what, what happened today compared to all these emails and everything else that we've been talking about. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Trustee Dambrosio.
Piggybacking on, same in regard to the sports thing. It was on social media much earlier than anybody knew about it. And I'd like to know how this information gets out to the public before this Board even knows what's going on. And I brought this up more than once, and, you know. I just don't understand. There is a leak in the dam.
I raised my hand, but I'll go had trustee Petrichoff.
Trustee Moser.
As far as our conversation, breaking the Open Meeting Act, I think we can go back to the tape and just watch. I did call on Dr. Maleko to call for a closed session, and I was arguing with trustee Berry that we have to make the motion, I made the motion, he supported it, we have to vote on it. But he, based on his experience, he said, we don't need even a roll call. So, I mean, I believe at that time, if we did a roll call, that's, but I'm not getting into that. It's, it was clear that we wanted to go to a clearer session, and that's why I, I'm not going to go, obviously, what happened in closed session, that's, that's why we wanted to go behind closed doors for the unity of this Board and for the safety of our staff, all of our staff members, including Dr. Maleko.
Trustee Petrichoff.
The one thing, the one thing I want to point out about, and that's why I brought up about the court of public opinion and social media. My suspicion is, is that a lot of people who are undergoing these circumstances tend to share things with other people before we ever get the information. And some of these people have relationships with people who have Facebook blog sites, and they don't follow the proper protocol that we would like to see, which is to come, come to some kind of conversation within the District to try to resolve these issues before they take it to the public space in order to argue it there. And we, we kind of saw a representation of that tonight. A lot of people came in because they had heard, seen, read, been encouraged, whatever, through social media to make their voices heard or here. The issue with them doing it this way is that it gives the impression that we are the do-nothing Board because we are having to sit here and, and listen to a variety of, of individuals who have, who have an impression and a perception of what's occurring without all of the full facts. And as a Board, we can't always share the, all of the full facts legally, and they would like to have access to that information. And there would be a legal problem if, if we went forward with it. So it's an unfortunate consequence of social media, and people use, it's like the old telephone game where everybody gets on, I'm a little older than some of you, but.
What did you say, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I know. So that, so that's where we stand on that. But I did have the board follow-up, and I don't know if Mr. Esseli is still here about the transportation and special education, because that was brought up again tonight as well.
Yep. Hold on, just one second, please, trustee Thorpe.
Dr. Maleko, several of the, the people that commented also talked about the use of some of the District's media for purposes that I'd say it wasn't intended for. So we need to make sure District employees know, whether it's Remind, emails, blogs, any other item, what it is and is not supposed to be used for.
Can I comment too? I was going to mention, yeah, that was one of the things I was going to mention that we'll look into it. I don't, I don't, I think there was maybe an email shared, but I have to see what it is, we have to look into that. We don't, I don't have the detail, but we would. Excuse me. And Remind is also not our official platform, we use it as a tool, so we'll have to see what was used, what, you know, if we have that information, and we'll have our team look into it to see, you know, who may have, who may have done that. Because we definitely don't, you know, have people, you know, condone for that kind of issue and sending, you know, students to the, to the meetings and things like that.
Well, even if Remind isn't ours, we use it. Like Schoology, Parent Connect, any of these things that, and we want to make sure the information that's going out is, is being, is being, everything's being used appropriately.
Absolutely, thank you.
Trustee Watts?
Just two quick suggestions. I think with the, being able to hear the student voice, I think is important, and getting them in and out quickly, I think is also important. So if maybe going forward, we would have a, a special color for their citizen participation, so that if it is a student, we can get them in and out.
Or even a sticker or something. We don't have to change all the cards, just have.
Just, just something that we would know that if they're here, I think we need to evaluate their, their sleep time and whatnot. And I think, the other thing that I was hearing was a lot of communication, and I think that that may be the theme of today is over, there's nothing wrong with overly communicating. And I think when there was that school shooting, I received a lot of information, and I saw it on social media about what Dr. Maleko put out there. But if those parents are not subscribing to those logs or letters, I'm wondering how else we can make sure that we are sending it out. I know principals are sending it out, but I think the person who spoke to it isn't a parent and, and may not be on those blogs. So I don't know, do we share it on other community forums?
The, like the letter thing?
Yeah.
It was all, it was on social media as well.
Okay.
So it's all, it's on public.
So as long as they would follow that, so maybe encouraging.
Yeah, if they're on either my social media or if they're on the District, they would have gotten it that way.
Okay.
Along with the blogs. And I think he did a, on a couple of them, we did like a blast out with the blogs.
Okay. That was it. Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Good evening or good morning, I don't know which one to say. But I do have a great update here. This morning, actually, I woke up to a text message from one of our great community partners, Blue Hands United, in which they mentioned that a parent had reached out to them, very excited that they saw a Dearborn Public Schools bus pull up and do a special ed route pickup for one of our students that was formerly transported by National Trails. The reason why I'm telling you this story is we begun the transition from National Trails to Dearborn Public Schools for our most vulnerable populations. How school had a route today, so did now in Elementary, and hopefully by the beginning of next year, will be fully routed for our most vulnerable students by Dearborn Public Schools. I'd like to give a, a huge thank you to Dr. Maleko through the entire process, in addition to Director Mark Andrews, Ms. Neta Elamadine, and Supervisor Rick Sortis. We worked collaboratively along with all of our community partners, Blue Hands United and such. We had a very positive meeting, so we're happy with the results, and hopefully we can continue to move forward with things as well. Thank you.
Before you continue, Dr. Maleko, I just want to say, we are, thank you, part of, the part of the agenda that we are on now is after citizens' participation, it's called Board Follow-Up. I want to thank trustee Petrichoff for having the suggestion, and this is primarily to update on issues from previous meetings. Excuse me, that were brought forward. So that was an update, and Dr. Maleko has a couple as well.
Yeah, so I have one other one. We have had two very positive meetings, and this came up at Blue Card a few months ago. We formed a committee called the Music Committee, and I have several employees on there, and I want to, I don't know if I can, can I mention that just they're on the committee?
Sure.
Okay. So Rose Aldubaly, Karen Sherman, Community as well, and it's from the Dearborn Youth Symphony, and the Dear, the Dearborn Ever-American Chamber Symphony is on there too. And I'm leading the meeting, but really, they're going to be doing a lot of the work, but they're very excited. There's Brian McCloskey, Lisa Meyer, Gillian Newton, Griffin Wojtowski, Hiba Lobaki, I think I said Rose Aldubaly, Fatmi Faraj, Elizabeth Myers, and Michael Ibrahim, and we might get another parent on there, but it's been very positive, and they're already trying, we've added some staffing with the middle school, which, you know, over a certain time, and then they're doing some things. Oh, and I don't know if I put, Dan, I'm missing one person here, I know, because this comes from the appointment. But from Fortson, they were also doing a lot of promotion and positive with Mr. McCloskey and with Dan over at Fortson, and they were doing, you know, a lot of positive. So the committee is going well, we've had two meetings, I will probably meet with them twice a year, and then they'll have meetings in between, but it is very positive, and I just wanted to mention that. And the other thing I do want to just clarify is that, you know, obviously with an investigation, I can't get into, you know, specific things, and they're always sensitive, we have legal counsel involved, and, you know, we can't comment on the specifics. But I do want to clarify one thing, there was no promotions over at the HFEC, so I'm not sure where, where that was coming from, but there was no promotion. I just want to clarify that. And then just to say, yeah, it's, you know, unfortunately, when you're in, you know, we can't talk publicly about personnel matters, investigations involving staff and students, and so we can't really provide a, you know, a detailed response, but I can say that, at least clarify that information. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which Board members or the Superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motions below.
Trustee Moser.
I would like to exclude number 21 and 22 for a separate roll call. I have, as well as number eight, and I have a question on 19.
So pulled eight, 21, and 22? Is that correct?
Correct.
And you had a question on?
19.
On number 19. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Thorpe.
I had questions, but I don't need the items pulled, action item three and also 19.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, yes, we have to call for another meeting extension.
I call for an extension of this meeting.
Trustee Moser, trustee Thorpe.
Roll call, trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes, President McDonald.
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we're going to pull 18, 21, and 22, correct?
No, eight.
Eight, I'm sorry, eight, eight. All right, so move that action items number one through 20 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of eight, 21, and 22. Did I say that correctly? Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion? A motion and support?
Oh, support.
Okay. I'm sorry, who made the motion? Okay, motions by trustee Thorpe, supported by trustee Berry.
Where do you want to start with questions?
We will start with the, yes, start with the questions on number eight, I believe, no, number three. Was that reading, three and 19? Yes.
The question for number three was, when you look at the breakdown of cost for this item, Camp Invention, it's costing different amounts at the different schools, and I was curious as to why.
Camp Invention, once again, is the choice for some of the summer programming for several of our elementary schools, as it was last year. We have four schools that are choosing Camp Invention, and those schools have different numbers of students totally based on the building team's plan for their students, so that helps to determine what the cost is. There are also three different models, and those models are Explore 2022, that's $95 a student, Elevate 20, which is $90 a student, that uses modules from 2020, and Elevate Partial. And there are different levels of programming, and that contributes to the different amounts that schools have decided to pay. So they work directly with Camp Invention to plan their program.
Okay, thank you.
I also had a question on three.
Yes, please.
So it says the four schools have been selected, did every school have the opportunity?
Every elementary school had the opportunity to do it, and these are the four that chose to do it.
The follow-up question is probably to Mr. Wall here. Funding would be from Esther III and General Fund unit budget. Do we have the percentage breakdown, what that looks like?
Each elementary school, and actually middle school and high school, got $75 per student. So as Dr. Cholka alluded to, that if they wanted a larger, more included program, it might go over that $75, and they pay out of the unit budget.
Thank you very much.
On question number eight?
You had a question on number?
Yeah. So on this question.
I'm sorry, are we eight, or, because didn't we pull eight?
No, eight was pulled, 19, I think, was the question.
Oh, 19, sorry, yeah. The bus, is this the bus contract, right?
No, 19 was school of choice.
I had a question on eight too, but it's okay.
We've got to wait.
Yeah, I know. Oh, yeah, 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 we're going to come back, sorry, I got confused. It's been a long night. All right, so question on school of choice, correct?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that we're doing close of choice for excluding the school, the, the virtual school, right? We're still having discussions about whether to open that virtual school or not, correct?
That is along the same lines of what my question was, is, well, we're, I forget the wording, but we'd be a closed district. However, for the virtual school, can we be an open district to students outside?
And I'm going to get a confirmation, but I believe the, that's accurate. You could decide to do that. I don't know if we'd be, because it's coming quickly for the fall, that we would have enough time to get it all done. We could, we could through the committee if we wanted to discuss it. But I know Ms. Peterson was planning to come to the Policy Committee at one point, but then we canceled them, if you remember, because of the bond meetings, we had the study session. But it's definitely a possibility. And I think, I think, oh, Dr. Chokel did confirm it with legal. So we can do that. She's nodding. So that we can do that if the board chose to do that.
Trustee Barry? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just going to have the same follow-up. As a motion or the recommended action here includes the programs. So I read it somewhere where it says, maybe it's in the background information, where it says Dearborn Schools and its programs. And actually, virtual school is a program. So in this motion, are we by default voting to close the virtual school as well?
Right, would we need to amend action item 19 to make sure that the virtual school was open to non-district residents?
Well, we haven't made that decision, but I'm saying, should we exclude that from this motion? Say, it's still not open, it's, is it open or not? I don't know, it's closed right now.
It's closed right now.
It's closed. Only Dearborn, so for viewers, only Dearborn students who live in Dearborn, or you have to live in Dearborn to come and attend Dearborn.
Or that small section of Dearborn Heights.
And small section, yeah, we don't want to forget. That place has been forgotten a few times. That place in Dearborn Heights also. If you are in Dearborn Schools District, and trustee Barry is in this business, he knows that well, a lot of.
You said a right school, Dearborn School District.
Dearborn School District, parents can send their kids to Dearborn Schools. If you're outside, you cannot attend our schools, nor you can currently attend the virtual program. So we're asking about the just for virtual program. Because it's a possibility that is going to bring in more revenue to our district. But it needs a lot of planning and it needs a lot of studying. And I think, I believe we discussed that in the Finance Committee, but I don't want to steal trustee Petlicoff's thunder.
Well, we just opened up the potential to have the, start the conversation.
So I just want to make sure that in this, we're not making it for good. This is not set in stone, that we can revisit this and reopen it for virtual.
It's an annual.
I know, even this year, that's what I'm saying. Is that possibility that we can amend this motion then, right now?
Do you think it would be possible that would be ready for open enrollment in the fall?
I can't say right now for 100%, but we could work on it with Ms. Peterson and see if that's a possibility. I know she was planning for it. So I'd have to get back to you.
We just need an amendment, I would say, then.
Is the resolution time-sensitive?
We can.
We have another meeting.
Yeah.
I have a three-part question before, let me just finish. If it's not time, I have an offering. Now, second question. Do I understand this right? The Dearborn Public Schools and the Virtual Academy are separate schools?
Virtual school.
Yeah, virtual schools are separate schools?
The virtual school is officially a separate school registered by the state.
So how would that fall under this resolution?
So. So right now, so if you look at it, the only exception is for employees. And that was a decision made by the board, not for the virtual per se, but just for the district in general. So since it's one of our schools, it would fall into Dearborn.
So we did, we did discuss this in Finance, because obviously we're looking for revenues.
Sure.
So what I'm going to offer, we probably need to table this.
Okay.
Until we hear from the experts. But what I'm going to offer is, and kind of like speed things up, we can just look at the elementary level. Because I know at the high school, it's very complicated. Talking about sports, extracurricular activities, and same thing with the middle school. If we just move as fast as we can to open for elementary, that could be possibility that we can create more revenue. What are your thoughts? I know we discussed this and we said, let's wait and talk about it in an open board meeting.
Yeah, but I don't want to, I don't want to confuse, I want to move, we've got a motion on the table and everything. I don't want to confuse it with this one.
We might have to move this.
Yeah, well, if you table this, we can't discuss it anymore. That's Robert's rule.
Today. Today, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't table yet.
Yeah, no, I'm, well, that's why I'm explaining.
Okay, so you get what I'm, Dr. Milakow, you see where I'm going with this? If we just move quickly, just for the elementary level, we get 100 kids, that's a, what is it, quick math, a million dollars? No?
Well, that would also mean more teachers, so it's not just revenue necessarily.
Okay. The accountant in the room always wins out this argument. But okay, is it, is it proper right now to table 19?
If we're, if we're not certain, I don't know that.
We don't want to limit ourselves.
Because how this reads, how this reads is that to determine annually whether they will open all or any of their school programs to students from other school districts within the intermediate school district attendance areas. So.
Any.
All or any kind of sounds.
If we're going to consider this, we can't box ourselves in, so.
Yeah, and so if we can, if we can exclude the virtual school in this, then we would want, we would want to table it.
Do we, can we amend the motion to pull number 19?
Oh, Dr. Chokel.
So some of the discussion would have to include if they are non-residents and they, if the decision is made to open just the virtual school to non-residents, there would need to be some guidance that they cannot transfer into another school, if indeed that's what the board would like to do. But the guidance for that would have to be part, possibly, of that decision so that parents of students who are non-residents who go to the virtual school can't then file a boundary line exemption to actually go to another school physically.
And then if we get there, that's a contract that will spell out what they can do, what they can't do, what's, you know, what's on there.
Yeah, there's just some steps that would have to be gone through, that's all.
If we go there. But I'm saying, that's why we're trying to do this, so we don't limit ourselves that, hey, you know, it's okay, just forget that idea for this year.
And then the question right now is, can we get all of that done? Because this is an annual.
I understand that.
Thing, so.
In a timely manner for the fall enrollment.
Yeah, that's why I offered, so I said to Dr. Milakow, let's just look at Dr. Who made the motion on this? I don't remember.
I made the motion, I believe.
I don't think this was.
I supported, I think.
This was part of the general.
Do you want to amend your motions to pull 19?
Is that how it would be, that we would pull?
You need to pull it first.
Pull it and then we'll table it.
All right, so I would amend the motion to also pull action item 19.
And I support that still, so, okay, good, thank you.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, I lost our place. Where are we at now?
I don't think there was any other items.
Okay, then we have to go back to the ones that have been pulled, is that right?
No, no, we have to roll.
Let's make this motion.
I'm sorry, it is a long night. Okay, may I have a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes.
Madam President, I put a motion on table to, table, you need to read.
Summary of what was approved.
I'm sorry.
Number.
I'm usually sleeping by now, so.
Sorry, number 19?
No, 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 you're reading the ones we just.
Summary of the ones that have been approved.
All right, apologies.
You want to exclude 21, 22?
Summary of end of agenda action items. Approval of number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Frontline Technologies. Number three, approval of an award to Camp Invention. Number four, approval of an award to Great Lakes Environmental, Inc. Five to six, approval of change orders. Number seven, approval of an award to Next Gen and MIS Corporation. Number nine through 12, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 13, approval of financial statements. Number 14, approval of cooperative agreement with Wayne Westland School per board report 21 hyphen 132. Number 15, approval of executive session closed on Tuesday, June 14, 2022. Number 16, approval of 2022, 2023 Board of Education meeting per board report 21 hyphen 133. Number 17, approval of renewal of non-classified and non-instructional staff and exempt administrative secretaries at P-12 contracts. Number 18, approval of renewal exempt administrators' contracts. And number 20, approval of donations.
All right, now we go back to.
Correct, okay.
What was been, what has been pulled?
Number eight.
Eight, 21, and 22, is that correct?
Correct.
19. Let's get 19 out of the way. A motion on the table to table action item number 19.
I'll support it.
Motion by trustee Barry, supported by trustee Mosip to table item 19. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes. Okay, then we can go back to eight.
I'll have to make another motion to extend the meeting.
Oh, yes, we will.
Support.
Okay, motion by trustee Mosip, supported by trustee Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
No, yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
That will go as well.
Trustee Watts, yes, and President McDonald?
Yes.
All right, number eight. Obviously, we just heard from Mr. Salee that we're transitioning to have our own drivers, Dearborn Schools, Dearborn Schools drivers to be doing students who are the most vulnerable. But I see this contract right now to say kind of the opposite. So I want to just make sure that we are careful on what we're saying to the public right now. So on this number eight, I know we're awarding ALC, who was the lowest bidder, in the estimated amount of $750,000 to provide sedan cab transportation for the remainder of the summer and also next calendar year. If that's what I'm understanding, correct?
Correct. This would be just for, we like to call it sedan because it's not like your yellow cab. A lot of, a lot of people would recognize it as a cab. And this is for transportation, it'd be not a school bus. It'd be transportation our own school buses couldn't provide. It's for what the students' needs are in our IEP, 504 students, things like that.
Do we?
We didn't make a motion before you started talking.
Yeah, you have to make a motion before you can discuss.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to.
Well, you got to read it. Recommended action. Want me to do it?
I'm sorry, recommended action, move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to award ALC a contract in the estimated amount of 750,000 to provide sedan slash cab transportation needs during the remainder of the 2022 summer and the new 2022, 2023 school year.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I've got a move by trustee Barry, support by trustee Watts.
Sorry for jumping on that too fast.
Okay, now, wait, now discussion, yeah.
Yeah, discussion, yes. Question now, do those sedans are, so we've heard a lot about our vendor and cameras. Are those supplied with cameras?
The sedans aren't. The technology really isn't there to put cameras in a sedan. Not like you would on a school bus, at least. They might be equipped with like a Ford.
Usually, those students, when they're transported, they're transported by themselves?
They can be, or they can be transported with two or three other students. It depends on the circumstance, the route to school they're going to. If it's a wheelchair lift, they wouldn't be able to transport as many students with. Some IEPs provide, this is, we would use these if the IP says they could only be transported by themselves. So it's all those scenarios depending on the students' needs.
So, and ALC, this new company, I assume it is a new company?
They were a new company with us last year. And we're really happy with them. They provided some really good services. We got really good feedback from our families.
How confident are we with their review? Do we review this contract on an annual basis?
Annual basis, correct.
Okay, do we put anything in the, in the bus for parents to know if they feel, we want to prevent what happened from previous situations? So, does the company put any, any disclaimers, any contact of information? If a parent has a complaint about any of those drivers or any of that sort, how do they go through?
Right, a lot of our parents, they, they contact, they have a communication with the company and in conjunction with our Transportation Department.
But if there is a complaint, they come to us though first.
Correct, correct. They can come to us, they can come to our special ed department. We like to have them come to anybody they feel comfortable, whether that be the teacher, the administrator, or our Transportation Department. Whoever they have the best relationship from, we just want to, for them to come forward with the information.
Trustee Barry?
What was the original contract amount last year?
It went up a little bit. That's a good question, trustee Barry. Don't quote me on this, I think it was like in the 500 something range. But with the increase in the fuel prices and more importantly, the demand. We want, we look at what our needs were this last year. We try to forecast out, there's a good chance we might not use all of that. But we want to try to forecast out our best budget of what we see our needs.
You reviewed why the increase, you're good with it?
Yeah, we talked with Mr. Wall about that. What we negotiated, a lot of, you'll see a lot of companies will put on fuel charges. Because we were the first district in Michigan, they've been around in other states. We were the first one in Michigan to take them on. They were happy with our relationship. And so instead of getting us a fuel charge, this was a lower way to go by just increasing it by a percentage.
Are they going to give us a commission if they pick up more business in Michigan?
I wish it worked that way. We can negotiate that, now we can try to negotiate that in our contract.
One last question, ALC, do they provide services to other districts?
They started to. A lot of, I don't know what districts, but we've gotten reference calls from, don't quote me, I think Taylor, I think Northville. I both responded to reference calls for. Now, whether they went with them, I'm not sure. But they are starting to pick up business in other school districts.
Mr. Wall, maybe you can help us with this question. When we were reviewing their contract, did we also do reference?
We did, yeah. We had to go out of state to get the reference calls, but we did at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any more questions? Can I have a roll call vote on number eight?
Eight.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe, yes?
Thanks for answering for me.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes. Now. Pardon me, I think we're at 21, is that correct?
Yeah.
I want to raise the motion.
21. Recommended action, move that Lamis Shor. Thank you, be appointed to executive director of student achievement at grade one, step nine of the Dearborn Schools exempt P-12 administrative salary schedule, 260 days effective June, July 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Support.
Have a move by trustee Thorpe and support by trustee Watts. May I have a roll call vote?
No, discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm raising my hand.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that we discuss those two items. Can we discuss those two items? Because that's how I'll be voting myself. I mean, we can just discuss one at a time.
Well, one motion was made.
Probably twenty-one will have most of the discussions. So twenty-two will be an easy vote for me at least, as of right now. I could be convinced otherwise. So I, from our last meeting, I know we have a lot of questions. And last meeting was very, very difficult for all of us. And I'm glad that we heard today's conversations about being united. So I want to quote our superintendent, Dr. Malaico, last meeting. He, when asked about, you know, that we're, this year we're foregoing, and I asked that question, how much money are we pretty much losing if this previous bond would fall off and we don't do anything about it? And we received the answer. So Dr. Malaico said, we can go for a public bond or use general fund, and you have to replenish. What we have to do is for immediate needs is to pull it from other areas. We are people business, we have to be careful. We are a little overstaffed right now because of COVID. But we know that we will get retirements, we will do our best. So we do not have layoffs. But it means that we will be losing resources, positions to provide services. We will have to start to do that gradually, moving money from the general fund every year. So, and I end quote of Dr. Malaico, that's word by word. So we have, again, major, major issues here with funding. And we're forecasting even bigger issues as far as budget shortfalls. And other districts are gonna have the same problem. And actually, one district had a very accounting error that Mr. Wall knows about. And there are probably 14 millions in the negative, which is not a great thing to hear from a good district that I thought it was. So thank you, Mr. Wall, for keeping us safe and not having that huge clerical, what they said clerical error. So as far as, I'll get to it, I know because we're running, it's going late. We have major issues in this issue. We have a lot of roofs that need to be fixed. I can go into specifics, but again, it's too late. We will have to be very cautious about how we spend money. That's why we got elected here. We got elected by the taxpayers of Dearborn of how we spend money. If we bond out, we will have to pay for it from the general fund. It's, there is no such a thing as free lunch in this country. Somebody has to pay the bill. And if we're relying on taxpayers who have been overbidding by tax, by taxes in this city, it would be a shame on all of us that these folks who work so hard every single day and they pay those taxes because they love Dearborn Schools and they love Dearborn and they love the diversity, even with our own issues, they still love the city. And they'll do anything for it to stay and raise generations to come. I'm not against these individuals that we're voting on to. In fact, I am a huge supporter of every staff member who takes the proper steps to be even state superintendent, if they would like to be. In fact, I would love to see us as a district encourage that. And I'm a huge supporter of Dr. Malaico's program of raising talent. Those individuals have done the job. I think they're very qualified, but I'm not approving of the process how they got here. The process is flawed. It has been many times, multiple times, even on this table discussed and said that this problem needs to improve. The fact that we have five folks to be interviewed by parents for one position is a problem. The fact that we're asking and requiring staff members to record their names who are on those committees is another problem. And I've raised those concerns once and twice and three times. The fact that we're gonna go into a huge budget shortfall next year is a huge problem. We're talking about cutting teachers. And we're talking about cutting very cheap positions that touch our classrooms. And here we are approving another executive director. And we've been called top heavy today. I suggested to Dr. Malaico that you could do this with two individuals, the executive director job, with the current ones that you have. You have amazing phenomenal leaders right now. And they could, they could take on the job. They've been trained, I think they could do it very well. Well, it has been tried before. That's, I think, the response that I would get. Instead of just throwing money at it to fix it and getting more people, more bodies, we have to know why it didn't work before. So I am sorry, those two positions don't need to be there. We could save the taxpayers more than, what is it? Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars by those two positions alone. They don't need to be refilled. One is an amazing elementary school principal. She's amazing at what she does. And I think she will get there to be an executive director. She's more than capable. Another one whom I know very little of, but I've heard a lot of great things. And that's what this district does at its best. So I'm asking my colleagues to review next year's, to look into this next year and to see what we can do. I know it's, a director of assessment is very important to some individuals. I think that's a very important position. But however, I believe we do a lot of assessments in this issue. And some assessments are not needed. And again.
Why are you talking about assessments around twenty-one?
I'm sorry, but again, I said that this question is gonna be on both the same.
You gotta wait.
Yeah, I'll wait. But student achievement could be done by two, but we could save the taxpayers money. Thank you.
Trustee Petrichov?
Okay, some of your arguments kind of flawed here. Number one, we as a board hire a superintendent to do a job. We don't manage how he does his job. His role is to set up his, the district personnel in the way that he thinks is going to be the most effective. We also don't get involved with the hiring process. He can hire, I don't care if he uses a Ouija board to choose the people he wants to hire. Our job is to then evaluate his final choices and yea and nay them. But how he comes about to determine them, there are many districts that don't do anything but have a superintendent, and we did it for years, and an administrator.
I've got a.
Oh, we got a.
We have to call for an extension.
Oh, I'll forget all my thoughts.
Okay, we have trustee Thorpe and trustee Mosip. Roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald.
Yes.
So I'll wrap this up really quickly. We're stepping into his territory now by telling him how he can group hi- his management team and how he can select who he, who he wants to hire. And I, for one, am not in favor of going down that path. You will, you will tie his hands and anybody else in the future by stepping into the management of this district. That's not what our role is as a board.
Trustee Thorpe?
I echo what trustee Petrichov said. This is a discussion that I've had with Dr. Malaico previously. And it's, your hires are a direct reflection of you. And if they do not do well, then you have not done well selecting them. But until I see that happening, it's, it's the superintendent's job to place these positions.
Trustee Barry?
I agree with trustee Petrichov's logic on this. The only problem I have is the process. I am voting no on twenty-one, nothing to do with the name mentioned. I think she's an amazing professional, she's done some great work for us. I don't want to get into the weeds with Dr. Malaico on this hiring process, but I have a problem with the committee work that we, we put together. It is not a policy. I've had a problem with this for the last seven, eight years. We have a reputation out there that we choose who we're gonna pick before we even start the process. The problem there is human and financial resources wasted. On two different occasions, I've been part of the discussion on a decision that was made probably like seven years ago before your administration, Dr. Malaico. And Dr. Malaico, you and I have had many, many, many discussions on this. Matter of fact, the most recent was three months ago. And I told you that that's it, I'm not supporting anymore of these until we get to it and make some changes. Reputation out there internally is that we have, we already chose who we're gonna put in that position before we even get started. Okay. There was something that happened a couple of years ago. Dr. Malaico, where I reached out to you and gave you initials of an employee that was gonna get a position before that position was even opened. I discussed that with you and another one of my colleagues. And fast forward, that's exactly what happened. We laughed about it. The only thing funny about that, that's not even funny. So I have a problem with that. I, I've even as well said, hire who you want to hire? Bring us, bring us a name to approve, you know these. The other thing is, you know, outside, I've had a lot of people reach out from the, out of the district, say, oh, I won't even apply. Some good talents, so I won't even apply. Yes, I would always support internal candidate if it's close call. But sometimes it's okay to look outside the district and get some fresh blood or some fresh ideas, whatever. There's some great people out there. We have a good example in the room right now that came from outside the district and is doing amazing things. We all probably can agree that that person is doing some amazing things. So I just wanted to make it very clear, I'm voting no with an explanation.
Trustee Watts?
I think I echo what many of my colleagues have said, that our role is not HR. Our role is not to select our candidate. And we leave our trust with Dr. Malaico, that is for him to decide. And we're not supposed to be getting involved in the weeds and micromanaging.
I had a conversation with Dr. Malaico today. And one of the things that I would like to say, and I can formally ask for it at the end of the meeting, but we already talked about this, is to, hopefully next month, if we can get it together, have a presentation, a report on what other districts are doing. We've been having some of that information sent to us in board briefs, what other districts are doing. Have the conversation about that. And then decide from there what we want the process to be. Because saying, I just, I can't vote it on the basis of the process will just, won't get us anywhere. So we have to do something to fix that, change the process, we'll come to some kind of agreement. So that won't be a bone of contention anymore.
I, I just. I, I agree with you. I should not be stepping on this, I'm not stepping. In fact, I am, I've talked to my superintendent a few times on those positions. I'm not here to make a judgment. If actually, in the initial recommendation, if it was just straight up, I want this individual to be in this position, I'll vote yes. You don't have to make a hoopla and a committee and waste people's time. Twelve o'clock, you come twelve o'clock. And you have the parent stay there for three hours interviewing candidates who are not even gonna be there. But they're there for a reason. They're there to dilute votes, numbers. We make it work for that individual to.
It's Dr. Malaico's final decision.
I'm speaking to trustee Watts.
True, you are, but in the end, it's his decision.
Absolutely, it's his decision, and I do have the right to vote yes or no.
True, you do.
But I do have also the right to enlighten you, enlighten myself, lighten my colleagues. Hopefully, we can learn. And I'm not here saying those individuals are gonna do a terrible job. In fact, I think Ms. Shurur is gonna do amazing, since her name now is public. Ms. Hildani is gonna do amazing at this job. I don't, I had this principal for five years. She was my son's principal. We had our differences, but I still respect that woman. I believe that woman would be an asset in this position. However, the situation says right now, we have a money problem. And if you're gonna be cutting teachers next year, I'll remind you of those two committees, those two positions that, in my opinion, as a yes or no vote, I believe that we can do with the two that we currently have. Think they're more than capable of handling three high schools. They're large numbers, they could do secondary and elementary. That's another model that was tried before. And I was not here when it was tried before, I was actually a student. But I think it, it did us well. It got us to the next level. There was another, another position called associate superintendent.
Okay, can I, can I?
But I'm.
Just because we're gonna have this discussion when we bring this forward.
Sure, yeah, but I'm glad that we're gonna finally talk about this process.
We'll discuss it hopefully next month, is what you said most likely?
July, it'd be July.
July, okay.
July would be as soon as we could.
Well, we'll do.
I just want to say one thing, though. I don't know why trustee Mosip keeps on saying, because you're saying this out to the audience, that we're going to be getting rid of teachers next year because of a budget shortfall.
That's what we said last time.
That was not said. And that, that worries me that you're sending that message out there and alarming the community.
It was said last time by your superintendent, trustee Petrichov.
He's, it was a hypothetical that he was talking about of when you asked what could happen. That, that's all hypothetical. We don't have a budget problem right now, we're just gonna hear about our budget currently. And nobody has suggested that we were going to be getting rid of teachers at this point, to the expense of a director's position. I, I just, I do not want that message being placed out there and, and alarming people when it's, when it was a hypothetical that, that a superintendent Malaico was discussing.
Okay, I think, I think we're ready.
Okay, may I have a vote on number nine, twenty-one? Roll call.
Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
No.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes.
Now, twenty-two.
Okay, now twenty-two?
I just, since the vote has been done, I just want to congratulate Ms. Shurur on being the ED. I hope that she does not take this personal whatsoever. I've had conversations with so many folks in the community who, when I ask them.
Trustee Mosip, we're approaching midnight, can we please move it along?
I'm just saying congratulations to her, and I support this decision right now that it has been made by this one.
Well, then I wish you would have voted yes.
Okay, twenty-two?
We stand by this decision.
Recommended action, move that Hilda Irani be appointed to director of assessment at grade two, step nine of the Dearborn Schools exempt P-12 administrative salary schedule, 260 days effective July 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Support.
I have a move by trustee Thorpe, support by trustee Petrichov. Any discussion? I don't see any, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry? Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
No.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Could we just congratulate them publicly?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Congratulations to Ms. Shurur and the secretary. I don't know if it's still, I'm sure they're still watching because they know they're on there. And we'll have them at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Next item, please.
Next item, discussion item, 2021, 2022, second budget revision and 2022, 2023 budget. Mr. Thomas Wall.
Good evening again, board members, trustee McDonald and Dr. Malaico. You gotta give us a little time, the computer timed out, which is not surprising.
So did we.
No, you know why? It's because they shut down at midnight, it's set off every night.
So we did have a discussion at the finance committee earlier, and they recommended that I double the time that we talk about.
We were so entranced by your report.
We're gonna get rid of an executive director.
Yes, as she can. All right, so again, as part of the requirement by law, we are required to adopt a budget by July 1st. So under the Truth in Budgeting Act, we advertise that we're gonna have this public hearing at today's meeting, and we adopt the official budget in the second meeting in June on the 20th. Since it's so late, we're still gonna follow legal requirements. So after I present, well, after there's any comments from the audience. But, you know, since we're so late and a lot of people have left, I maybe ask the board that our next meeting during public comment, we just bring that up again, just for the convenience for those people that can't necessarily stay this late. So just so it's clear, we'll meet the legal requirements, but I think it's good for the public. So the numbers, I won't go through all the numbers, you guys already know. This is the 448 million dollar budget. It has a lot of components to it. Again, eighty-five percent of our cost plus is on staffing. So all the other parts is fifteen percent. I'll come back to that one as we come. So some of the significant changes, for the 2020, 21 school year, we got a hundred and seventy-one dollars per pupil.
Increase.
Increase, correct. And so one of the things that were required by law, since we're a whole harmless district, we can only increase by the rate of inflation, which is a hundred and nine dollars that we were allowed, which left sixty-two dollars in limbo. So in the past, they would give us as a categorical 20M to basically make us whole for the full hundred and seventy-one dollars. And that categorical is just basically purely on the wishes of the legislators, not required by law. However, what they did this year, instead of giving us that categorical, they put a caveat in the code that wasn't caught at the time. And we didn't find out till October that they decided for us to get the additional sixty-two dollars, they want us to reduce our whole harmless millage. So they notified us in October of 21 that we were required to do that. However, in Dearborn, our millage is for Dearborn, the city of Dearborn, a hundred percent in the summer and nothing in the winter. And Dearborn Heights is 50/50. Well, majority of our district is from our Dearborn tax base. So at that point, we couldn't do anything. So they then required us to react this year in '22, '23 going forward to account for that change. Now, the, your hold harmless millage is based on your student count. It's based on the taxable base. So depending on all those factors, and we didn't really know what our final student count was until probably January, when it finally gets audited. So there really wasn't anything we could do back then. So after going through it and spending a couple of weeks with Treasury, they have decided we had three options, and they didn't get us, we didn't get to choose the option. They recommended that we move forward this option that for the '22, '23 levy, we'll reduce our levy to make up for that shortfall. So having the numbers we have now, the projection of students and the tax base, we had to pay, we roughly levy about $12 million with our hold harmless millage. Since we levy the full amount, with the revised calculation, we should have levied something less than that. So we owe 7.4 of that $12 million back to the public. Now, we don't necessarily give out refunds because that would be a, a tumultuous process to do. You've got to extend the meeting. Sorry.
Trustee Barry, Trustee D'Ambragio, may I have a roll call?
Yes. Trustee Barry? Trustee D'Ambragio?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. And President McDonald?
Yes.
All right, so I'll go back. So that, we basically have to refund 7.4 million back to the public. We would have raised 6.3 million this year for the levy. So what we're going to do, which is a benefit to the public, we're not going to levy the hold harmless millage for '22, '23. And then depending on our student count that comes in the fall, the tax base, that next year, the enhancement millage will come back, I mean, I'm sorry, enhancement, hold harmless millage will come back for '24, '23, '24 at some dollar value. So at this point, you know, the taxpayers are going to get a credit on their tax bills for this upcoming year for the hold harmless millage. So I just want, that's a big change that we kind of had to work through the process with the Department of Treasury. In addition to that, we obviously had the increases in compensation this year. Supply materials and vendor availability has been a real struggle for us this year, as long with everybody else. And we actually had higher absenteeism, you know, that we normally would have experienced in regular year because of all the quarantines and the ability to actually bring people in. So our absenteeism was way higher, which in turn made our contracted subs much larger in a budget. So those are the major changes for the 2021 year. I just, I'll just quickly go through these. This is just on the upper level. As you can see, majority of our income comes from income tax and sales tax and the six mil special education tax that everybody pays in the state of Michigan. That makes up mostly about 75% of our revenue. I won't get into all these. It's just defining what those categories are. Just showing you some of the history of our funding. So as you can see, in '21, they are proposing a large increase. Just showing where the sales and use taxes, one of the reasons why, you can see where that much larger number came in. That's why they're showing a surplus this year. Fiscal year growth, again, these are just statistics. I want to get to the next slide. So after all said and done, as you know, the state goes through a budget process of their own from October through September. In January, they estimated revenues. They estimated a surplus. And so that's where our current state, you know, recommendations are coming from, the governor, Senate, and House. However, when they did the May reconciliation, they have roughly $5 billion in the availability of funds for both the schools and the general fund. Now, normally, that would be great news because $5 billion in the school aid fund, we could get a $600 to $700 per pupil increase. That's possible. However, in the current environment, I don't know if we're going to see that high of a number, just because, you know, there's been a lot of talk of tax cuts, giving, you know, residents, you know, money back. So we'll have to see where that goes. And I think that's one of the reasons why we have not seen any kind of state aid form or approval at this point, because I'm sure there's a lot of discussions going behind the scenes that we're just not privy of. So just know that there's a lot of money available. They could move more money from the college into the school aid fund because there's only a percentage now. So those are the things that we have to watch to see where the state actually ends up on that. So all said and done, it's basically an estimate right now because we have to require to go through this process and have our budget done by June 30th, where the state doesn't have to worry about it till September 30th. So looking at that, the other thing that we're worried about is inflation. You know, inflation right now, as they show on this graph from May, that's, it's close to seven, almost 8%. It's going up fast. And it'll eventually tailor off, but that doesn't help us right here and now. So we have to be aware and cognizant of that. So looking at next year, for the '22, '23 school year, the taxable values increased 3.15%. Obviously, we're dealing with that hold harmless adjustment. The foundation allowance, we're estimating at $435. That was kind of the mean where the governor, House, and Senate. So $435 is still a significant increase to us. What we're looking at in expense size, just remember that the increase in foundation allowance for all our contracts this year represents the increase that we'll get for our salaries. So I'm estimating roughly about a 4% increase in salaries for next year, just based on our contractual values. And again, you know, we have a younger workforce because we have a lot of change. You know, looking at a traditional program next year, just like we started this year. So looking at a traditional program. And the other thing if you deal with, it's an infrastructure. I'm going to, as you see, as we go through this, I'm going to push more money to the Building and Site Fund to help us offset that until we get a better direction, short term and long term, on our infrastructure. And it froze. So I'm going off schedule. Oh, there it goes. Maybe. David, do you want to look at it? I don't know what it's doing. It's just sitting there.
It's tired, like the rest of us.
Tired. All right, so the next graph. Go back one, if you don't mind. Nope, go back another one. Another one. Another one. There we go. All right. All right, so as part of this process, as required by the Budget, Truth in Budgeting Act, we have to talk about millages. So we are going to levy the 6.17 mils we normally would have levied. That will be zero next year. So that is a direct savings to homeowners next year on their taxes. On the 18 mils, we're levying the full 18 mils against non-home set property businesses and all that. That doesn't change. And we're at 3.5 mils for debt. Now, next year, after this year, the '22, '23 school year, that will go slightly over one mil. And we've had many discussions during our budget discussions that it's going to go down because the 2002 bond is coming off the payment schedule, and that's why it's dropping. So just be aware of that.
Sorry, turn to Trustee, Ms. Shurur.
Yeah, feel free to ask me questions. I'm going fast.
Can you repeat that again?
So.
That's crucial.
So the 6.17 mils is not going to be levied next year. The year after that, it might be two to three, four mils, depending on our student count and our taxable base. So that's going to change. And basically, because of what the caveat they did in the code law, that, that, since we're a hold harmless, they want to roll that number back to offset those taxes. Now, we don't know what the final law will be. That could be something going forward, that they do a two X formula versus a full $435 for everybody. That's how they're talking now. That could have an implication on our hold harmless millage even going forward after that. So again, we're really up to the air on that. So the 3.5 mils for debt, that's what we're levying for '22, '23. After this year, when the 2002 bond falls off, we're going to be a little over one mil as we get through the 2014 bond program.
Correct. So if we were to do any kind of finances next year, then that's a new tax?
Correct. Yeah, by law, since a millage dropped, anything above that one, over one mil would be a tax increase. And it would actually be on the ballot language that way.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just a graph showing the increase in the foundation allowance. Student count, obviously, if you remember in '21, '22, the year before that, we were in the super blend. That's where they looked at 2019, '20, took 90% of that, only 10% of the 2021. So you'll see that we actually, on paper, lost funding because of the students for this current year. And then for next year, we're looking at a 378 student increase in our student count for next year. So add that all together. You know, this is our model that we have used for quite many years, looking at forecasting next year's bottom line. If you look in the middle of the section where it says 2021, '22 operating surplus, I'm actually budgeting a loss of 1.4 million. Typically, every year, we, we budget conservatively because things change as we go along. So typically, we would see that number being positive, and we would end up adding a million, a million and a half to our fund balance because of the surplus of not everybody spending every single dollar in the budget. What I'm trying to do this year is that normally, I'm increasing the transfer to building a site, put more money aside. That way legally, I can do that. But if that money doesn't appear, I'll roll that back. So it's a different philosophy. I'm budgeting a negative. And if we don't have the money in the surplus, like I expect, then we wouldn't do the transfer. So we're not going to actually take money out of the fund balance. But I'm setting myself up financially and legally to be able to transfer that money if we do have it. Does that make sense? That's a different concept. So I just want to make sure. Again, being more aggressive because we got to start putting money aside and building a site until we figure out what we're doing on infrastructure. Okay? Looking at that, you can see that we have the 378 student increase, the 3.7 health insurance, looking at roughly 30 retirements, and a foundation increase of $435. So at the end of '22, '23, we still will have a budget balance. I'll have a slight surplus there. Again, that's just looking at student count, showing you what the fall, we use that to make sure we know what targets we have to hit come the fall. All right, looking at this one, this is dealing where we talk about the foundation allowance of $435. I'm estimating a 5% rate of inflation. I've been on with Treasury, the Director of the Treasurer, everybody all up to the top, trying to figure out what that interest rate will be next year. Because again, the lower that number is, we might get back into that whole issue again of rolling back our hold harmless millage and all that and whether we come in. So right now, at 5%, we're okay. There would be no categorical 20M or rollback of our hold harmless millage. Hopefully, it'll be that simple. Showing the increases, and again, the compensation on the bottom of what we budgeted for staffing increase. On the other side, you'll see on here, most of the changes are on the bottom. If you look at item L, no, item V, that was kind of brought up today. One of the options we have is looking at the virtual program. If we did, you know, schools of choice for virtual only, it could be full or limited, depending on what size we have available. We could have anywhere from a half a million to a million and a half, depending on how many kids come to that program. Then on the bottom, you'll see a lot of changes. A lot of our numbers are going up for some of our categoricals because our compensation goes up. We have to pay retirement, so the state gives us some offset money, so you'll see that. But if you can focus on the bottom of the LL, you'll see that I'm trying to transfer more money to the Building and Site Fund. Also recommending a one-time adjustment of $1 million for equipment, vehicles, and all that, because this is the last year, '22, '23, that we're using ESR funds. After this, we get back into that, what they call a budget shortfall, where the money that we have in ESR funds has to come back into the general fund. So if we don't do that extra million dollars now, we're not going to have that opportunity for any kind of scale. That could be buses. I know they've been trying to get a boom truck here for a long time, so we don't have to rent one all the time, wherever we're doing roofing work with HVAC and stuff like that. That will be decided later, but that's the idea. And in addition, the 2.125, we have set aside for the purchase of the SME buildings. So when you look at it in just oversight, I know the numbers are not necessarily on here, for this year, we're looking at transferring $10 million. In '22, '23, $15 million. So that's where I'm kind of show where we're trying to move money to the Building and Site Fund to address short-term needs. And those needs could be safety and security. They could be, you know, more buses. So that's what we'll have to decide on what to use that additional capital funding for. I know Mark has plenty ideas of what he wants to use it for. All right, and again, just quickly reviewing the ESR side. Remember, in 2021, we had regular ESRs, equity ESRs, GARE, Section 11P, Section 1032. That was that first year through the, the virus or the pandemic. Then this year, we're using ESR 2, because most of the ESR 1 in that first year of grants went into ESR 2 to cover. And then next year, the loop, you can see, is going to ESR 3. So it's kind of just showing the flow. Now, will we have some extra money after '22, '23? We may, but that'll be in the next year's budget amendment, so we know where we're actually standing at.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
We do know that we don't pay salaries for, from ESR funds?
We do. Yes, we do.
We do?
Yeah, we, we put a portion of our counselors, social workers, nurses, things that are dealing with the pandemic directly. So a portion of their salaries do go to ESRs. That's how we were able to transfer so much money over the last several years into the Building and Site.
So how will we be able to maintain that much funding since this money?
So that 15 million we're transferring to building a site in '22, '23, we'll use majority of that to offset, which means that after next year, in '23, '24, I won't have money to transfer the building and site. We'll have to decide on a more fundamental source of money for capital improvements.
So just to clarify, we're making kind of a maneuver here or a move?
Illegal maneuver. Let's make sure that's clear.
Just to cover so we can talk about security today and we talk about resources that we need.
Yeah, we'll go back to that work that the committee did, look at bathrooms, look at security, those things that were higher priority.
With that much money that we have, because we have to spend that ESR fund?
Correct.
And there are some staff members that are being covered by ESR funds?
Correct. Yes, they are.
But then, in, in a year, then we're going to be like, or two, we're going to be looking out for those funds.
So when we get to the 23, 24 school year, we're going to either have to figure out some way to address infrastructure, or our transfers to the building and site will go down. And then it'll be going through the whole budget discussion, what do we still have to maintain because our buildings need to still be addressed for HVAC, for safety, security, those kind of issues.
Thank you.
I need a meeting extension?
I'll move to extend.
I'm almost done.
I'll be the bad guy today.
Trustee Moser, Trustee D'Ambragio, may I have a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambragio?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
No. I'm serious.
So I won't go through all of these, but these are.
Just continue. Wait, wait one second. We're continuing.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes.
I'll support that decision as well.
Okay. I won't go through all these, but there's some of the things we're looking at for next year. And again, looking at, this is just showing you the, the numbers in total by all funds. I won't go into that much detail. And then this is for next year. So the key issues, obviously, the finalization of the state aid fund is going to be very important for us because it has many ramifications of how our funding will come in and in the future. So that's going to be very big for us. Continue to monitor the closeout of this year. Unfortunately, we are dealing with a lot of late purchases that we've ordered, just not coming in. And again, since we're a June 30 cutoff, they got to go into next year. So it's going to cause some messing of some of the budget that might be available, might have to roll into next year, but that's, you don't have to deal with that.
Mr. Wall?
Yes?
So I'm clear, if we have been approving things, right? But we haven't spent it by the end of this year because of things beyond our control.
Delays, correct.
That won't be able to be encountered in this year's budget. It'll have to go to next year's budget.
Right, hence why I have that negative numbers, have that money. I can at least put it aside in the building and site fund to be paid at a later date.
Okay, thanks.
And then obviously, our fall instruction program will still be the traditional method. Staffing adjustments, we may reduce staff, you know, that's all depends, you know, where the retirements come in and how we're going to replace them. So we could be adding staff, so we'll be monitoring that. And again, the infrastructure discussion still has to continue. We still have to be addressing that, educating the public and making a decision on where we go. And that is it.
Any other questions?
Okay, next item, please.
You got to have questions from the public.
Yes, do you have an opportunity, if anyone would like to talk about the budget or their concerns?
Yeah, these folks are going to jump on it.
Did that report online?
It will be after today, yes. Yes. In color.
Next item, please.
All right, thank you.
Board of Education Business, acknowledgements of correspondence.
We've gotten a lot, oh, please.
I got an email last week from, I believe it's Preservation Dearborn. I'm going to be talking to them. They're very interested in historic structures we've got in the city and of course, we've got several schools that fall into that category.
Anyone else?
I'd like to join you if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'm just going to hear a little bit about what it's about. I think they're going to schedule meetings so that I'll share it with the whole board.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have a Zoom meeting tomorrow night, actually.
But just keep in mind that four of us can't be at that meeting.
Well, yeah. We're, we're going to.
I'm just saying, yeah.
They're actually coming and speaking at my DFNA meeting on Wednesday. So they wanted to do a presentation.
We've received a lot of different correspondence and a lot of them pertaining to things that were covered tonight. Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Trustee Petrikov? We had a committee meeting for the superintendent evaluation that I was suddenly juggled into. I've sent everybody the link to the MASB evaluation tool that we used. So I hope everybody was able to open it up and either download it or work with it online. Please bring the filled, completed report with you. We will be having, when we met, we decided that we, for transparency's sake, we were having an MASB facilitator coming to handle our meeting so that we had no discrepancies in how we interpreted the tool. And we're also going to have someone taking minutes as well, so that we have good clarity at this evaluation meeting. I also want to remind everybody that there was a 2020 survey that was done under Jim Thorpe that had reviews when people asked about our review, our, our going out to the community. We had a 2020 survey that if you don't have it, I can share again with you the results of that we used in 2020, I believe, during that evaluation process, that communicated with the public. And in your board briefs, you'll find under Ms. Farage's Dearborn High link, her, we do a Cognia review survey that is handled by an outside third party that, that surveys families, staffing about the, it's not directly related to the superintendent, but to their, the climate, it's a climate culture survey of the school district that might help you. And everybody got all of the artifacts that Dr. Malaco shared with us as well.
I'm sorry, I just want more clarification on that survey.
It's on, it's, it's on in board briefs.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying, does, do we do that on a monthly, I mean, on a yearly basis?
It's an annual, correct.
And it goes to, you said families and staff?
Yeah.
They have not had such. I'd love to hear more about that.
I've got the.
We can, we can definitely look into that later.
Yes, please, five, may.
Good evening, everyone. The one we just completed is for 2122. But previously, we did one in 2020. In 2021, we changed the theme a little bit because of the pandemic. So we focused the questions more on social, emotional for staff and students. But we do do a survey every year and we do it for all stakeholders, students, families and educators in general.
Looking for that, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Trustee Barry? What, um, this, this one, it, it, it's a, it's more, it gives a set of words to describe which four words best describe something, okay? So for the families, it was in general, your child's school. Which four, four words best describe in the interactions you have with the adults in your child's school? Which four words describes your experience with your colleagues? Which four words describe in general your institution's culture?
Is that part of the tool that we're using?
No, no, I said, I, I just wanted to let you know because one of the, one of the criticisms in one of the emails we had was that we don't reach out to the community and we're not using a survey of what's going on in our community. But we actually have at least something to gauge about the, what the community is thinking or feeling about our school district.
May, may I add that when we do administer surveys, it depends on the purpose for what we're administering the surveys for. For example, this year, because next year we have the Cognia review, Cognia is formerly advanced ad. So we didn't want to send multiple surveys since they do serve the same purpose. Some of the questions in the surveys that we just administered are focused on the culture of the district and those are for the families, students and staff. So we do not send multiple surveys at one time. The 360 would go along the same theme, but we make sure that those themes are covered in the surveys that we send out. In 2020, they were specifically based on the specific period and the needs. So it, it depends on what we're looking for. If it's for strategic plan, also, we try to include questions that would cover multiple purposes so that we're not bombarding the district and the community with multiple surveys. So those questions I just shared, the most recent ones, I pulled them out of the lengthy survey and these were specific to the culture. Just to clarify that, we do it for different purposes and we try to, like you, you've heard the high school students earlier, we sought their feedback and we told them, what questions do you want on the survey that we sent out? And they asked us to include the, the food in the cafeteria. So we pulled those two questions in the analysis and we sent it to the food, food department. So we include from all aspects of the district and make sure that we're not duplicating surveys for parents and teachers.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to use this as part of it. I was just bringing up that this was available to you if you wanted to look at it, yeah.
Okay, because we heard some comments today and now we're doing the surveys, it's like, are we doing a 360 or not? So.
No, no, I wouldn't have had time to do a 360.
We're not, okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure on the same page. Thank you.
So just one more clarification. In the 2020 survey, we asked staff members about their direct supervisor, meaning the building supervisor, and then we asked them about central office supervisors. And another question was about the superintendent specifically. That one was.
Yeah.
We'll give you that, I mean, the specific answers.
I'm just saying, if anybody wants to look at it, it's there.
Is that the end of your report?
Yes, that's the end of my report.
Were there any others?
You going to report on finance again?
Oh, God, well, yeah, we, I forgot, I forgot. We had a finance meeting. It was exactly what you saw.
That was the shortest media report in history.
Were there any more? That's it? Okay, next item, please.
Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
I have one. This is officially Dr. Tropel's. Last time she'll be at a board meeting, and so if we can.
Well, we made it a memorable one.
We extended it just for you.
She'll remember this one.
I just want to mention that graduations have been just phenomenal and seeing students walk on stage and greet their parents and I'm looking forward to more graduations. Sorry, I misspoke. Graduations for some programs and honors night. I'm looking forward to graduations. Although we've been hit by a lot of very, very sad situations and I appreciated the unity that we have. And this is what we are, Dearborn. We stand together, especially in the time of grief, in the time of testing, that we stand together for everyone. And as we pledge for this country, for the Pledge of Allegiance, we always continue with justice for all. Thank you.
Um, trustee Watts?
I just wanted to add to that, that I, congratulations to all the graduates and I beg them, please be safe out there. I know that they're going to be excited and I know, but just, this community has been rocked the last couple of weeks and I just pray that they, teenagers, I get it, but please.
Lead by example.
Yes, please. I, yes, find something else. Just be safe. And I just wanted to, I forgot to mention that I wanted to thank you for putting together that music committee. I think that a lot of our students would be, will benefit from it, but I wanted to say thank you for putting that together. I think we'll be able to have a great music program in all of our schools going forward. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? I just have a reminder again, as soon as you get home, go fill out that survey that I sent about the available times for the meetings upcoming.
I already did it too.
All right, good. So I will hopefully set that up in short order. Next item, please.
Our requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Anyone? Trustee Barry?
Let me make this real quick. If we can get an update on facility use, I know we spent a lot of time at policy with that, then we switched over to another committee. If we can get an update on where we're at there. Number two, we just got educated, well, some of us knew, some of us got educated on our district attorney, who do they represent? Who do they actually work for? If we can get an opinion from our legal on that, please. Also, a few years ago, we did the transportation budget. How much goes out of, you know, how much is outsourced, how much we do internally? If we can get that updated, I'd like to take a look at it. And that's it.
And I gave mine earlier.
Yes.
The report for next. Oh, trustee Watts?
I just have two. And I think we heard it, that we've seen a lot of teachers who are absent because of COVID and COVID protocol. I wonder if we could get, I think I mentioned it before, what are, what is our rate of absenteeism for our students this year compared to pre-COVID? To see if we've seen an increase in that. And then also the Title IX funds to see how much we're spending on the female sports versus male sports in terms of how many coaches as well, to see if we can get an understanding on that one.
Anyone else? Next item, please.
Hi.
Oh, we have to extend the meeting?
Uh-uh. I have, okay, let's extend the meeting. Another motion to extend this meeting?
Support.
Okay, trustee Mosip, trustee Watts, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Diambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes. Trustee Mosip?
I just have a question about the lottery system for the college, early college program at Collegiate Academy. We can get information about how is it being conducted? And I say that I know, already know how it's being conducted, I just need like the full details.
Is that it? Anyone else? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Thursday, June 9, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees, Ad-Hoc Committee, 10 a.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College and the Board of Trustees' Workroom. Monday, June 13, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees' Meeting, 7 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College and the Rosenell Boardroom. Tuesday, June 14, 2022, P-12 Superintendent Evaluation Meeting, closed 7 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in Room 12. June, I'm sorry, Monday, June 20, 2022, P-12 Building and Site Committee Meeting, 6 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in Room 12. Monday, June 20, 2022, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center and the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Tuesday, June 28, 2022, P-12 City Relations Committee Meeting, 4 p.m. at the administrative, Dearborn Administrative Center and the Emergency, in the Emergency Operations Center.
We are adjourned.